Good evening and welcome. I call to order the April 12th, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and truth.
All right, thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor, I have an idea to throw out, and I don't know if this is actually possible. Given the great amount of public interest in the new business items, I'm wondering if we might consider flipping, taking new business before the public hearing items.
Okay, so is your proposal for all of those new business items to go before the public hearing?
I think definitely A and B. I don't know, maybe we should just root all three and keep it easy.
Are there any objections to the proposal? I don't believe we need to take a roll call, do we Greg on this?
No, consensus is okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Plenty of people want to speak on those matters. Let's, let's hear them.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll be moving New Business Agenda Item 9 to precede Public Hearing Agenda Item 8. And if we get to that part and I miss it, I trust one of you will jump in and remind me. Wonderful. All right. Are there, so the next item then is Council Communications and Announcements. Council Communications and Announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Is there anyone, I see Councilmember Collins followed by Council Vice Mayor McDowell.
Mine is nothing major, but I did want to point out that the San Carlos History Museum is now open again. Admission is free and it's open, I believe, every Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. So I encourage everyone who wants to to go. Our rich history is on display every weekend, every Saturday.
All right, thank you Councilmember Collins, Vice Mayor McDowell, followed by Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three very quick updates. I wanted to let the community know that we will have in-library express service, which will include computer and printing access, browsing materials, and Wi-Fi access beginning Thursday, April 22nd. Express service will be available Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from 10:00 to 1:00 and 2:00 to 5:00. My second update is Adam and I had our 2+2 Committee Meeting last Friday, which is two City Council Members, two School Board Members, the Superintendent, our City Manager, and staff. It was very productive. We exchanged a lot of information about safe routes to school, planning for the fall, our budgets. And our next meeting will be in September, so watch for that if you'd like to listen in. And the final thing is our summer camp registration is now open for the city. And I wanted to let everyone know that there is a fee assistance program for families in need. If your child, if you can't afford to send your child to summer camp through our Parks and Rec Department, please consider applying. I would love to see every dollar in that program used this summer. And I did raise this at our 2+2 Meeting and our school district's colleagues are going to help spread the word as well. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I just wanted to share that I was fortunate enough last Wednesday to finally get my, my vaccine for the coronavirus. And it felt great personally, very encouraging to see the acceleration of vaccinations across the board in California and in our community. And very happy that eligibility will extend to all adults 16-plus this week, I think on Thursday. And I just want to remind everyone just how important it is that we all, as a community, get the first vaccine that happens to be available to us. For me, that happened to be through the VA as a veteran. And there's a lot of great resources out there for folks. Myturn.ca.gov is a really good resource for determining eligibility and where you might be able to get your vaccine. Rite Aid and CVS also have good websites that will show you where the vaccine might be available within their network. And as I understand it, you can go to any of those sources for your vaccine regardless of your medical insurance. And then, of course, your own doctor and your own medical insurance are also good sources of information on that. So, you know, it just felt good. There seems to be real light at the end of this. Heather dark tunnel this year, and we all got to do our part to help our whole community get out of this.
All right, thank you Councilmember Dugan. All right, and Councilmember Collins, I see your hand is up. Did you have another item to add or was that just residual from previous comment?
Not me. Should have been lower.
All right, no worries. All right. Okay, well, thank you. So now we'll move on to public comment. So just to reiterate, persons wishing to address City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. And sometimes this discussion will take place at the end of the meeting, just to set expectations around that. Are there any members of the public, Crystal, who wish to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I do see one hand. Sonia Elks, you should be able to unmute yourself this time.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I attended the City School 2+2 Meeting that Sarah mentioned. It was a very productive meeting. It came up that the Cedar-Roy intersection, there's a lot of, there's a delay and there's a need to educate drivers about that intersection and about driving through there and in general what bicycle sharos mean, how to navigate safely with bikes on the street, pedestrians, et cetera. And there's also a need to, to educate bicyclists, how to merge in properly and to what sharos mean, et cetera. So the, was raised that perhaps the city would do a training video. I would like to formally suggest that San Carlos Bikes would love to assist city staff with that, if you can give direction for them to do so at some point. And also, was one other thing, sorry. Oh, if perhaps youth, this youth council could be involved because they did an excellent job on their videos for pandemic support for school-aged children. They seem very good behind a camera and perhaps they could also be involved in a safety video. So I would really like to see that happen. I think it could be really, it's a really important aspect of street safety is for bikes and drivers to, to respect each other and perhaps could go through the schools, things like that. So would like to know how you feel about that and if that's a possibility. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Sonia.
Crystal, any additional members in the public?
No, there are no other hands.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I will be happy to entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar Items A through F.
I'll second that.
All right, who shall the record show called the second? It was a tie.
We'll get into the vice mayor.
All right, thank you. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Before I vote, just want to say briefly that I did review all the Commission and Board quarterly reports and, boy, we're sure up to a lot here in San Carlos. So appreciate everyone's efforts on all those committees and commissions and just really applaud everyone so dedicated to give their time. And with that, I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
All right, so that moves up. Reports to Council.
Mayor Palmer Lohan, if I may, I need to recuse myself from Item 7A because I live in very close proximity to the fire station, so I will go off right now. Thank you.
All right, Crystal, can you send Sarah, Vice Mayor McDowell, a message when we're back online?
Yes, will do.
With the next item, thank you. All right, and giving us a report this evening, presentation, we will hear from Acting Deputy Fire Chief Chuck Lacks and possibly other members of the team who are working on the project. So, Deputy Fire Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan. This is Chuck Lacks, your Acting Deputy Fire Chief. And this evening I have with me Alan Kawasaki with Shaw Kawasaki Architects that will be giving you an update on the Fire Station 16 Replacement Project. Let me start off by, next slide, please start off by going over our timeline, how this project's been moving forward. We started by recommending the replacement of the station in May of 2018. From there, we went out and looked to hire an architect and we're lucky to have brought on board Shaw Kawasaki Architects on August 2019. And from there, we went into a big team effort between Public Works, the Fire Department, Shaw Kawasaki Architects to start working on some initial concepts of the design layout, looking at what we had existing, some big emphasis on safety measures. And from that design, we moved forward to a, a community meeting held at Fire Station 16 on March 4th, 2020, an actual in-person community meeting. Hard to believe that we had that. And then from there, we went to our first planning commission with those designs. And then on to initial submittal to the Building Department. And that was in January 2021. Next slide, please. As well as in January 2021, the city adopted ordinance 1570, our reach codes. So based on that new adoption of the reach codes, we reached back out to Shaw Kawasaki Architects to make sure that we brought our design into compliance with ordinance 1570. And that kind of brings us to where we're at today. We're ready to submit our second construction documents to the Building Department, as well as we'll be bringing a budget proposal, I mean, budget proposal meetings. And then moving into the future, we'll be returning to Council somewhere between May to June of 2021 to approve the construction documents. And then around July, we'd like to be awarding a contract to a contractor for the construction of the station. And then moving forward from July 2021 to December 2022, we would be looking to relocate staff and start to do construction of the station. Next slide, please. So our existing square foot of the lot is 10,178 feet. We'll be looking to replace a single-story, 3,750-square-foot station with a new two-story, 5,797-square-foot fire station. Next slide. And our goals through this process have been to maintain the facility as an essential services. One of the key features was a drive-through apparatus bay. Currently, we have to back our fire engine into the fire station, which requires firefighter and a fire captain to step off of the fire apparatus to stop traffic on Alameda de Los Focas. There's been a few close calls over the year, but allowing a drive-through bay will reduce that safety risk. We look to increase onsite parking, as well as we evaluated firefighter health and safety at the station by creating hot, warm, and cold zones so that our firefighters could go through a little bit of a decon process after they return from fires to not bring those contaminants into the living quarters of the fire stations, as well as bringing all appliances, HVAC system, and a hot water system into our electric reach code requirements. And then, of course, we've been looking into the future for this facility. And one of the things will be is having the facility prepped to accept solar panels. Next slide. So at this time, I'll introduce Alan Kawasaki with Shaw Kawasaki Architects to continue the presentation.
Hi, this is Alan Kawasaki. Crystal, I didn't know if you were going to start my videos. I can say hello to everybody, but in any case, I'll just keep talking. So we're an architectural firm here in Bay area, and I know I've met a few of you, but we have, are designing probably about a third of the current fire stations that are done in the Bay Area. And you guys are great because you're doing, you're going to be doing what I think to be the first all-electric fire station in Bay area because you're actually taking our station, which was originally designed with gas consumption, and changing it to all-electric. Other cities that we are working on are, we're starting new stations in which they will be all-electric, for instance, San Jose Station will be doing that. And we have been doing stations in San Francisco, but those are not yet all-electric. We have a, believe it or not, a floating fire station, which is right near the ferry terminal. And that, even that one, as much as it's high-tech, is, is gas as its power source primarily. So here's the, the corner view from Howard and Alameda de Los Focas. And you can kind of see what Deputy Chief Lacks had mentioned. So on the left, you can kind of see there's a figure. So that's where you would be turning your fire apparatus from Howard into the back of the firehouse. And then you would be driving down this light gray and making a right-hand turn going into the station. And those bright red doors on the right facing Alameda de Los Focas, those are a new kind of door. They're called four-folds and they're fast-acting doors to help improve your turnout or reduce your turnout time. And so you'll be exiting at that point. We had designed the station, even though it was, had some gas, we had mostly electric already, for instance, the HVAC system. And we had designed this as being very energy efficient. For instance, you're looking at the cladding of the building and the cladding, the lower portion brick cladding is, is meant to be, you know, fire or abuse resistant. But behind that, not only do the studs have insulation behind them, but there's yet another rigid insulation layer. And we call that, it breaks up what we call thermal bridging. So believe it or not, even those studs that are in your, in your house and they have insulation, those studs all can conduct, have a thermal property. So you're having heat loss or heat gain through those studs. We don't have that in your new station. So as far as I know, even though this is wood frame, we've done like one other station in Palo Alto in which it uses wrap of insulation, a super insulated building. And this occurs both on the, the masonry and also the metal panels above. The other thing in the foreground, you can kind of see on the curb, there are these planters that are stepping, and those are actually bioswales. So although freshwater, not freshwater, but the stormwater that's collected from the roofs and the surfaces all come to this corner, which is the low point of the site. And the planting in here is actually meant to filter the, the water, to clean the water before it goes into your stormwater system. So that's a, a new requirement here in the state of California and one that we've been, we've incorporated. So I'm going to go next to the next slide. And in this next slide, you can see, this is the site plan. So that, again, you know, coming off of Howard Street, entering to the back of the station, going through security gates, and as you're going through those gates, on the right, you pass an accessible parking stall. And then in front of you are five parking stalls for the crew. And one of the things that we were constant in the community was, there's not really good parking in the existing station. So we put enough parking in the station itself to, to accommodate the crews, so they won't have to park out in the, in their neighborhood. And then the apparatus turns into the apparatus bay. You'll see that one is drive-through and the upper apparatus is a back-in. So that's a spare apparatus. But the one that's used on a, on a regular basis, this is one that's driving through. And then other things that you'll see on the site, as we've mentioned, the kind of J planter box, so that's the, the bio-retention area. And then other things on the site include a transformer, which is in the lower left-hand corner, and there's a generator. The generator's in that big bullpen with the double doors in there, and that's a emergency backup generator. As you know, your ordinance does exclude diesel generators, emergency standby generators. So we've kept that, although I'll talk about some changes we've made. And the lower floor climbing side, the two apparatus, the other large room you'll see is an exercise room. So fitness is important to the firefighter's conditioning. And oftentimes the firefighters come in early in the morning. So the, so the WC that's in the lower right-hand corner also is, is for public, but it also includes a shower, so they can do exercise, take their shower before they come up and go on duty upstairs. There's something called turnout. And turnout are the, is, is the gear that are gone, the overcoats, the pants, the helmets, those sorts of things that the department's gone. Those off-gas, they do have, I say off-gas, some carcinogens enter the air. So that room is now sealed off. The current turnouts you have now are not sealed, so that it has its own fresh air intake and exhaust. There's a decon area that Deputy Chief talked about, which is to the left. And again, that's for cleaning contaminants off of, of the gear. And then, I know, believe it or not, it seems strange, but with accessibility, you've got to have an elevator now. So we've got an elevator that takes us up to the second floor. Next. So once you come up to the second floor, hopefully you've taken the stairs because you're trying to stay fit rather than taking the elevator, but you come up into the, what's called a day room, and there's a dining and a kitchen area. So of course the firefighters are here 24/7, they sleep here. And there, there's all, you know, the kitchen equipment actually is, I wouldn't call it full commercial grade, but it's very close to that. So we, we incorporate some of the commercial requirements for cleanliness, double sinks, stainless steel, hard surfaces, no carpet, all the floors are, are easy mop, cleanable. And then you have the dorms. You see three on the right, you have one on the upper part. Those are the dormitories, they stay in, their lockers are there. There's an office in the very corner, and then there's a, there's a study, and then lots of utility items as well. And look at that round thing that's near the kitchen. That's a fire pole. So a traditional fire pole, you can drop down from this level down to the level below. And next slide. So you can kind of see this fire pole on the, barely see it, on the, on the right side. It's sort of a caged thing and there's a pole going down there. So actually being used these days, it's the fastest way to get down. And then, of course, the kitchen I just mentioned, which is an accessible kitchen and has a lot of easy clean stainless steel items. So that stove, which is currently rendering, rendered as a gas stove, is going to be all-electric. And everything in here, of course, will be all-electric, and that's what we're changing everything over at this time. And you can see there's a nice slope ceiling with, with natural wood finish on it. And if you remember from that render, you can actually see into the building and see some of that slope ceiling coming outside the building. Next. So this is again, the, the exterior, so you can see that, that brick, which is along the lower course, and it steps around, and then the, the metal panels are above, and those bright red doors, which are the, behind which are, is, it's a glass door, you'll see the fire apparatus in there. Next. So this is just sort of a comparison, and I know that initially when we were looking at this, we wanted to make sure that even though we were putting nearly twice the amount of square footage, I think it's like 60% more or 75% more square footage than there was previously, it's now a two-story, of course. That red profile is the profile of the existing station. And we're very carefully, you know, carefully make sure that we minimize the impact of bulk of the building. So we actually dropped the building down, you know, like on five feet, three to five, three to five feet to reduce the bulk. But it also helped us, because as you can see, as you're coming out of the fire station on the doors on the right, you're a lot more level as you, as you get to Alameda de Los Focas rather than coming down the steep driveway. So it's safer. I also want to point out and, and just sort of highlight some things that Chief Lacks said. So this is an essential service facility. Now, your, your current fire stations, the older ones, stations which were constructed in the 60s, which most fire stations in the Bay are not essential service grade, they're not designed to withstand an earthquake. And that seems odd, right? You would think that all stations should withstand an earthquake. But the stations in the 60s, 70s even, all the way up till 86, were designed the same quality as your normal house. So if the houses fall down in an earthquake, so will your fire stations. So you're, you're doing a smart thing and, and cities are doing that, replacing to new stations, which are designed to withstand earthquakes. Okay? So that's a really important thing for the communities, and we call it essential service facilities. You do already have other things that you've upgraded in the stations, but you can't really upgrade the structure of a building so that it withstands an earthquake unless you rebuild it. And that's what you've done here. And the chief also mentioned, we're incorporating a lot of other features which modern fire stations now help to reduce the, the effects of carcinogens and infectious disease. We've all learned from, from COVID. There are things, simple things that we can do, we're washing our hands and whatnot, keeping clean. These are built into the new fire stations now. So it's not like an attached thing on the wall, but there are new sinks that are put in, there are things that are meant for easy cleaning. Next. So the electric conversion. So as we mentioned, in, in January, which was the same time you adopted your ordinance, we went into our building permit and we got the comments and then we got the news and that we're going to change this over to an all-electric. So some of the triggers that we had to think about was, and you know, dealing with BGE is not always the easiest thing. So we said, we don't want to change the transformer, and that's a given. We're going to keep the transformer. We don't want to increase the size of it, we just want to keep going with what we have. So we're going to upgrade all of our appliances and still, you know, we're almost at a tipping point where we can't do, you know, hundreds and hundreds of things. We can do as much as possible to make this, we will make it all-electric, but I'm just saying in terms of the kinds of electric, how much power are we going to draw? So we changed the appliances from gas to electric. We're keeping the diesel generator as we, we talked about. So that's a emergency generator. We've taken our HVAC, so our HVAC system, the air conditioning, was already an electric base system. Now we've converted all of our water heating over to heat pumps, which are electric, and you'll see that in a minute. And also we've changed our apparatus bay heating, which was gas, over to electric radiant heating. Next. So you can get just sort of a diagram, some of the things that got affected. These red items were things that were affected through the change. There are more things upstairs too, but just on the ground floor. So the large rectangle is the diesel generator and we have a, I think it's 125 now, we can go up to 150 without actually changing to the next size up. There's no room on the site, so we can't really make the pen or the generator larger, but there's a model that will, we think we may be going up to in order to increase the capacity. So if you imagine, if you add more electrical devices and capabilities on the fire station, then of course you have to back that up with your generator in an emergency. So then the generator has to also keep up with that demand. Other things, we talked about appliances changing, that radiant heaters in the, in the at bay, there's a round thing on the upper part, that's a water heater, increase in size, and those three red dots are, are heat pumps. So these heat pumps are, instead of in gas fire, a heat pump is like a refrigeration system run in reverse. Instead of cooling, it actually heats things. So there's, the water's been heated that way. Next. And, and just also, of course, you know, we're making portions of the roof solar-ready. So we're going to have additive alternate. We hope we can purchase the solar panels, but it's all going to be set up, whether we do it now with the budget that you will approve for us, I guess, when we come back next time. And, and these panels are, what we've done is aggregated all the, let's say, the vents, the fans, whatnot, to the zone between these two white zones, vents for, you know, I'm talking about for bathroom vents or air, air intake areas, and leaving... And leaving, leaving these two areas, zones one and two. And this is southeast facing, which is the optimum orientation for solar panels. The side facing the street is north and west, north and east facing. Excuse me. So the side on the left is south and west facing. So as we know, for instance, the peak hours for energy draw are after four o'clock, you know, four till sunset. And so we want to make sure we get that the sun, taking advantage of the EV generation on that orientation. Next. And I think this is two for you, Deputy Chief.
Yep. Thank you, Alan. That was, that was perfect. So at this point, we're looking for some direction on the proposed design. No change to the proposed design and complete the construction documents. Or three, provide staff with alternative direction as well as word here to answer any questions you have at this time.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. So I think, I think at this point we take, we'll take council questions and then we'll go to comments from the public. So it looks like I see Councilmember Dugan's hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, just want to applaud the design team for responding so well and quickly to our new reach code. When you think about the lifetime of this building, that is a, a big improvement. And glad that you were able to embrace that in the design. And also thank you for highlighting the fire pole. Always fun to see something like that on a set of construction drawings. I had a question, one thing, and I sat, I was on the planning commission when this came through. And one of the design components that I thought was excellent, that I didn't see highlighted here, and I think is very important for the community, was a bank of outlets external to the building, such that if there's a large power failure, like we've experienced around the, you know, the fire safety shut offs or anything like that, and you guys go up on generator, then the public can come down and charge their devices, their cell phones, et cetera, with a whole bank of multiple outlets on the side. I think that's a very important aspect of this design and something I would like to see in all of our fire stations. So I just want to make sure that's still part of the planning here and that that's going to be more than adequate for the foreseeable need around that.
I don't know. Austin was actually putting that in. Austin, can you chime in here?
Yeah. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Yes, that is still a functioning part of the project. It will be located adjacent to the main accessible entry. It'll be on the lower end of basically a panel display, which will also feature, you know, the mailbox, the emergency call phone and also the doorbell.
Okay, terrific. And do you happen to know about how many outlets that'll be available to the public?
I believe at this point it's two outlets and I believe the concept are two to four outlets. And the concept is to be able to apply a electrical strip, which can then come out and then you can attach more charging devices.
Okay. And I guess my design input would be sure you could add a temporary electrical strip. Not sure how that would work in inclement weather. My input would be, let's have 20, let's have 30 outlets. I mean, you know, we're a town of many thousands of people and with a power failure and if people come to realize this is a resource, I don't see why we wouldn't want to plan that in right now to handle a big surge of folks that want to get their cell phones charged back up. I think that's an important design component here.
Absolutely. Now I'll communicate that with our electrical engineer. I think that's a good idea.
Terrific. Thank you. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for, Ellen and Chuck, thanks for the presentation. Again, I just want to echo John's thoughts around the change to the adapting to the reach code. I think that's a great change to be able to do that. I guess the only question I would have or suggestion would be as we have budget discussions coming up, I'd love to understand what the cost would be to put solar in. Because if we're already there, I mean, I think it would be to the benefit to the station, to the community to just not just be solar ready, but to put it in. So I think getting those estimates ahead of time so we can have that discussion at our budget meeting, which is starting next, next council meeting would be, would be helpful.
Staff has directed us, so we do have our cost estimator, who will be, who will be putting together the cost and he will give that item, what is that extra add for the PV panel? So you can make a decision about that when you approve.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the work on this.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you. I, all right, I don't see any, I don't see any other council members wishing to ask a question. So Crystal, Councilmember Collins.
Sorry, I was desperately pushing the hand raise, the hand raise button and wasn't finding it. I just wanted to say thank you to Chuck and everybody involved. This has been a long time in coming. I, I think we've been talking about this thing for six, seven years. So it's nice to see the progress on it and I want to echo, I believe, Adam's comments about looking into the solar, solar panels. I think that would be an important addition to the project. But otherwise, I think it just looks great. I'm glad to see this is finally moving closer and closer to construction.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any members of the public, Crystal, wish to make comment?
No, I don't see any hands.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to, you know, thank you, a great presentation. The design is, seems very solid, it has great integrity. And it will be nice to make sure that our firefighters have a safe and comfortable environment to protect them as well as they try to protect us. And I do also concur with making sure that we can take a look at the budget for the solar panels and maybe a little bit more of a robust solution for public charging during PSPS events. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So Crystal, could you invite Vice Mayor McDowell back in before we go into reports to council? Item 7B, fuel reduction and wildfire. Yes. All right. Looks like she's got audio all ready to go. So with that, Acting Deputy Fire Chief Chuck Lacks for your, your next presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor Palmer, Rowan and council members. We've got actually a little bigger of a team for this presentation. And so we've kind of divided this presentation up into what I would call two parts. Our first part is going to be about fuel reduction and how we used our FEMA grant along with our city funds and our first phase as well as our second phase, which is just around the corner here in a month for that to start. Then I'll follow that presentation up. We could certainly have question and answers at the end of the first presentation with my presentation on update on preparations for the 2021 wildfire season. So let me introduce the team that we have with us tonight. With Rustic Ranch are Heidi and John Stauffer, the owners of Rustic Ranch who we contracted with to help us with our fuel reduction efforts. As well as part of their team are Oliver Curtis and Shane Browser with Flame Mapper. So with that, I'll hand it over to Heidi. We might need to make sure that she can advance slides or not. And then we'll get going.
Heidi, you should have. Thank you, Chuck Lacks. I think I, I think I have control of the screen though. I'm not sure how to turn on my, my video. So if someone could do that for me, I'm sure that's an option for you all to do.
Yeah, you should have access to turning it on your own. Let me see if I can force that. There you go.
There we go. Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing us to be here tonight to present to you what we feel was a really successful Phase One of the San Carlos Vegetation Management Project. We're pretty, I don't know if I have. I have control, but there should be some arrows at the bottom of the screen. Maybe, Crystal, you just want to navigate through the buttons since I don't seem to be able to see those.
Sure. I'll take it over here. Thank you.
There we go. I can see them now, actually. There we go. So as I mentioned, we, we are pretty excited to show you what we were able to accomplish in your community between about September of 2020 up through the very beginning of January, which we call Phase One of the San Carlos Vegetation Management Project. And jumping around on me here. Crystal, I think I'll have you actually back up to slide one and I'm just going to let go of the control if that's okay.
Sure. So you want to move forward from here?
Yeah, if you just, there you go. So then you can click on the first bubble, project scope. Or the arrow, either one should work.
So this is the first slide. Did you want me to move forward?
There we go. Yeah. So sorry about that. So the scope of Phase One of the project entailed basically clearing a 100-foot shaded fuel break around the collective 4.82 perimeter of Big Canyon and Eaton Parks, which included trimming tree canopies to eight feet and removing flashy fire fuels, which we did with both grazing and hand clearing mechanisms. In addition to that, we performed cleanup of other flammable vegetation at Crestview and Highlands Parks, with the overall goal being to protect life and property, particularly the 230 structures that immediately surround Big Canyon and Eaton Parks, where the average home value is $2 million or approximately $416 million in total. Next slide, please. One more. There you go. And this one you'll want to move through one by one. So one more time, please.
So right now we're on the challenges slide. I think there might be.
Click it one more time. It should zoom in on that first challenge so we can see the text. There we go. So this project had significant challenges, as you can imagine. One of which was time constraints. So we were not able to get started until the nesting bird season concluded, which was about August, September timeframe. And then we needed to complete the Phase One of the project before the rainy season started. So I know you didn't have much for rain this past year, but in our minds, that was about the January, January timeframes. Frame. So we had a limited time window to get all of the work done in Phase One. Next slide, please. So living in San Carlos, you all know that there, it's a beautiful city. But from a project management standpoint, this, this area had significant topographic challenges and steep slopes that were ridden with overgrown vegetation. In addition to that, all of the structures are pretty dense and it created limited access for any equipment that we needed to bring in to clear the vegetation. And so with that, nearly all of the vegetation had to be cleared by hand. And in addition, if you, if you remember, August, September, October timeframe was when wildfires were raging across the state of California. So many hand crews were, and mechanical crews were being pulled to different parts of the state, which limited us in our ability to bring hand crews into the city of San Carlos. Next slide. So another challenge was the fact that there amongst all of the different types of vegetation in these two parks, four parks rather, was an enormous wall of poison oak in Big Canyon Park. And while many crews refused to even touch it, the crew that we ultimately assigned to this part of the project was able to successfully remove the above-ground poison oak. Though the subterranean vegetation still remains and will need to be maintained on an annual basis. So it's recommended that to do that, you would bring in goats again to, and we will be bringing in goats again to graze the green vegetation. And then they'll also trample the woody vegetation that remains, eventually eradicating. The goal is to eventually eradicate that poison oak and other vegetation. Next slide, please. So in addition, there are a number of different protective species in the San Carlos area, namely the dusty-footed wood rat. They're kind of all throughout the park and you've all probably seen that if you've gone on the hiking trails and so forth. So many of their habitats are actually were within the grove of poison oak. So the silver lining of having to tear down that poison oak wall and other vegetation by hand was that it made it easier to avoid those nests of the dusty-footed wood rat. Next slide, please. So one of the biggest challenges actually was the fact that throughout the years, the homeowners have sort of created their own boundaries. We saw fence lines that were, you know, beyond property lines or infringing potentially on city, city property. And so it was often difficult for our crews to know whether they were within the project's scope. And though most homeowners were pleased with the wildfire mitigation efforts, some complained that we weren't close enough or we were too close and so forth. But ultimately, we were able to collaborate with city staff, fire department, public works, Parks and Rec and so forth, to be able to quell any of the homeowner concerns and round it out with, you know, I think, you know, we were able to satisfy everybody in the first phase of the project. Next slide, please. I apologize. This was supposed to move a little faster. It kind of has a nice flow normally to, from one bubble to the next. But I can see that it's a little, little slow. So that was not an exhaustive list of all of the challenges. It definitely presented a fair number of challenges. But as I mentioned, we feel, we feel pretty satisfied that we were able to complete Phase One of the project by the first, you know, within the first couple of days of January. So to do that and to address the challenges, we assembled a really strong team. The city had been working on this project and getting it off the ground for at least a year and a half, even two years before we were ever engaged. So with that, they, they put together, I think, a pretty good proposal to FEMA. They competed and won for the funding. And then after that, they hired an environmental consultant who literally put together a 200-page report on their recommendations for the project, species to avoid and so forth. And so from there, we were hired to manage the project and assemble a team to be the boots-on-the-ground part of the project. So in addition to those folks who are on the ground, we, we Rustic Ranch have a pretty strong legal team, a strong insurance team, and we're a commercial grazer and we have a mechanical clearing arm of our company. So by structuring it this way, we feel we were able to effectively implement the scope of the project while insulating the city from, from risk. So we did that by hiring one of the top-notch grazers in the state. We happen to know most of the players in the industry and as well as the brush clearing and tree, tree work companies, we were able to hire J and M reforestation, who did a fantastic job with all the hand clearing. We also brought in some heavy equipment despite limited access. But one of the unsung heroes of the project is our wildfire behavior consultant, which is Flame Mapper. Next slide, please. Next slide. There we go. So Flame Mapper is a data-driven company that uses geographic information systems, technology and algorithms and an array of different tools to develop wildfire behaving models for their clients. For us, we engaged them early in the project and they did things like evaluate the terrain for us so that we knew what was achievable within the project and maybe what would be too steep for us to tackle. They also developed maps for us that allowed us to break the project down into acre parcels so that we were able to make sure that our crews stayed within the scope of their contract and the project and then easily refer to different areas of the project. So if, if perhaps the fire department or city staff just thought that there were. fire department or city staff just thought that there were areas that needed more attention, we could easily refer to the map that you see in the, in the top middle to identify which areas needed, you know, correction, if you will. And then finally, in the bottom right, Flame Mapper created a map for us, which, that sort of opaque boundary around the parks is the 100-foot perimeter. And so our crews were able to pull this map up on their, like, their phone or any other similar device, to be able to know where they were in the project at any given time, again, to make sure that they were within the scope of the project and weren't clearing area that, that wasn't part of their contract and so forth. So really helped us effectively carry out the scope of the project. But this actually isn't the normal, these aren't the normal services that Flame Mapper provides. And so when we get to the end of the presentation, we'll showcase for you really what their bread and butter is and what they're really good at. We appreciated all the things that they were able to do for us as far as the mapping goes. But being that this is a publicly funded project, we recognize that it's really important to be able to show the public that the dollars that were spent on the project were done so in a prudent and effective manner. And so we felt, when we proposed on this project, that it would behoove us to be able to use data and outcomes to be able to show anybody who was interested what we were able to achieve with the project. So next slide. So before I get to the final reports by Flame Mapper, I just wanted to show you all a few before-and-after pictures. You know, I'm sure you've all been through these parks since this work took place, but we just wanted to showcase a handful of pictures from before the goats and when the goats were there. You can see in the Big Canyon entrance, the top left is when, just the very beginning of when the goats were mobilized. And then shortly thereafter, in the lower left, they had grazed quite a bit of that vegetation. And then finally, we went in with some mechanical equipment and really cleaned up the entrance to Big Canyon Park. Kind of a dramatic difference. Next slide. So this is the poison oak wall. The top-left picture is looking up, there's a residence up there at the top of the hill within Big Canyon Park. The far-right photo on the top, you can actually see the residence, but these photos are really the progression of the teardown of that poison oak wall. So on the right, again, you can see the crews there. They're not very big, but you can see them. They were up there with chainsaws and other handheld equipment. And then ultimately, where before you couldn't see the fence line, you know, in front of that, that house, now it's all, all been taken down so that you can see it. So again, the goats will have to go back in and, and make sure that the vegetation stays in check. But the large lion's share of that part of the project has been really dealt with. So we were pretty happy with that. Next slide, please. So this is just a photo looking down over Britton Avenue. You can see that, on the right picture, has more of that flashy fuel, the dry vegetation, that the goats don't necessarily prefer, but they will go in and eat. It's just an example of some of the things goats can do. Next slide. So this is the view looking into the backyard of one of the residences in, in Big Canyon Park. I think this, this resident actually, originally, they maybe had some complaints about whether the goats were or weren't close enough to their residence, but ultimately was very happy. As you can see, there, you know, coyote brush has been removed, and other flammable vegetation that maybe before threatened their home is now pretty much gone. Okay, so this is a fence line in Big Canyon Park. It was very, very messy when we first began to tackle it. The upper-left picture just shows all of that flammable woody vegetation. And then from left to right, and then the lower section shows just how much we were able to accomplish, first with goats, and then with the hand crews. And before, where you barely could see the fence, now, now you can, you can definitely see it. I think this is the last of the before-and-after photos, but this is just an example of the work that was done in Eaton Park at the Loma Road entrance. So I think it's one of the best photos, the progression of, of, you know, from goats to hand-clearing, what, what can be accomplished when you employ this method. So on the left, it was basically right when the goats were mobilized, you can see all of the green vegetation. And then the middle photo is, you can even see a goat in the background there. But they are able to clear the, the green vegetation in, like, a couple acres in just one day. So they moved pretty quickly through both of the parks. In fact, I think the goats were in and out of there in, like, three weeks. And then, so finally, the last picture is after our hand crews came through and, and took down what the goats weren't able to consume. Next slide, please. And so last, but, well, before we talk about Phase Two of the project, which I'll briefly touch on at the very end, as I mentioned before, we feel that especially when you're dealing with public dollars, you want to be able to showcase in a data-driven model what those funds were used for and how effective they, they were used. And so I'm going to introduce you to Oliver Curtis, who is a project manager for Flame Mapper. And along with him, for questions, if you have any toward the end of the project, or end of the presentation, rather, is Shay Bressard, who is a co-founder of Flame Mapper. So with that, Oliver?
Thank you, Heidi. And good evening, everyone. What you're looking at right now is just a, a map that we created that was looking at the, right, helping to identify that this project was, was properly targeted. And one of the products that we, that we use mostly with cities and also homeowner associations and different types of communities, is to try and make sure that we're evaluating where actual risk lies within a community. And so what you're seeing on the map on the right is just the vegetation and how that influences predicted structural loss. So what we were able to determine here by using some of our, our risk products, was that we were actually targeting a very important part of San Carlos. And so this project would have really nice impact for the community in reducing risk and, and other types of prevention activities. So as, as you can imagine, you know, there is a relationship in this particular case, although not everywhere, where the amount of burnable vegetation and structural loss are correlated. And so by doing prevention activities through the different types of grazing and hand crews, we're able to actually use data and use our different techniques to, to develop that relationship and show where these projects would be most beneficial to the community, and then how those benefits actually are manifest through more modeling exercises. So thank you guys very much for allowing us to be part of this presentation. We just felt like it would be helpful to communicate to you guys, the city council, as well as the community, kind of why these projects are so important and the types of impacts that they can have. So this project, as we just kind of conclude this slide, would have nice, high impact for the different structures, which are the dots that you can see on the right, and just helping reduce their, their risk. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we were tasked to do on this particular project was to simulate the effects before the activities that Heidi described, and then after, so that we could actually understand what types of impact that they would have on this community. And what you can see on the upper right, and then on the lower left, I mean, excuse me, the upper right, and then the lower right, was a 37% reduction in fire intensity within the shaded area, and then, which is the, the area that was being treated. And then a 19% total reduction in fire intensity over the entire study area or the park boundaries. And so we felt like these are, are very good numbers. We work with a lot of different cities, mainly in Southern California, but in other even higher-risk areas than you guys have. And it's really nice to be able to actually show the types of impacts these projects can have and the types of intensity reductions. And then, the reason intensities, fire intensities are just important is because the lower the intensity, the more impactful the suppression efforts would be that your fire department will have in, in home survivability and just public safety in general. Next slide. And so as Heidi showed earlier, you know, we were able to, to use different risk modeling methods that we've developed and different methods of displaying this information to help people understand more specifically what the risk looks like in any particular area. What you're seeing in this three-dimensional map that we've created was just, just looking at the, the structural risks surrounding this park, which is a little bit higher than other parts of the city, but then also like how fire might actually move across landscape. And so this is just for display purposes only, but this is just to see kind of the time dependency of fire across any particular landscape. Again, these are just modeled scenarios. We really like to produce fire simulations so that we can actually do the prevention actions that are so powerful in protecting the community. And we really would like to continue to work with the rest of the city and other natural areas, other public parks and public roadways, just to do further analysis, so that we can make sure that the, the prevention is in the right place and that the impact is to the benefit of the whole community. Thank you.
So our final slide is really just to show you that the work is not done in, under this particular FEMA grant and under this project. So we will be coming back to your community in the next month, month and a half, to continue the efforts in the four parks, Big Canyon Park, Eaton Park, Highlands, and Crestview Park. We'll be continuing grazing efforts to take advantage of the fact that plants are, they're seeding right now, so the goats can, can graze those plants and optimize seed head consumption prior to the start of fire season. And then we'll be following it up with hand crews and mechanical removal to continue the eradication of the invasive and fire-threatening fuels in those parks. So with that, that concludes our, our presentation, and I'll hand it back to Chief Lacks.
Thank you, Heidi. Mayor Palmer-Lowant, at this time, maybe we, if anyone has questions for Heidi and her staff, this might be a good time to give them a chance to address those questions.
Okay. Any members of council wish to ask a question? Councilmember Rack, followed by Councilmember Collins, and then Dugan? Adam, you're on mute.
I got their hand down, but I didn't get the mute off. Thank you, Mayor Palmer-Lowant. Chuck and Heidi, thanks for the presentation. I just had, I guess, one question. I know you mentioned about sort of the property lines, kind of, sort of, I guess, sort of, not knowing where things started and where things ended. And were you able, do you feel like you were able to do a complete job around where the actual park boundaries are? And are there concerns with, you know, what, what can we be doing to be working with those homeowners to make sure that, sort of, they're doing their part to, you know, ensure there's adequate fire breaks, you know, around their property, you know, if, if sort of some of those property lines are blurred a little bit at this point?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that question, Adam. So that was kind of right where the problem was, was we noticed a lot of the homeowners were doing some of their own prevention work, actually on a city property, or their fences extended on the city property. So then, when we had crews in the park, there, a lot of confusion was about exactly where the boundary, the property lines were. And so John did a great job with using the maps, being able to educate those homeowners with, here it is on paper, here's where the property lines are. And so we were really able to resolve a lot of those issues. So we do see a lot of, through this process, we were really able to see into a lot of the backs of properties from the vantage point. And I really think that now, we've really created that bigger 100-foot from the property line into the park, which really gives the homeowners that goal to get to that new property line and increase the 100-foot that we put in. And we've already seen some of that taking place over the winter. And then we'll be right back in the parks in another month to continue that effort. And that's another key part of having Rustic Ranch back on board, because they've already had the opportunity to get educated on where those property lines are.
Great. Thank you. And I just had one question, one really fast follow-up on the, you know, we've got a, a number of pieces of county property that are, you know, within our boundaries, adjacent to our boundaries. You know, how has the relationship been with trying to do fuel mitigation with the county as well? I'm thinking Pulgas Ridge, we've got Palomar, and you've got Devon Shark Canyon as examples.
So Pulgas Ridge is scheduled to do some hand crew work. The, they don't have a date yet with that. So that, that project, I'm waiting to hear about that. And then, you might have heard, there's some other work coming with the SFPUC, where Cal Fire is going to come in, kind of on the backside, west side of Belmont, and, and do some burns this spring, late spring. So we're paying attention to how that goes. What I'm hearing is they really are interested to see how the vegetation reacts to putting fire on it. So this year will really be more of an experiment about what we'll be able to do on those parts of the county land to the west of us. And then, of course, to the south of us, they bring goats in there every year to work on, on their lands that border the county and the city on the south side.
Great. Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate the updates.
Right. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chuck, and Heidi, and Oliver, for a great presentation. I think this is probably the most in-depth we've seen in quite a while. My question, I, I guess it's probably aimed more at Oliver and your Flame Mapper. That one slide was, was pretty impressive. That shows that, I guess that's heat intensity, for lack of a better way to describe it. I'm wondering if the study takes in, into account potential, the effects of major wind events, which might push the fire one way or another? Is that part of, of how you study this?
Sorry, I needed a second to unmute there. For, for this particular example, we were just looking at, you know, if fire were to occur in either of those areas, and then what, what outcomes would that have from a statistical standpoint? We're more than capable of producing other types of studies that could tell us more about how fire would behave as, in certain wind directions based on certain types of wind events. That's a lot of what we do on other types of city work, is understanding exactly what might happen with wind, wind-driven fire events.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful to, to find that out, because, you know, we've seen from other fire events around the state and even the west, that wind can have, can be a significant fire enhancer, and it can cause massive damage where it might not otherwise have if the wind hadn't been there.
Anything else, Councilmember Collins?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, again, for the presentation. Excellent.
All right. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, hi. Thank you. Good presentation. You know, we obviously have a lot of areas in our town that can use fire mitigation and resources, as ever, are limited. So I'm just, you know, really glad to see we're using a data-driven, algorithmic approach to prioritization. That's great. And I hope we thoroughly embrace that and continue to do that year after year. My questions are really around just, you know, I, I didn't get a great sense of exactly how much has been accomplished so far, and how much we will be done with by the end of this season. And then, I don't need an answer to that. I really just want to understand, if I'm a member of the community, how can I find that out? How can I keep tabs on how this program's going? I had the opportunity this fall to literally knock on every door on Britton Avenue. And I'll say, when you get to Upper Britton, a lot of homeowners are very concerned about fire mitigation, and rightfully so. fire mitigation and rightfully so. They're surrounded by Eden Park and Big Canyon Park. And it looked like on some of your slides that work will be done on both of them. But I'll say, I heard from several homeowners that there was a perception that only some areas were ever mitigated and other areas, and they get mitigated year after year, and other areas never get mitigated. So I'm not looking for the answer to that tonight. But if I'm a concerned homeowner, how do I know what this program is going to get to this year? And how do I just come to understand the methodology that it is in fact going to make its rounds throughout the years and and eventually get to all the areas of concern?
Well, we'll work on on that public outreach for that education piece, John, on the Council member Dugan, on what the progress will be moving forward for our fuel reduction annual projects. I think that will be great, maybe in even one of our newsletters can be dedicated to that.
Great, and I would just say, you know, it's such an area of ongoing concern that I think a newsletter to kind of highlight it and any outreach is great, but I just, you know, I would say a tab somewhere on a website that people can go to and just kind of get the latest, you know, it's such an important matter for the city and and more so year over year. So I I think that'd be a worthwhile investment.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Dugan. So from my perspective, I had a similar question to what Councilmember Dugan was talking about. And I think for me, it's really around wanting to understand the frequency with which this program needs to be brought back into the community to maintain what appears to be a very significant reduction in risk, which was really the objective of this. So I'm thrilled to see such robust numbers in the analysis that was provided and the thoroughness with which the job was done. And again, you don't have to answer that at this point, Deputy, but perhaps, you know, as we move forward and in consideration of the upcoming budgeting cycle, that would be helpful to understand. And then and then also, you know, you know, just given the vulnerability of San Carlos and other areas where we share, you know, borders with other jurisdictions, that I would concur that that would be helpful to understand and understand the collaboration that's going on there. Because every member in our community, regardless of the, you know, Zillow price of their home is important because for each, it's their castle. And those are, you know, we value every community member. So it would be helpful to understand that the thoroughness, right, of the program where we can influence it.
Yep, I got some notes taken for that. I will follow up at our upcoming budget meetings on our plans for ongoing funding for fuel reduction.
Fantastic, and looking forward to having the goats back. I think I'm competing with them now in pandemic for being the the top grazer, so. All right, so and are you wanting any questions from the public or comments from the public at this point? Or do you have another report and then we go to that?
I do have a few slides to go through for kind of some of the other things that we are doing in preparation and kind of an update on some of the other items that have come up in the past. So thank you, Heidi, for your team being here tonight. So we can move to the next slide. We're going to go over a couple of things and then I'll answer questions at the end and then I was then we could get to the community questions. Next slide, please. So last year, I reported that we were looking into getting fire cameras, alert wildfire cameras into our community. And the picture on the left shows where we currently have cameras, where you could go to alertwildfire.org, you could view what the cameras are viewing, as well as those cameras are monitored at the Felton Dispatch Center that's managed by Cal Fire. And then the image on the right shows all of the cameras essentially in the Bay Area. And they're as busy as could be getting these cameras installed. And we've requested additional cameras on the peninsula over overlooking San Carlos, as well as a couple actually in San Carlos. So they're so overwhelmed with getting these cameras installed, we are on the list. And I'll keep you updated as we get more information about that. But there's been quite an improvement from last year. Next slide. So I wanted to spend a little time talking about the very high fire severity zone. This is actually our city here with the area highlighted in red that's been identified by the state as our very high fire severity zone. This was updated in 2009. We are anticipating a new map coming out from the state in a year. There have been delays the state has reported due to COVID, so they don't have an exact date on on when we're going to see that updated map. When we move to the next slide, because this is kind of where it kind of gets important about what those very high severity zones mean, is that there are different fire code requirements for construction in those zones. So this is a pretty good list of where that difference is if you're in that zone or not in that zone. And this has to do with new construction as well as large remodels. So we're talking about fire resistant decking material. Exterior windows must have at least one pane tempered. So these codes are what we are using right now for projects in that area. Next slide. So I'll talk a little bit about response because that is a question that comes up quite a bit. And and really, we need to think about response in in two ways when we have a what we call a wildland fire. We've got a local response, which are made up of our communities that surround San Carlos, so Redwood City, Belmont, San Mateo, Menlo Park, Woodside. And whenever we have a wildland fire on a red flag day, we get six engines and three battalion chiefs responding to that incident. And the theory there is is we're going to put a bunch of resources on it as quick as we can and keep that fire as small as we can. Any fire west of Alameda is considered to be in the mutual threat zone with the state and local government. So as we send our six fire engines and three battalion chiefs, the state responds with six type three engines, two battalion chiefs, a helicopter, two air tankers, air attack unit, which supervises all of the air assets, two bulldozers and two fire crews. Now, those are a lot of resources from the state and they're coming from quite a ways away. So we don't always see those resources in our community. A lot of times, we're able to put the fire out and cancel all those resources. But I thought it was really important to everyone to know that when we do have a fire, we have quite a bit of resources that are in route to that incident. Next slide. So for this upcoming year, again, we are going to have our annual community meeting regarding wildfire preparedness, our annual firefighter training, our annual fuel reduction, which we've just spent some time talking about, our annual evacuation exercise upcoming in July. I'm not quite ready to release the date on that, but we've got a date circled already. And as well as continue to participate in the state mutual aid program, that's where our fire engine at Station 16 responds out of our community to other communities throughout the state to assist them with those large fires. As well as something were to happen here, we would have the whole state worth of fire resources to come assist us, as well as ongoing opportunities, which I think, you know, I don't have anything in concrete, but one of the things that we're working on in collaboration with the county and neighboring jurisdiction is a chipper program. And a chipper program would be where we would notify residents that they could pull vegetation out of their backyard, pile it up in the front of their house, and the chipper will be there on a certain date on their block and chip up all the debris and haul it away. And there would be no cost. And we're, it sounds like we might have some grant funds through the county available for that program. So those are the things, there's a lot going on with all the communities around us, looking for additional things for us to do. And so as those opportunities come up, we'll have our hand raised for those. I think that concludes our presentation. So if you have any questions at this time?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Lacks. I had two quick questions. The annual community meeting, just for our viewers at home, do you have a month in mind for that?
I think we'll be targeting August, end of August, I would think around when we had it last year.
Perfect. And then this kind of goes back to the the clearing and the goats when when we had people out there working on that clearing, did we note any homes that had especially old roofs that, you know, might need updating to become more fire resistant? And I know that you mentioned that we have policies for remodels and new builds. Do we have anything that helped current homeowners bring their roofs or their decks to be more fire resistant?
The only trigger for that is if they're going to install a new roof. And then when they install a new roof, it needs to meet the current fire codes, which is it, it's the whole roof package. And that includes if it's a, if it's a wood shake roof, that wood shake roof needs to be treated. And they class those roof packages as a class one, two, three or four. We require that higher class. So we're not out looking for roofs. The we're looking for when someone puts in a permit to have a roof installed, then it's getting inspected that it meets the current code.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. First, yeah, that was a great to understand that that many state resources are dispatched if there's any issue. I live up in the hills myself and I, you know, we had a very quick reaction of a, just an amazing number of resources when that incident happened. It was, I think, just off of Ralston and Belmont. But anyway, it was really amazing because it looked like it could have gotten out of hand and boom, the resources were there. But real quick, where do those state resources come from? And like, what is the usual ETA on them?
So we've got some of the, like, we have a bulldozer at Station 17, at Ralston and Tower Road at the facility there, as well as a type three engine. And then we've got to go a little farther out into the county to get the other type three engine in the water tender up at Kings Mountain at Station 58. Then we start going farther out south to Santa Clara County, as well as to the East Bay for some of those other resources. The closest helicopter available is coming from Felton. And then our fixed wing aircraft are coming out of Hollister.
Okay, okay. And those are all Cal Fire resources?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just that chipper program, I wasn't aware of that. That that seems like a really strong program and I'm glad we're doing that. I hope it's adequately funded and that we get good awareness out around that. I think that's a great program. And my quick question is, do we have any resources to help, you know, say, you know, elderly or other folks who might have the resources to clear their own land? Is there any kind of outreach or program or any way we help folks like that get their environment safe?
So we do do our annual inspections with our engine crews driving through the neighborhoods. And we do, if we come across some people that need assistance, whatever the reason is, we do help them get in touch with some resources through the county to get some volunteers or some funding for that. But yeah, we probably could have an additional way for people to be able to reach out to us, and we don't hear that coming in too often to the fire department as a request.
Okay, well, I'm glad we do something. It occurs to me, we could probably do more on that front. So I would encourage that. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And then one one last quick question. I heard you mentioned that Belmont is going to be doing some controlled burns later this year. And I'm I'm hopeful that there'll be some robust communication going out to the community when that is planned so that doesn't cause too much alarm.
Yeah, and it's not Belmont, it's just west of Belmont in the San Francisco watershed area between Belmont and 280. And so I will reach out to Cal Fire is going to be the agency that's going to be conducting that operation and see if they are, how far out they're reaching for their public notification on that.
Yeah, that that would be great because I just know, just given the level of concern we have in the community with our high risk status and the general concern that if people aren't made aware of that ahead of time, that could be problematic. So. Great, all right, all right. I don't see any additional questions from council. So Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment at this time?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, thank you so much. Terrific presentation, really good information.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we have a COVID-19 update from City Attorney Greg Rubens.
Hello, I'm Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I, tonight, I'm going to be presenting the COVID-19 update for you. The the period of the update is from March 23 through April 12. And Crystal, can you help me with the?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up. I think I have too many power. There's a little bit of a delay here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so it's that side I covered. So that, so we've been working with the school district and the school district has announced some additional testing at Central Middle School. I actually drove by there this morning and saw a line of people getting ready to be tested. So it's definitely in play right now. The the idea is to have people, children and adults, the school population primarily be be able to get tested conveniently at the school. If you want to have it be tested or you feel like you should be tested, maybe you're traveling or going somewhere that it's required, you can do, there are walk ups available as well. And the appointments can be made through Curative and are recommended though, rather than the walk up. Questions can be directed to Curative at the number on your screen. As as vaccination rates increase, testing for COVID continues to be the main strategy to console spread. You're supposed, you should get tested if you have symptoms of COVID, had close contact with someone with COVID, participated in activities that put you at risk, traveling or et cetera. And then San Mateo County has some resources about, so you can learn more about testing. Next slide, please. So you may have caught this, on April 6, the the governor announced that it's his plan to fully open California's economy on June 15. There's two criteria that the governor has set for that. It's a vaccine supply needs to be sufficient for everyone 16 years and older who wishes to be inoculated. And hospital rates are stable and remain low. City staff is considering impacts and planning for reopening in alignment with the state and county guidance. This is the main reason I'm making the presentation. It's the code enforcement aspects of the Parkland and temporary street closure program. So last summer, on August 4, the county Board of Supervisors adopted an urgency ordinance authorizing administrative penalties for individuals, organizations and businesses who violate the COVID-19 health orders. The county business engagement and compliance program was established and created a compliance team as part of its business engagement program to investigate and respond to reports of alleged violations of state law for health orders related to COVID-19. So as part of that, and it's required under under the the urgency ordinance, that there be one warning. Subsequent violations can result in administrative citations, non criminal, of $250 to $3,000 per violation, depending on the gravity of the health risk, the number of prior warnings, you tend to profit from the violation and evidence of good faith efforts to comply. As of the data that I've received is that as of March 20 efforts to comply. As of, the data that I've received is that as of March 28, the county issued hundreds of warnings countywide and issued 23 fines for a total of 36,500. I did receive the data specific to St. Carlos this morning, and there have been 37 warnings issued to restaurants in St. Carlos. But I'm looking at the matrix, there's probably over 100 warnings to all types of businesses since last October. The most recent warning was given on April 8. And the counties, their method of resolving these, at least in St. Carlos that I can see from the matrix they sent me, is that they're abated. So they've worked with the business and abated the violations and have obtained compliance after issuing warnings. Next slide. So the city's policy is focused on prevention, safety, and education of businesses, consistent with what the county is doing. We understand this new world we've been in since last fall and, and some of the struggles that businesses have been having complying with some of the changing rules. So we've been informing the businesses of what the requirements are and working with them, especially on the parklets and the regulations on how to safely operate their, their business in the parklets. Sheriff's deputies issue warnings where appropriate, and even carry masks if they see people who are not wearing masks, who say they don't have the mask. So next slide, please. So you're going to hear more about this later today, but this evening. But the program began in June. We were one of the first in the county to have an outdoor dining program. It's currently set to expire on September 1, 2021. The businesses seeking to use a portion of the right of way are required to obtain an encroachment permit from the city, and the permits require compliance with all the COVID-19 regulations. Such, our permits can be terminated with or without cause, but we specifically have a provision in them that they can be terminated if someone is determined to have violated the COVID-19 regulations. Next slide. So in St. Carlos, during this whole time since June of last year, we issued three citations to restaurants early on in the, in the program, who opened their parklets after the orange dividers went up, but before their permits were finalized. So those three restaurants were received citations. Since that time, their violations have been resolved, or they're still in process with the county. Now, it's like, when I'm saying a citation, this is like a ticket or an infraction that those businesses received. Seven restaurants received warnings from my office for being out of compliance with the encroachment permits, for violating the restrictions of the health order on February 14. Restaurant, six restaurants were found allowing indoor dining, even though they, some of them dispute this, but it was, the evidence was pretty clear that they were, and under that part of the orders, indoor dining was not allowed. So it was pretty clear that they were violating the order. A detailed letter was sent to them and warning those businesses that if they are, if they are found to violate the COVID-19 regulations, we're going to revoke their permit. And that's a pretty strict, of those restaurants that have received those warnings, we really, we've given them a fair warning and notice of what the consequence will be if they continue to violate those orders and they're found to have violated, violated them, excuse me. Next slide, please. So my protocol that our office has developed is, yeah, we're trying to encourage compliance, but at the same time, we need, I need, as a city attorney and, and as part of our code enforcement regulation, to have documentation of the violations. So the city is encouraging deputies, if they see a violation when they're on patrol on Laurel Street or in town, to document violations. So a complaint could be made to the county health department for further investigation. They're the experts on the orders and what constitutes a violation. If the county health department issues a citation that is upheld on appeal, I'm going to consider that as they've been found to have violated the health orders. And then that will result in that restaurant's parklet encroachment permit being violated. Now, first, I will send a warning letter to, if there's any restaurants that are not on the previous list, but I will send a warning letter, just like the other restaurants received, and then that'll be their final warning. The public is encouraged to report violations as well. So if you see a violation, please contact the sheriff's office or Kimberly Chu, the deputy city attorney. And you'll see her email and her phone number there, or directly to the county health department at www.smcgov.org, or their 211 number. And next slide, please. That's last slide. It's okay. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that the council may have about the, what we've been doing and how to, how we're enforcing the rules as best we can under these difficult circumstances. So I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Any, any questions for Greg? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Greg, for the rundown on this. So it sounds like we've had to issue a number of warnings. And could you just characterize how the restaurants have responded to those? I mean, I assume, since we haven't done any further enforcement, or we haven't revoked any parklet permits, it, you know, can I take that as evidence that they have generally responded adequately, or?
You know, that's an excellent question. We sent our letter out about a week after the Valentine's Day violations, where they were operating indoor. And between the first warning and just, I mean, between the violations and just after my letter, actually, the state reopened indoor dining. So we sort of went into a different protocol after that. And the last complaints that I see in the county's matrix that they sent me was on March 1. And again, the complaint, the matrix goes all the way through April 8. So it seems like the restaurants that received warnings have all abated their conduct largely. I can't say every moment they're in compliance, but in a sense of enforcement, since the last one was March 1, and before that was the 20, 26 of February. I think the county's program's fairly robust, and it's, we've been now, you know, a little more than a month, and the restaurants that were on my list are not showing up on the county's enforcement.
Okay, that's, that's good data. Thank you. And then, is that right, you know, you're administering this program for St. Carlos, but you're relying solely upon how, you know, either reports from the public or other enforcement actions through the county? Or does St. Carlos also have a specific monitoring program?
Our, we don't have a specific monitoring program, except through the sheriff's department when we, when we receive a complaint. So they will do an informational report for me. And I still have the discretion to do, to do citations if I feel like we have a repeat offender and they're not getting the message. But my feeling is that the parklet encroachment permit is a pretty important disincentive to stay, it's an incentive to stay out of trouble, because you're going to lose a privilege, is the way I'm putting it. And it's a pretty significant privilege to be able to continue to have outdoor dining in our right of way.
Yeah, understood. I mean, and I'm just glad to hear that it's working well. I mean, I know my wife runs a small business, and it's been hard on small businesses to even understand the rules, keep up with the changing rules. They change and shift quite a bit. So it sounds like this program has been healthy overall, and that our business owners have been responsive. So I just want to note that. Thank you.
And that's, and that's the data that I was just describing, I just received today. So I actually was pleased to see that the county health department is actually out there at all times. They're not just during business hours. And some of their warnings that they've given are around midnight or around closing time. And I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive what, what they're, what they've been doing. Now, that, again, I'm going to, you know, put a caveat on this, that there are, there are times when people are not complying generally. And then there's times when the restaurants aren't policing. I hear this anecdotally. But from the, from an enforcement standpoint of what the county is seeing, they're getting compliance, and we have not. Those restaurants that have, that were having the problems in February have not reappeared on the list.
Terrific. Thank you, Greg.
All right. I'm not seeing any additional questions from council. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No, there are no hands raised for this item.
Okay. All right. So going back to the request to reorder the agenda, the next item of business would be 9A, then B and C, before we go into the public hearing. I might suggest we take just a quick break before we get into the next item. I want to just take a pulse with council to see if they're agreeable to that, or do they want to keep going?
Break, sounds good.
All right. Sounds good to me.
All right. So if we could regroup at 8:51 PM, please. Thank you. So this next agenda item is new business, item 9A, consideration of a resolution terminating the temporary closure of Laurel Street, ending the parklet outdoor dining program, and directing the termination of encroachment permits effective June 15, 2021. And I understand that we'll be taking a report from Adam Aronson, Acting Economic Development and Housing Manager, and Al Savay and Greg Rubens might be joining him in the discussion. Is that correct, Jeff?
That is correct. I was just going to make a few introductory comments before we turn it over to Adam.
Please do.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Maltby, city manager. Just wanted to put things into a little bit of context before we get into some more detail in the report. And our report this evening on this item should be fairly brief. We're aware that the council is very familiar with the program and has been monitoring the COVID response quite closely. So you're aware of the latest developments, which is really where this started. The subcommittee, as well as the city council, had gotten some anecdotal feedback and comments from community members that folks were getting a little concerned about the downtown program, and that it was becoming a little crowded and very popular in nature. So the subcommittee wanted to get together and talk about that. And then the timing happened to coincide with the announcement that I think came as a little bit of a surprise to all of us, a welcome one, hopefully, from the governor, that there, he's planning on, on ending the restrictions on June 15. So the subcommittee dealt with that as well. Staff started to think a little bit about what that might mean. And, and we thought we should check back in with the city council to, to see if thoughts have changed, or if you want to hold the course to September 1. There were a couple of areas where we discussed, we discussed sort of the, the origination of the program, the council's desire to give people a place to go during the shelter in place, an opportunity for restaurants to continue to operate and serve the public and do business in our community. We feel like the program's been very successful in those regards on both issuances. And then we started to imagine how the program might work and what some of the issues could be sort of post-restrictions. So in the, partially in June, July, and then August, before the council's plan to end on September 1. And I think those primarily, those issues will primarily be focused around parking. You know, the restaurants would be operating at actually greater than their normal capacity with the additional outdoor seating during the program. And then simultaneously, with reduced parking and, and circulation movements in the area with the 700 block closed down. In addition to that, the, the subcommittee did a pretty thorough job of identifying the fact that there's a lot more to the program than just the 700 block of Laurel Street. So we just wanted to point that out and remind you, there are elements of the program happening in the industrial arts area, on some of the adjoining streets in the downtown area that are working, and other parts of the community that are working with water walls. So that's something for you to keep in mind as well this evening. So with those introductory comments, I'll turn it over to Adam for the formal presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, Madam Mayor. So, to start off. Oops, sorry, one too far. Okay, so we'll just start off just a little bit of background. The council, you enacted the temporary street closure and parklet program last June, based on the state's declaration of emergency and the need to ensure safety and protection while adhering to proper social distancing requirements in the downtown. And the intention was for these programs to remain in place while the emergency continued, with an initial end date of December 31. However, on November 9, the council elected to extend the end date to September 1, 2021, due to the continuing nature of the COVID-19 emergency. So then on April 6, the Governor of California announced plans to lift most statewide COVID-19 restrictions on June 15, 2021, including the return to full indoor dining and retail capacity contingent on sufficient vaccine supply and low hospitalization rates. Lifting the state's tiered system, known as the blueprint for a safer economy, presents an opportunity for the city council to rethink the temporary street closure and parklet program in anticipation of an increase in demand for parking along Laurel Street, as Jeff mentioned earlier. If the governor cancels the statewide declaration of emergency, additional actions and findings by the council may be required to continue the temporary closure. So also on April 6, the downtown subcommittee met to discuss complaints that have been received from St. Carlos residents around nighttime activities and overcrowded parklets, specifically in the 600, 700, 800 blocks of Laurel Street. Residents have expressed feeling unsafe while visiting the downtown due to the lack of social distancing and congestion from pedestrian overcrowding in some areas. So for these reasons, the downtown subcommittee felt there was a sense of urgency to discuss these safety concerns with the city council and consider action. Now, you'll see on this slide, we've presented a number of options for you to consider. Staff has been recommending the first option, but really wants you to look at all of these and consider what you think is best for the community here. The first one is to adopt a resolution to end the temporary closure of Laurel Street and the parklet outdoor dining program, and then direct the termination of encroachment permits effective June 15, 2021. Currently, the program is in effect till September 1. And so this option would end the program on June 15 instead, and require all businesses to remove their temporary parklets and for public works to remove the orange barricades. This would also include the removal of the street closure barriers on the 700 block and result in return of 150 parking spaces in the downtown area, and return the area to standard traffic circulation. Now additionally, if the street closure pocket program is terminated, it could allow for some downtown community events to resume in that location, including items such as the farmer's market, San Carlos Block Party, the Public Safety Fair, Goblin Walk, and the Night of Holiday Lights. Option two is to end the temporary street closure and parklet program only on the 600, 700, 800 blocks of Laurel Street, but continue to allow in other areas of the city. So the safety concerns that have been raised are almost entirely concentrated on the 600, 700, 800 blocks of Laurel Street. And so eliminating the program on these three blocks may address the primary concerns that have been raised, while still allowing businesses in areas that are less heavily trafficked by pedestrians to promote social distancing through the use of parklets. Option three is to keep the temporary street closure and parklet program intact in its current form. Economically, the program has been successful, and supported by many downtown businesses has allowed them to expand their operations and initially promote social distancing during times when indoor dining and shopping had been restricted. This option would allow businesses to operate their parklets until the current scheduled end date of September 1. This option would allow businesses to operate their parklets until the current scheduled end date of September first. And then option four is to restructure the temporary street closure and parklet program by other means as determined by the council. So the council may choose to alter the program in a number of ways that are not outlined in the preceding options. And these could include things like implementing street closures at limited times, eliminating the street closure but still allowing all parklets, limiting the number of parklets on each block, or limiting the number of parklets per business. Somebody have option, excuse me, some of these options could prove labor intensive with regard to city resources and staff. And staff will likely need to conduct additional resource, research on their feasibility to be shared with the council at a later date. And just to quickly remind everyone of where the six hundred, seven hundred, eight blocks, eight hundred blocks of Laurel Street are, you can see them on this map here. And that concludes the presentation. So open up to questions and discussion amongst the council.
Thank you, Adam. Um, so just to remind everybody, the procedure, we'll take questions from council, then public comment. And then we'll move to council comment and discussion. Uh, so if we can make sure we go in that order, that would be great. And limit the questions to just two, two or so per council member. Um, and then we'll call for a motion and a second and further comment for those wishing to do so in roll call. So again, we'll do questions, public comment, and then council comment and discussion. So are there any questions from council at this point in time? All right, Councilmember Collins and Councilmember Dugan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think the first question I have, and I'm not sure if it's directed at Greg Rubens or Adam, is that one of the things we had heard on the subcommittee was the fact that there was in addition to some of the crowding and the violations of social distancing and that sort of thing. But there were some incidents of fights and public drunkenness and the, the park being abused. The Harrington Park being abused with, with litter overnight, uh, you know, empty beer bottles and liquor bottles and that sort of thing. And that's not in the report. And I wanted to know how, or how prevalent that was. Were these one-off incidences? Or is it something that, um, that we need to watch and that we need to, uh, really pay attention to? Because that really caught, that really caught my attention was one of the reasons that we wanted to put this on the agenda. So maybe we could, I could get some feedback about that.
I, I think I'll, I'll start, Adam, if you don't mind, um, just because there's a little bit of background about how, um, the, the state's emergency rules may be, um, being abused by, um, certain members of the public when they're drinking outside of the confined areas of the restaurant where they're serving. The, the emergency regulations do allow businesses to, um, who don't have, um, dining, uh, uh, excuse me, bars or, or restaurants that don't serve meals to contract with other, um, restaurants to provide meals that are required under the regulations. Um, the agreement mu- must not require that the retail licensee, um, uh, purchase, offer, sell alcoholic beverages. But, uh, and they can't, the two restaurants or businesses can't interfere with the, each other's uh, business model. So they, they can't have like an incentive program. If you sell a bunch of, you know, if, if you buy a bunch of my meals, I'll make sure they go over to your restaurant and buy, you know, buy a bunch of drinks. Um, they, they can't do that. They have to both op- still operate as independent businesses, but they can accommodate each other. What I think is the main thing, um, that you're talking about is these to-go rules that, or the delivery rules that came about after, um, COVID nineteen. Like those rules allow, now allow, they didn't allow before, to-go beverages for pickup and delivery. And it could be distilled spirits, beer or wine in either a container. That's like the bottle of wine that, that the winery makes or the, or the brewery cans of, or bottles that a brewery has. That you can now buy those to-go from the restaurant because they're in the sealed container from the, the manufacturer of, of the product. They can also have, it's not quite the, you know, a hurricane in, in Las Vegas or Mardi Gras, but you could have a sealed container prepared by the restaurant licensee. That's part of the to-go package, but it's not supposed to be open. So if people are going to the restaurants and they're saying, I wanted to go drink, and then they go sit in the park, that is not allowed um, under any circumstances. Those people, if that would be an open container violation and they could be cited for that. So, so if there are people doing that, they should be warned not to do that. And I think we have cited people that have been in the park drinking like that. But that, but that's an example of kind of the problems that we get when the rules that everybody's used to kind of get changed a little bit. And, uh, so that, I hope that answers your question, Ron.
Well, partially, yes. But I mean, specifically, we had heard some reports of, of, of fights and public drunkenness. And, and that's what I want to get some, some feedback on is to whether or not those were single incidents. Are they starting to ha- happen frequently? That sort of.
That's probably, um, the chief of police might have more information on, on whether they, they've had to intervene in, in those types of incidents. But it's, it's, um, not something I've heard about, but I might not necessarily hear about it if somebody got us like, you know, got arrested for, for public drunkenness or, or, um, mutual combat or something like that personally.
Well, Jeff, I, I don't think I'm imagining it. We, we did hear of that type of a thing happening, did we not?
Yeah, that's correct. I think we'll, we'll, um, turn it over to the chief to provide a little bit. And, you know, there's a combination of information here, Ron, what the city's receiving officially through nine-one-one and what we're hearing from residents who, you know, seen and reported behavior after the fact downtown. Um, and then combined with sort of the, sort of physical evidence of, you know, the bottles and cans and that kind of issue that, that we're seeing in the downtown as well.
Yeah.
Several different information sources. And, um, we only had one day to put this report together after the subcommittee meeting. So we did our best to get as much into it as possible.
Um, and Chief, thank you for, for being on the line. Just, but, but before you, you continue, I just, uh, one of the things that I think we had also heard in the subcommittee meeting was that we had had reports from our own residents saying that because there were people coming from, uh, other cities, that they were, they were concerned about their safety and were rethinking whether or not they wanted to come downtown. So, uh, with that, uh, Chief Bell, maybe you could provide us a little bit more context and, and enlighten us.
Good evening. Um, yes, we have had calls for service where intoxicated personnel were on the street as well as arrests of individuals who are involved in fights. Um, in addition, we have received reports after the fact of people dumping garbage, um, throughout the parklets as well in Harrington Park. Um, and also forcing business owners to clean up after, um, the day after. So those are the reports that we've seen. Um, it has been less than frequent. Um, so I would say probably three or four times a week, we're receiving some type of call on Laurel to respond to. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll add to that, um, Councilmember Collins, that, you know, if somebody is after hours or the restaurants closed, they're, they're, and just because they're in a parklet, um, doesn't mean they can continue to drink, um, in public like that. That would be an open container violation. Um, and so that, you know, if that's part of the problem that's going on there, that would be a violation as well.
All right. Now we've got a council member Dugan, and then council member Rack, and then Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yeah, my only question would, and I understand staff, uh, put this, uh, report together pretty quickly. So some of this might just be late-breaking news, but, you know, it's all pretty, uh, much news to me that we've been having issues down there. Do we have any data or trends or, you know, it sounds like the county level enforcement has been kind of steady state. This seems kind of brand new or, you know, uh, what are we doing to monitor this? Are there things we can do to increase enforcement? I mean, it, it just, uh, you know, and, and that said, three to four incidents in a week, given the level of activity, isn't necessarily jaw-dropping. But, you know, how do we characterize what we're seeing down there, uh, by way of data or trends? Or, uh, how do I calibrate my level of concern around this?
Uh, I think we'll ask the chief again for her perspective here. You know, my perspective in terms of the ro- reports seem to suggest that it's, it's been more recent. You know, maybe sort of coinciding with sort of our, our enter into nicer, more springtime weather later. You know, staying light out later, that, that kind of thing, because it, it does seem to be more recent. And I do know that, uh, the council had asked and, and the chief has been, we've been sending deputies into the downtown, particularly on the busier evenings, uh, much more frequently. Chief?
So for the level of concern, um, I would say that, yes, we have, like the, uh, city manager said, um, we have seen an increase in foot traffic as well as individuals, um, waiting in line. And, um, while they're waiting in line, they're allowed, uh, some restaurants are allowing them to have alcoholic beverages throughout the area. So, um, you know, as we all know, when we increase with alcohol, some, sometimes bad things happen. But, um, I just think that, you know, overall, it's, you know, if we're talking about a one to ten rating, um, I would say it about like a seven. Um, and just, you know, for us, we're, we want to make sure that, um, everyone is safe and feels safe downtown during this process. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thank you, Chief. And then one quick, uh, specific question maybe for Adam. The, uh, uh, the parklet program, I don't have the full background. It predates me by quite a bit. I understand it predates, uh, COVID by quite a bit. Uh, if we're talking about ending the parklet program, are we talking about ending all parklets in town? Or just those that were approved in this COVID period?
I believe we'd just be referring to the ones approved in the COVID period. So prior to COVID, we had the on-street dining pilot program, and that resulted in the parklet at town. And then there was space for two other restaurants also to come forward with parklets. Neither of those two other restaurants have yet come forward, but there is one currently in the review process with the planning commission. And I, I would consider those separate from what we're talking about tonight here.
I see. So, go ahead, Jeff.
I was just gonna confirm yet. Th- this is just the temporary parklets, um, the things that were constructed to be removed, not.
Okay. So basically, if we end this, when, when this program ends, all parklets are removed except for town. That's, that's a current understanding?
Yes, presently, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rack and then Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember to do the unmute first this time. Thanks for the presentation, Adam. And, uh, I guess, I, I, my question just for the chief, I, uh, it had just kind of a comment question. Um, I, I did go down there this weekend knowing that this item was on the agenda. And, you know, I, I, it, it was, I didn't see huge incidents that were problems. I did see some drinking in Harrington, Harrington Park. I did see, um, probably some overcrowding in some of the places. So I, I'd like to understand kind of what we've been doing in terms of enforcement and sort of communication with the businesses. And, um, because I think one of the, regardless of how we end up with this decision tonight, I think having outreach with the business community to have them as partners in compliance is probably one of the most important things we can do, uh, as part of this. But I'd love to understand, Chief, sort of, you know, because what I've heard is where the Friday, Saturday nights is when it's sort of been the biggest challenge. The rest of the time, I, I, I haven't really heard, uh, concerns from, from people.
So I'm sorry, Adam, what, what was your question?
Well, I, I'd like to understand sort of how much, uh, patrolling is going on Friday and Saturday night and what, what efforts are being made to work with the, to, to sort of get compliance, uh, and enforcement, frankly, on, on some of these, um, items. Because you can't be there all the time, right? So I want to understand kind of what's, what, what's sort of the standard, uh, sort of effort sort of on those weekends when we, we assume there's, there's just more challenges.
So since Valentine's Day, uh, we've deployed a deputy specifically on, uh, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays and to walk down with their body cameras on just to observe any violations. And that's where we would, uh, have the informational report written and then submitted, um, to the county, uh, for a further, for a further look. Our deputies and our sergeants are out there talking to business owners and just, you know, educating again and, you know, asking for compliance. So that's what we're doing. Um, and we can, we will continue to do, uh, to do just that.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my first question, uh, maybe is for Adam. It goes back to the staff report. Um, and option number one says that if the street closure and parklet program is terminated, it would allow for downtown community events to resume. Why, if it continues, why can't downtown community events resume?
That was the guidance we heard from the Parks and Rec Department. I think there's not presently enough space because if the streets are closed, we can't use the space where the parking aisles are or the parklets are currently located. I think it might also be a fire access concern.
I see Amy's on here. Did you want to chime in, Amy?
Yeah, no, just what Adam said. So, uh, the fire, the fire department does require a certain amount of clearance for emergency vehicles to get through. And, um, if you look at the way that the temporary parklets are set up, um, and kind of if you put that with the farmer's market where the booths are traditionally in the middle of the street, emergency vehicles don't have enough clearance to get through Laurel Street in case there's an emergency. And some of our other downtown events with booths are set up similar to the farmer's market. And so we would have to look at just an alternate location for the typical downtown events should this program continue.
Don't you think that the Goblin Walk could continue or the Night of Holiday Lights? I mean, if people are walking down the middle of the street, those two community events seem pretty complimentary.
Yeah, Goblin Walk possibly, Night of Holiday Lights, we typically have some booth setups. And so we'd have to relook at that.
Have to change. Okay, thank you. My next question, um, some, I've noticed, I was downtown this weekend too, and I noticed that some parklets have water walls up, but the space is not currently being used. Do we have plans? This, and this is kind of specifically to a few businesses on the six hundred block. Um, do we have a plan for cleaning up unused parklets?
I will defer to Public Works Director Stephen Machida on that question. I'm not certain if there's plans for that. Because I know they all had to be requested by the businesses for them to be put up.
So, um, Vice Mayor McDowell, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Certainly, um, you know, basically, um, the businesses that have requested to install parklets, we have. You know, at some point when, when, or if they decide they no longer want the parklet, that's when we would go about and kind of remove the parklets and kind of restore. Like in this case, if you're referring to on the six hundred block, we would, uh, return that, uh, part, open parking, uh, availability for the public. Um, but to my knowledge, I, I haven't heard or we haven't received any requests to kind of, dismantle some of those, uh, parklets that may not be being used right now.
Okay, all right. Well, I might follow up with you online, offline, um, because I received some information. I, maybe, maybe we could be a little proactive and reach out to the businesses now that indoor dining is happening. And I don't think that if, if space is not being used, then we should probably return it to parking. Um, and then I'm glad you're on here, Stephen, because I wanted to ask you about ADA access. And I know that you were very busy, you and your team at the beginning, when we shut down Laurel, of adding more ADA spaces. Um, I've heard a little bit of feedback from residents that, um, they didn't know that our wonderful ADA maps were online and they felt like, you know, too many spaces were missing. Um, do you have any feedback on how that's going? Do you have any plans to increase any more ADA access, accessible parking downtown?
So I, I know, um, there is, I believe, in the south, South Lower Plaza, there is scheduled that, uh, that parking lot is scheduled to be restripped. You know, until certainly those are, we, we look for opportunities wherever we can to actually restripe, um, you know, for, to add additional ADA spaces where, where that's possible. Um, so, so certainly that's, um, you know, that, that is, um, you know, that's something we could do. Um, I, I think just kind of refresh it, uh, council's memory. I think we, we added, you know, five additional brand-new ADA spaces. I think there were nine, so we added five new. So, um, if I'm, if my recollection is correct. So we, we were, um, when this program was actually started, and, and that was the intent, is to kind of replace whatever, ADA stalls that were taken out as a result of closing the street, um, you know, were, were replaced somewhere close by. So, um, you know, certainly we'll, we'll always look for opportunities to look for ADA, um, spots or spaces that would fit. So that's something that we'll continue to explore, to explore.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I've got a couple of questions. Um, so I just want to go back, um, to the, um, concern, um, the scale of concern that was presented. So I just want to go back to the concern, the scale of concern that was presented by Chief Bell with respect to it being on a seven and about three to four incidents per week that need to be addressed. And how that compares to non-COVID pandemic times? So can you provide a little bit of color on, you know, prior to us going into the pandemic, how often were there incidences downtown? And what would you, you know, and pre-pandemic, what would be the level of concern?
So I wasn't here pre-pandemic, so I, I can't provide that exact number for you, but I definitely can gather that offline for you. But, you know, obviously, when things are open, we have more calls for service. So as things continue to open, we are receiving more calls for service. I hope that helps for now and we can.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it, to, to what degree the current situation is lending itself to the, the, the level of concern, right? So that would be helpful. Okay. And then on, on, with respect to ADA, a couple of the emails that came through this weekend, there were dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, actually, that I received from community members on this. I did hear from people who have mobility impairments. And I understand the estimate in San Carlos of people with mobility impairments is about eight percent. So it's a significant number of people. But several mentioned that they no longer go downtown because they just can't get around. And it wasn't, my impression was it, it wasn't so much because of the parking issue, but it had more to do with just being able to navigate the sidewalks and that type of thing. So I don't know who would take this question. Maybe Greg, this is for you, because it has to do with ADA compliance. Can you provide a perspective on, on how the setup is, is compliant with ADA?
Well, the, our, our rules require that the sidewalks, even with a parklet there, that the sidewalks be clear and that the center of the street be clear for, for passage. And the, the physical configuration of the sidewalks and the ramps on the sidewalks hasn't really changed. Just, there may be an accessibility issue that I'd like to talk with Stephen about as far as descending into a parklet, let's say, from the, from the sidewalk. If someone wants to enter that part of the, of the restaurant, it's probably not as big of a concern now that there's an indoor option, because all the buildings have to have an ADA compliance. But there definitely is something to look at as far as descending into a parklet. I have noticed that some of the parklets, you're not descending into them because they build a platform that's kind of consistent with the sidewalk level, but I don't know if that's all of the, all of the parklets. Many do that. And then the, the, so if, if they're, I mean, it's, it's something that we need to make sure that the restaurants are aware of, that they can't block the sidewalk. They, they need to have a clear passage that's wide enough for, for someone in a wheelchair or who has accessibility issues. Maybe they're, maybe they are walking with crutches or some other mode of assistance. And so there has to be a clear path on the sidewalk. So if that's not being provided, then we need to, we need to take a look and, and inform the restaurants that, that they, that, that has to be available for their patrons and the public generally.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may. You know, basically, I do have staff that actually kind of peruses the downtown to, to ensure that, that, you know, should be happening, basically, that the sidewalk does need to stay open. You know, to allow all pedestrians, whether they're mobility impaired or not, to be, to be able to use the sidewalk. And so, you know, would they have kind of couched or kind of worked with the, the owner of the restaurants or any business to ensure that there is actually free passage on the sidewalk? So that, you know, that the public can access the sidewalks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. And then just last question with respect to the temporary parklets that are currently in place down, in the downtown area. Are those designed to be permanent structures? So in other words, are, are they currently designed to be enduring assets?
The temporary ones should not. They should all be designed to, to be removed at the end of the program.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So Crystal, could you see if there are members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Yes, we currently have four. So I'll go ahead and admit the first one. We, we have a lot more decided. So our first speaker will be Liron Merad, followed by Boris. Everybody will have two minutes to speak. And if you can use the timer, that'll show up on the screen. That would be appreciated. Liron, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Thank you, council members and Madam Mayor. I, I'm here to, to speak in, in favor of keeping the parklet program as it is. It seems to me that not enough has been considered about the future of this innovative program, a program that has been so wonderful for downtown, getting residents out and making our downtown feel like a major destination. We heard earlier from the city attorney calling it a significant privilege to have a parklet. The city manager called it popular. And we have still not heard any explanation why you can't have a farmer's market, for example, in downtown. The one, once a year events like the Goblin Walk. We could, of course, reconfigure the booths for the farmer's market, but that hasn't been discussed yet. Concerns with litter, littering could also be addressed in innovative ways. For example, adding garbage cans, but that's something that we haven't yet heard today. If we take away the parklet program, we're going to be punishing the restaurants that are in downtown San Carlos, leaving only a single parklet apparently in one of the wealthier restaurants, as we heard earlier. So I encourage you to keep this program that has been so successful and that residents seem to like very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Liron.
Crystal, how many speakers do we currently have in the queue?
Three, four, five, six, eleven. You have eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Boris, you're up next, followed by Susanna Lerner.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Boris. I live right next to downtown. Since Laurel Street has been closed, it's really become a consistent favorite for our family to walk and hang out there. And I guess I'm calling in to encourage you, like the previous caller, to maintain the street closure. My two-year-old daughter loves playing there and I appreciate how safe it feels to let her run around there that it, it didn't before and it won't again if cars are allowed in once the street is reopened. So it seems like letting cars back on the street will take away one of the only easy places for her to play outside, close to our house. And while I appreciate that there are lots of challenges and trade-offs to be had, I would encourage the council to find ways to keep the street close to cars and solve for those other issues, just as the previous commenter also mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Boris. Next up, Susanna Lerner, followed by Sonia Elks.
Okay. Hi, I'm Susanna and I actually have lived here for 22 years. And I would encourage greatly that you keep the parklets open. I think that it's been over a year and this, everyone who lives here has loved it and also learned how to get around it and how to, you know, not have to worry about parking and stuff. There's still plenty of parking. We have all of the train station parking. I also think you would be punishing restaurants who are not on that busiest 600 block. I also think Farmer's Market going to by Devil's Canyon and that whole area is awesome. I think it's going to bring more business down there. And what we want to do is grow our businesses. So I would highly encourage that we do not punish our restaurants by closing those parklets at all. And actually, everyone I've talked to, and that's hundreds of people who live here, do love like the outdoor feeling. And it's just, it's, it's more communal and it's very European and we all love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susanna. Sonia, you're up next, followed by Derek Shute.
Thank you for taking my call. I want to reiterate what Liron said, what Boris said, what Susanna said. We just spent two hours talking about fire mitigation, which is driven by our climate crisis with our drought. And then we talked about COVID response, which is a respiratory pandemic that has exacerbated. Our mortality rate is, is directly correlated with lifetime pollution exposure. This is not coincidental. We have to address our greenhouse gas issue, greenhouse gas emissions and encouraging a pedestrian zone on Laurel that is accessible by bike and wheels and rideable, you know, mobility devices is absolutely essential and promotes the economic development of our downtown. And also, yeah, and, and, and what I wanted to, so many things to say, I only have two minutes. But I, I agree that the, the permanent closure of the 700 block really has, needs to be discussed. Even closing it in September isn't, it, it really needs to be addressed with the businesses. I had the distinct pleasure of talking to one of the non-restaurant businesses, Sartori, today, the owner who was amazing. And we talked about his need for more parking. And he recognizes the climate crisis. And we talked about potentially maybe designating specific parking spaces in the back for the business owners, maybe a spot per business owner or two in the back behind the Diddams parking lot. There are so many ways to address this. I'm just, I'm confused why. And I know it's easier to keep people in their cars than they can't hide as much and they keep their alcohol closed. I don't know exactly how all these things relate to the parklet issue, closing these parklets. But I, I really want to separate out those issues and see if we can get behavior controlled without losing this great opportunity for San Carlos to have these parklets. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Derek Shute, you're up next, followed by Paul W.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Derek Shute. I'm the general manager for Tourist Steakhouse on Laurel Street. And I can certainly speak to the issue of guests not necessarily feeling safe to go inside. At least 40% of our population of our guests coming into the steakhouse want to stay outside. They feel more comfortable outside currently, regardless of being in a yellow tier, orange tier, whatever color tier there might be that particular week. Their safety is what matters to them and what matters to myself and my staff. We're more than willing to seat people in a far corner table and not seat anyone around them for their particular hour and a half, if that's what they choose to do, because they feel safer not having someone directly next to them. We adhere to all of the current regulations that San Carlos has so diligently put into place for us to follow. We have markings on our outdoor parklet in order to be able to make sure our tables and chairs stay in those designated spaces, so they're not drug over to be closer or further apart or what have you. And it's something that we pride ourselves on being able to provide for the guests. And the nicest thing about the parklets and the program as a whole is that it's a much more natural, organic dining experience. I have so many guests who come in and they see friends walking by and they say, hey, come on over. And then someone comes over and joins them for a glass of wine. Or the kids are next door at Laurel Arts and they're doing a ceramic project. And the two moms sit next to the table by the art studio and they can watch the kids and have a glass of wine and appetizer. It's not something you can do in every community. And that's why it's so popular. And that's why we get such an influx of people from other areas, because we are doing something special that shouldn't be stopped and it should be allowed to sustain and keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. So Paul W., you're up next, followed by Moose. Paul, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So thank you, council members and Madam Mayor. My name is Paul Walsh and appreciate your time. So I read the resolution and I actually posted this on Nextdoor because I had no idea actually how to communicate with the council. But Nextdoor seems to be the online version. So I read the resolution. I thought it begged a few more questions. It definitely appears to be in response to some complaints. So like I posted, it would be great to know, is it one complaint, 10 complaints? 10% of the population of San Carlos, is it the same person or people complaining? One could equally say that the number of people choosing to eat, drink and socialize in San Carlos are actually promoters of the parklet structures as opposed to the detractors. And I, I think I can speak for some of the other, or, you know, based on what the others have said, that many people probably don't want to eat in, eat inside, even if the governor opens up on June 15th. And I think it's actually a little bit premature to make a decision thinking that, that those conditions will exist on June 15th to open. It definitely seems more logical that a decision is maybe at the best interest of all the residents and visitors to San Carlos taking into consideration. And at some point, I think common sense comes into play. If one felt uncomfortable walking outside of an establishment that had a line waiting to be seated, which is really only like an hour or two every night, then that you cross the street or you use Laurel Street to avoid any sort of congested areas. And I think that's a tough one for restaurants to manage as people are walking up to their, walk up to their establishments. One of the council members expressed concern on the call about the park downtown. And it's a place where you actually really can't go there during the day, usually due to the people that hang out there. I'm not sure if you guys, you know, visit Laurel Street during the day. Again, there's a lot of anecdotal feedback on that particular incident. It would be great, I think, to understand, and I think the mayor mentioned this as well, like what are the reports of intoxication in the past? You know, can you compare the same numbers of, number of complaints and calls to the previous year?
Paul, could I, you're, you're two minute. Could I ask you to wrap up, please?
Yeah, yes, for sure. I would say that I would like to know, how do you actually get a counter motion on the ballot to make the street closures permanent, move San Carlos to a city that's probably free of cars?
Paul, I really need you to wrap up. We've got a lot of people in the queue. So if you could wrap up.
I'm wrapped up. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Moose, followed by Jean and Nancy. Moose, I do see you're, are you unmuted?
Okay. Hi. Hi, this is Moose on behalf of the Stamp Bar and Grill in San Carlos, 773 Laurel Street. My opinion on the temporary parklet should be permanent. Because as far as I get the feedback from the people coming into my restaurant, at least 70 to 80%, they don't want to, still, they don't want to sit inside because they'd rather be safer, they think it's safer to sit outside. And even though like, as Derek mentioned, you know, the Saurus manager, I don't think, even if, if you go to the green tier, you know, the people, there's people still, they don't want to sit inside. And for that, I think we should either you guys consider it or maybe put a poll into the San Carlos to keep the part of the 700, 800, 600 block of the, of the Laurel Street permanently closed for good. And that's all I have for tonight, you know, I mean, maybe the polling is much better and putting on the, the, as, as far as the parking goes, I've been on the Laurel Street past 10 years and I see more parking than the two years before, you know, before the COVID-19 happened. So the people are enjoying, the city is making money, restaurants are making money. There are a lot of people on the street for the retail as well as the restaurants. So just let's keep the street closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Moose.
Thank you, Moose. We have eight more in the queue. Up next is Jean and Nancy, followed by Mammy. Jean and Nancy, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, go.
Hi. Thank you. My husband and I live in San Carlos and have for a number of years. And we love Laurel Street. And we have been very concerned about the restaurants on Laurel Street and also the restaurants on San Carlos Avenue since the pandemic. And the fact that these parklets have allowed them to basically stay solvent at, at no small expense on their part. We're just so happy about that. Um, we're just so happy about that. And, um, we want to see that continue. And to, um, to take that away early, I, we feel is just such a mistake because, um, really with summer coming on and the best part of their, their people coming to dine al fresco, um, this is where they can possibly make back some money that they have lost, uh, in this terrible year. And, um, we, we would just hope that it would support uh, their continuation. Um, and again, also for San Carlos Avenue. Um, there are some wonderful restaurants there. And again, they're part of this community. This is the city of good living. And these restaurant owners are part of our city of good living. And we need to support them. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping.
Nancy, if I can get you to wrap up, your two minutes is up, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So, um, John Dugan has been so great for listening ear. And of course, it's just so wonderful when someone is listening.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Next up is Mammy, followed by Miles Kelvin.
Good evening, uh, council members and Madam Mayor. So I've been in San Carlos like almost 11 years and we, I'm, I've been running a business and I live in San Carlos too. So like be honest, uh, we, from the beginning, we were so appreciative to the city that led us during this, uh, parklets program, like they allow us doing this parklets. And like, and all in return, we've been, as a restaurant, we've been trying to serve the community as much as like we can. And all the restaurant, I think, having a great job, great, uh, parklets in front of the restaurants and they spend lots of money like, uh, every other restaurants. So what I, what I was, uh, thinking that we shouldn't punish restaurants with closing and then closing the parklet program. Because I think this been, is a great program for community and for, uh, like business owners. And also like it's still, we having a problem that people doesn't trust to sitting inside our restaurant. So what we would, we would, we would lost, uh, half of our business if we, uh, lose the parklets. So that will be, that will be other concern. So as it, uh, when we look into town, I seen it's really good picture from, uh, like one side to the other side. And also our police department, thank to them, they've been, uh, checking around and like, providing the safety. Thank you for everybody, thank you, good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Miles Kelvin, followed by Adam Alberti.
Madam Mayor, council members. Um, I've lived in San Carlos for 20 years with my wife Vivian Kelvin, who's a local realtor. Um, like all of the other respondents, um, I'm definitely in favor of keeping a parklet program. Um, I think it gives a nice European vibe to Laurel Street. And in fact, it's a great opportunity for San Carlos to be unique and a superior city on the peninsula. Um, I really find it amazing that the permanent closure of Laurel Street was not discussed or even listed as an option in the minutes. It just, it just astonished me when I read the minutes, that wasn't an option. Um, we have great weather, we've got a super street to years. If the parklets were permanent rather than temporary, they'd all look a lot nicer. So they'd look a lot more like town. And we would have a super downtown area that would be the envy of the peninsula. So I, I, I just couldn't do anything but stress absolutely strongly that, uh, you know, the whole parket program should be kept open and made permanent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Miles. Uh, next up is Al, Adam Alberti, followed by David Tom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At this point in time, probably don't need to hear much of what I had to say because it's been said a bit here in repetitive fashion. So I'll skip to the part where I move on from being disappointed with the action being considered tonight into what I think we ought to be looking at. And that is, uh, really a process to discuss a permanent closure of Laurel that looks at proper design standards, that can make it a real amazing attribute for this community. I mean, there really are two things that make us different from many of our neighbors. There are a great atmosphere with our community and our downtown, Laurel Street specifically. And I think this is a once in a generation opportunity to look at what that could mean in a permanent closure with, uh, proper programming and ways to maintain all of the business's health and the community's health. So with that, have a good evening, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Adam. We have nine left in the queue. David Tom, followed by Debbie Butcher.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my family and I have lived in San Carlos for 13 years. Uh, we live close to downtown and walk to Laurel several times a day. Uh, we want to speak in favor of keeping the parklets open, as everybody else tonight has said. Um, the parklets are pro-business, pro-small business during the pandemic. They're necessary during the pandemic. They're pro-small business when the pandemic's over. It's an innovative program, an opportunity to make, uh, a signature element on Laurel Street as, as others have commented on. And, uh, we too were very disappointed to see this as an agenda item tonight in the negative and really are asking, as everybody else has tonight, several others have tonight, why aren't we instead discussing making these permanent? Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Okay, up next is Dave, Debbie Butcher, followed by Will Stroh.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Um, I've been a San Carlos resident for 12 years and I'm also in favor of keeping the parklets open through the summer and beyond. It seems like it is a wildly popular program that the community loves and it helps our local businesses that have suffered so much throughout this pandemic. I feel the city needs to do as much as possible to help our local businesses get through this very difficult time, both on Laurel Street and on San Carlos Avenue. And I too would love to see the parklets and the street closures be permanent. Um, I agree that we have an opportunity to be the envy of the San Francisco Peninsula. Personally, I feel much safer eating outdoors and would not consider eating indoors until my children are vaccinated and we are many, many months beyond where we are now. Um, it would be a shame to shut down the parklets just as kids are getting out of school for the summer and people are eager to get out and enjoy the summer weather. And as for the farmers markets and other events, I would love to see the other end of Laurel Street, um, mostly the blocks between like Howard and Eaton Avenue be utilized for this. It would be great to bring more businesses, business down to that end of our downtown. Thank you so much for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. Will Stroh, you're up next, followed by Alyssa Straeber.
All right, hello. Hi, I'm a resident here for 10 years now. Uh, first had my family here, now, uh, they're kind of grown. So I've been here for a while, experienced the city in multiple ways. Um, uh, one of the things that I wanted to take note of is that, you know, it's very, I, I don't want anybody to take note of like all these anecdotal, anecdotal things that have been spoken about, uh, before the meeting. You know, there's a lot of, you can't count all the people that love this and, and, you know, how that impact has been great, not just for the businesses, but the families and friends in the area, as well as bringing in other, bringing in other families and friends and events, uh, from other cities. You know, this is a destination, it has been, and now it's even more of a destination for folks that want to have a date night and, and a, and a gathering. Um, I run and walk this area, especially Laurel Street, almost daily. Um, and, uh, even before the pandemic, you know, or even before the street closure, uh, almost every single day, I quite literally would almost get run over every single day in Laurel Street. And since the closure, people aren't using that to try to skip El Camino anymore. Um, so I feel safer just in that regard. Um, I would urge the council to take more time to make data-driven decisions and not just, uh, you know, I don't know what's going to be decided tonight. Uh, but if we could take more time to make, uh, more data-driven, uh, decisions as well as like the reporting that, uh, our chief mentioned, uh, you know, personally, I would enjoy a much more police presence. Um, I, I very rarely, and I don't, maybe it's just not when I'm there, but I very rarely see patrols coming up and down the street at all. Um, and then for events, reconfiguring the booths, finding a way to keep our city and our charm and our events, uh, as great as they are to bring in all that additional revenue. Um, and, you know, thank you all, I know this is all difficult to do. Uh, so I really appreciate your time and, and everybody else that took the time to comment and join the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Alyssa Straeber, followed by Jennifer Wisnem.
Hi, thank you. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I would like to strongly encourage the council to find alternative ways to address the issues that have been discussed regarding trash, alcohol and the ADA compliance while maintaining the parklet program. The outdoor dining and pedestrian-only thoroughfare has brought magic and community to San Carlos in a really fraught time. This will only continue to grow and thrive as COVID wanes. With vaccinations going up, more people are getting more comfortable going out. We should try to capture as much of that economic value for our local retail and restaurants. We should make it as easy and healthy and safe as possible to visit, shop and dine in San Carlos. As one of the council members mentioned earlier, this has been an economic success for San Carlos. It's a unique and special differentiator for our city and it will attract guests from all over the Bay Area for their recreational time. I know these trade-offs can be hard, but I know we can do hard things for the benefit of the San Carlos business community and for the joy of the people who come and visit Laurel. And lastly, if we've learned anything about COVID, it's that we don't actually know what's going to happen. So it seems incredibly premature to cut this program in eight weeks based on COVID trends. So I'm asking you to please keep the parklet program permanently open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Alyssa, next up is Jennifer Wisnem, followed by Kit. I think that's just, I think.
You can hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I agree with, uh, what everybody's been saying about the parklet staying open. And one thing that's been missing from the conversation is the vaccines are not 100% effective. And we're seeing now in the news that some people are getting COVID even though they're vaccinated. In Michigan, they're having a very large surge of COVID. Um, and we have the variant, uh, different variants that are causing issues that may not be covered by, uh, the vaccine at this point in time. Um, and we have a subset of people that will not get vaccinated as well as a subset of people that have autoimmune issues or other health issues that make them, uh, more concerned about going into, to a restaurant or any public place, frankly. Uh, I'm one of those people that I will not go into a restaurant and eat um, because all of these open scientific issues that we're dealing with. So I just wanted to point that out. I agree, it's great to have outside dining, but it's more important that we're not 100% through with this, um, COVID. And even if it gets opened up 100% June 15th, we could have the same issues that Michigan is having now. And we may very well see in other states. I thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. Next up is Kit, followed by Olin Palmer.
Hello, City Council and Madam Mayor. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I represent a group of businesses on Laurel Street and, um, I, I think that you're unfairly categorizing them in, in a way that, uh, you feel, it seems that you're putting them in a position that they're putting people in harm. But what I think you should be doing is looking at what they have supplied your community in the past year. They have given a service that, uh, they're delivering food to people. They're, they're, they're not making a lot of money out of this and they're also, um, being here as part of the community. By, by taking away the parklets that are the one piece that has helped them make a little bit of money, uh, you're, you're jeopardizing the businesses and the success of Laurel Street and San Carlos as a destination. Um, I hope that you guys will see your way to, find a way to make sure that these parks stay open and, uh, we can strive as a community who are in San Carlos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kit. Thank you, Kit. Next up is Olin Palmer, followed by Megan Johnson.
Good evening, uh, thank you, council members and Madam Mayor and Laura. It's great to see you in this role. I brought her with his family 20 years ago and I moved here 16 years ago. And I love this community and the events that happen on Laurel and the, the feeling that is associated with the community on farmer's market nights and the parklets and, and everything else is amazing. And so I just want to echo what 100% of your callers have already said. So keep it up.
Thank you, Olin. Nice to hear your voice again. Okay, we have, uh, three people left in the queue. We have Laura Tuchel next, followed by Deborah.
Hi, Madam Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, I'm Laura Tuchel, I'm a lifelong resident of San Carlos and, um, I would like to echo what everyone else has said previously as well. Um, I would love to see a permanent closure of Laurel Street considered um, for safety reasons, foot traffic and, and everything else that folks have mentioned. But tonight I just wanted to, um, call in and speak in support of our Laurel Street businesses. Um, they've been so flexible and worked so hard to recoup the losses that they've incurred, um, since the pandemic began. And so at the very least, um, I'd really like to see you guys follow through on your commitment to continue the parklet program through September and then perhaps consider permanent, uh, closure later on. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you. Next is Deborah, followed by Sneakers. Deborah, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
There you go. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I've been a resident of San Carlos now going on 20 years and I've seen a lot of change throughout the years. Um, we've been involved in a lot throughout the years, but I kind of wanted to turn this on a personal note. I myself have worked in the restaurants for about six to seven years and the restaurants have become more like family and it really is a very tight-knit supportive community. And I think that what they've done for the community during this whole pandemic should be rewarded with the continuance of having the parklet set up. It'll benefit them. Um, nobody wants to see them struggle because they do make up most of Laurel Street. So, you know, my support would be for the restaurants and, you know, just to keep those up and let them keep doing their business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Deborah. It looks like our final speaker is going to be Sneakers.
Hi, everybody. I'm the evil guy that, um, takes up the 600 block of Laurel Street that seems to be part of, um, some of the complaints on. some of the complaints on space and occupancy. I'm not sure where that's coming from, and I I'm concerned about that because we try really hard to make sure that we comply with everything. So all these complaints that are supposed to be happening, I'm not sure where they're coming from. What percentage of that is compared to the rest of the, you know, the people that are enjoying downtown? That being said, the outdoor dining program has been a huge success for every restaurant in this city. We would be gone if it didn't exist. And you promised us September 1st. And to change it to July or to June 15th is probably unfair to change. We all penciled everything out so that we could, you know, figure out what we would spend and what we could gain. And to change it midstream is really kind of unfair and kind of a stab in the back to the restaurants of downtown. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Crystal, are there any additional people wanting to make a public comment?
No, I don't see any through.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we'll move it back to council discussion and comments. Okay, so why don't we start with a subcommittee member, Rack? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate all the comments and all the many emails that I received. I just want to acknowledge I got them. I was, I appreciate all that, and I will do my best to get back to you. But hopefully, tonight's decision will be able to answer some of those questions. So my, I'll just say for my, if we're on discussion, this sort of giving some opinions on things after this, I'm not really interested in ending the program early. I think that it's been a great success for the community. I do think there's some issues that we have to work out. I do believe that there are some compliance issues that need to happen. But I think that the best way to deal with that is for the subcommittee to meet with the business owners, work with the chamber to have that, and to make sure that everyone understands what the rules are, and they get compliance. And it's not, and it is, we're still in the pandemic, as many people mentioned. And the reason we have these rules is for the health and safety of those individuals and for our community. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it's worth to try to punish everyone for some actions that are not going on for compliance. So I'd like to work with the business community and see what we can do to help them, help them be a part of the solution with us. But I'm not interested in ending the program early. Frankly, I would, I have for many times talked about wanting to make it permanent. Talk about what we can do long-term on Laurel, and I would be open to even extending this sort of temporary program till later in the year as well, some point like November 1st or something to do that. And I do, I do want to mention, I think Vice Mayor McDowell mentioned about the unused parklets. I do think we should be more proactive around that, and I would like to look at those and maybe look at sort of changing the configuration for the Sunday closures for the 600 block to maybe open up. I don't know that we need to close Cherry Street anymore for that. That would open up some more parking. But I think that perhaps the subcommittee working on that would be able to make some changes and open up parking where it needs to be available. But I appreciate all the comments, and I will not be voting to terminate the program earlier.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Why don't we go with Councilmember Collins, who's also the other subcommittee member?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to say that, you know, it's a pleasure working with Adam on the subcommittee. Adam and I come at this from different viewpoints, which is good because he hears things that he doesn't normally hear, and I hear things that I don't normally hear, so we have a difference of opinion sometimes. But before I go on, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight. I thought everybody made some excellent points. I want to thank all those people that sent me emails and send everybody else emails. I hope you understand it's just not possible to respond to 175 emails in the course of about four days, but I did see them, and I do appreciate getting them. It shows that there's a great deal of love and interest in our downtown, and I think that's probably, this is probably one of the probably one of the best things we've ever done since I've been on the council. But the reason we wanted to bring it up tonight was for a couple of specific reasons. One, obviously, is that we were hearing reports of issues that were coming up. And I thought it was best that we give them a public airing and get the opportunity to talk about what's going on and put, you know, everybody on notice that we need to, we need to continue to be vigilant and and take care of our downtown, and everybody's responsible, whether it's people who come and eat at the restaurants, whether it's business owners or anybody else. We need to, we need to make sure that we, that we take care of it. So that was one of the reasons I wanted to put it on. The other reason was that the state had announced, obviously, that it was going to end the program. And what that means is that if we assume for a moment that the program or that everything gets back to normal on June 15th, and I'm not suggesting that it will be, given some of the recent rises in COVID cases. But what that will mean is that restaurants can then operate at full capacity. And when they operate at full capacity and they have sidewalk dining, they'll have the ability to have as many people dine inside as before the pandemic. And I do get the sentiments from a lot of people that they don't feel safe inside. I think hopefully that that will change over a period of time. And it may change later rather than sooner. And so I think, I think it's important that we, that we continue to pay attention to that. There are businesses on Laurel that are non-restaurant businesses that have suffered. And I'm mindful of that. It's one of the reasons that we reopened the 600 block last year. And I'm not necessarily in favor of a permanent program. I would like to see us, when this program ends, entertain the idea of of allowing more permanent parklets, which means that they would have to comply with our, with our codes. And none of the permanent park or temporary parklets right now comply with those except for the one that town built a while back. But for the, you know, for this particular period of time, I think it was, I think it was important to bring the issue up. And I, I am, I think I'm going to support right now leaving it alone. I do think that we need to revisit it from time to time, whether we revisit it in August or October or whatever. I'm not, I think it's something that we really can't just let go without periodic evaluation. So again, I want to thank everybody that participated tonight and the people that emailed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers Rack and Collins. I'm encouraged to hear that the subcommittee that really spent time listening and digging into this is not supporting ending this in June. I was a bit concerned to see this on the agenda in that fashion. You know, this has been a fantastic program for San Carlos, for our small businesses. I was not, you know, and thank you, everyone, for the quick concern and the love of San Carlos that was clearly expressed. And yeah, I think we got close to 200 emails, or at least I did. And I appreciated that, and I appreciated everyone who spoke this evening. And I'll also just share, you know, I ran a campaign last fall, knocked on well over 1,000 doors, had hundreds of conversations. And my top priority was supporting our local small business. And I asked, in every one of those conversations nearly, I asked, what do you think about our street closure as far as helping small business? That's over 90% of folks said they thought it was absolutely the right thing, and it was working, and they liked it personally. And I asked them all, what do you think about making that permanent? And I heard 80, 85% of them say they would like to see it permanent. So I have not been surprised at the sentiments we've heard with this on our agenda. And I, you know, so just concretely, I do not support ending the program in June. And honestly, I don't think I support ending it in September. I do want us to start thinking bigger about this. We have seen what it's like to have Laurel Street closed. We have seen what it's like to just have, you know, people feeling free and now open, and their families walking down the middle safe from cars. And what a, what a highlight. Honestly, when I think back about all the dark times of the pandemic, I'm going to think about Laurel Street and some of the nice meals I had down there with my family and just time I spent strolling through there, just thinking what a great city this is. And I think many, many of us have had that experience. So I do want to challenge us to think bigger and actually establish the vision in the near term. And it might take a while to put something like that together, but, you know, so in that sense, I'm glad it's on our agenda now because I don't want to just fumble into this come September and then find that we want to end this. I would like us, you know, let's, I would like to hear where my colleagues are at on this, but I'd like to see us actually, you know, let's, let's have staff make a real study on what we can do in, you know, as far as extending this program and rolling it into a more permanent closure of at least one of the blocks on Laurel. And what that could look like. I mean, there's just, we've heard from the community lots of strong support for that idea. And, you know, when you look around the country, Santa Monica, Boulder, Colorado, half of Europe, I mean, it's just so pleasant. Would definitely be a draw for our local community. And yeah, there might be some enforcement or other adjustments that have to be made when we do something important like that. But I think we're up to that challenge, and I would really like us to get on top of that and think about executing it rapidly. So we don't just fall into having to end the program and then open it back up and in two years maybe do something. No, I would like to capture this momentum and see what we can get done in the near term. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Had trouble unmuting there. When we considered this at our November meeting, I suggested that council extend the street closure until September. And we voted, and this passed. And at that point, we made a deal with our community and our business owners. We needed to give businesses certainty before they made significant investments in heating, lighting, electrical hardwiring, and parklet upgrades to make it through the winter. To be clear, I have zero interest in going back on our word at this point. Terminating outdoor dining on June 15th completely ignores some of our most important community members, our young children, many of whom will not be vaccinated until later in the year. They can't dine indoors. Outdoor dining is the only option for eating out for a young family. Families are a big part of our inclusive and welcoming community. Why would we pass a policy that takes away their ability to dine out at our restaurants? Like others have said, I've received more than 170 emails from community members in favor of keeping the street closed and parklets going. A very large number of them have also requested that the parklets and pedestrian mall atmosphere be made permanent. People wrote in from San Mateo and Belmont and Redwood Shores. Even those fully vaccinated want to come here and dine outside because it feels safe. And for the record, there were less than five people who wrote in that were opposed. Instead of rehashing these dates, let's discuss soon what happens in September. Can the parklets become permanent? Can we use money coming from the federal government to give grants to fortify the parklets? Does the street need to reopen? Let's not revert to the old normal. This has been a tremendous community experiment that has been, by many accounts, a big success. Let's build on this and think about Laurel Street 3.0. We are not the only city grappling with what comes next. Broadway and Redwood City, Castro Street and Mountain View are two examples. Let's reach out to those communities to figure out how they are moving forward. In the meantime, let's enforce our rules. Parklets are a privilege and not a right. Those not following the rules can have their permit revoked. Yes, this summer, people are going to gather no matter what. Let's prepare for that. What enforcement resources are needed for our sheriff's department to keep order downtown? Again, these are issues that every vibrant and attractive downtown will deal with this summer. I would like to move forward and figure out what's next for our beautiful downtown and our amazing businesses that have survived so much over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. So I'd like to weigh in at this point, and I also want to thank all the community members who joined the conversation this evening as well as expressed their viewpoints via email this past weekend. From my perspective, you know, this year has been extraordinarily difficult for everyone. And I think there hasn't been one person that hasn't been adversely affected by this global pandemic. But what I'm pleased about is how San Carlos continue to come together and work together. You know, we talk a lot about wanting to ensure the safety and health of our community. We did that tonight when we were talking about wildfire risk mitigation. The fact that we want to maintain a vibrant, inclusive, and welcoming community, and one that is also business-friendly. When the emails began to pour in this weekend, what I noted is that I was hearing a lot from the restaurants and the patrons of those restaurants. What I didn't, what I didn't see was feedback from some of the retailers and the merchants. And so I spent the better part of Saturday doing a telephonic tour of Laurel Street and reaching out to as many business owners as I could, including some of the restaurants, to get their perspective. And they were surprised by this agenda item. And I appreciate all the reasons. Councilmember Collins, you suggested that we bring it to the fore because I had the same question in my mind about Gavin Newsom's announcement. The fact that it, you know, it was quite unexpected because I recall when we discussed the fall date, the September 1st date back in the fall, it was based on Fauci's prediction that we would likely be reopening around that time. And so the June date came as quite a surprise. So that being said, I reached out to many of the merchants, and I think, you know, for the most part, you know, it's definitely working for the restaurants and the restaurant patrons. But as has been the case since the beginning, those businesses that are dependent upon parking that's adjacent to them has been, it's been a real challenge. And a business owner in particular who has shops in three different cities, and this is the only one where there's a street closure, has had a significant decline in their revenue. In addition, there's a shop owner who's very well thought of, who lives in the community and is raising a family here and is on the edge of losing that business. The landlord has not been sympathetic as of late to their inability to pay the full amount of the rent. So I hear the community loud and clear that there's a real desire to kind of reimagine our downtown area. To that end, the council did agree this year that there'll be a core part of our goal is a long-term plan. We've agreed to initiate that process. I think what we have right now is a timing issue because the work that will need to be done to create a permanent closure, from what I understand, could take a period of time, and I heard that referenced. So what I would like us to do is think about having a short-term solution. So I personally, based on all the feedback that I've received, and I spent a lot of time thinking about this this weekend, that we, you know, maintain it through September 1st. But I would actually, I want to see some real action when it comes to what could be some modifications we make to the program to ensure that it works holistically for our community. Because it's working great for the restaurants, but there are definitely some merchants and retailers that are, that are suffering. And not all of them, not all the retailers and merchants. But again, the outreach hadn't, we hadn't done any outreach on this particular item. I would like us to really embark, as we do on all of our big discussions, some substantial community outreach to all of the various community members to get their various inputs to try to create a program that works so that we don't lose some of the San Carlos charm that I'm concerned that we might, we might lose. I also am concerned about people with mobility issues. I was, I was surprised to see that in the packet and under a different agenda item, that 8% of our community has mobility issues. And the fact that I heard from at least three people this weekend sharing with me that they avoided the downtown area was also a concern because, again, we want it to be an inclusive community. The other area that I'm concerned about is the capacity issue. So right, once those restaurants open for full indoor dining, I would imagine that there is a portion of the community that's going to feel comfortable eating indoors. And I, the fact that we've lost 150 parking spaces and we'll have larger crowds likely coming into downtown. likely coming into downtown is, I think, something that we, we really do need to look at because traffic and circulation is also a key goal of ours as a council. Um, and, um, the community center portion of Laurel Street, uh, with respect to some of the traditional programming, what I heard, uh, loud and clear from, uh, the fire department when we initially closed this is that we do need adequate spacing, uh, for emergency vehicles. So we can't both have parklets and, uh, an event that draws a large crowd. So that aspect, um, if we want to maintain that type of programming, again, I think we need to think it through. So all of this is to say, that I think that there's a lot of great things about the current, uh, temporary parklet program. But again, it's temporary. And if we want to move to permanent, I think we need to take a short and, uh, medium and long-term approach to this. So I think the long-term piece we have, uh, identified in our strategic goals with the downtown planning. Um, but when it comes to, for example, the medium term, I think we really need to get started on, uh, trying to address some of these more immediate issues for some of these community members. So, um, uh, I'm in favor of keeping the project, um, as we initially agreed to September 1st, uh, with the caveat that we, we start some of these additional work streams to think through them, uh, so we can get a little bit ahead of it. So, um, if there, if there are anybody else who wishes to make a comment, um, please do. Um, otherwise, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Councilmember Rack?
I just want to thank everyone for their comments and the, the thoughtfulness around it. And, um, you know, I, I know everyone spent a lot of time thinking through this. So, um, and I think Mayor Parmalone, thanks for your thoughts around kind of looking at it in, in through three segments. So, um, I, I guess I would suggest that we, we sort of, if the council agrees, the subcommittee take on that issue of kind of trying to do some work with the, with staff to come back to, uh, the council on some, you know, some steps to be able to get through to that long-term because we know it's going to take some time to do that. But, um, that, I just want to thank everyone. I think it's, I think we've come to a good decision on this and, uh, look forward to, to working on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just, uh, uh, quickly wanted to say, um, yeah, I definitely appreciate your perspective, uh, on a, uh, medium and longer-term view on this. And I do realize we have, uh, a strategic goal around a new downtown plan. And, and I guess I would just say, we should prioritize that. We should accelerate that, uh, you know, it's clearly a, a, a high priority and one that, uh, you know, we shouldn't be thinking of evolving over three or four years, in my opinion. I think we should, uh, accelerate that. And if there's any way to blend the, uh, the medium term into the long-term, I think we'll be doing ourselves a service. And then I would just point out, if we are thinking about a permanent closure, you know, the, the nature of parklets, of course, is to keep diners safe as cars are driving by. So in the realm of a permanent closure, I don't think we're talking about a parklet program anymore. I think we're talking about a much lighter touch, uh, al fresco cafe table type dining that you see in all the other areas around the world that have pedestrian malls, uh, and they're all, uh, you know, uh, uh, look different than our stretch of parklets. So I would just make that observation and also say, uh, you know, I have talked to retailers as well and, and, uh, several have made good use of, uh, this greater outdoor space, uh, and would absolutely think any program, uh, we do should, uh, involve them and encourage them to also, uh, partake in the opportunities of a, of a pedestrian mall.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Um, before I take another comment, I would, uh, like to have somebody, uh, propose a motion for extending the meeting time.
Madam Mayor, that is exactly what I was about to suggest. We're going to have too many more comments. We need to extend the meeting.
All right, uh, is, or I've heard 2:00 AM.
I'd say, how about 11:30?
All right, there's a counter.
I'm voting for 2:00 AM.
Okay, there's a count, counter motion for 2:00.
How many of these votes do you want to take tonight?
Oh my gosh. Okay, if we can't, if we can't get through this, we're only here till 2:00.
I will second the 11:30.
Okay, all right. Crystal, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Parmalone? Yes. All right, so, um, okay, so I'm, uh, so it's, it's, what I'm hearing is, uh, that there's alignment, uh, that we, um, potentially keep the program to its, uh, published date of September 1st, but we, but we begin some additional work streams. So Greg, can you provide us some guidance on how we might, uh, modify the?
Yeah, I, uh, uh.
Motion?
Madam Mayor, I, we, to, to, to continue the program as it's currently, um, conceived does not require any kind of motion. And I think we could have a general, um, just a simple motion that, um, if the council desires it to, to take up, uh, Councilmember Rack's suggestion that the subcommittee report back, um, reasonably quickly, whatever date you would like to have it report back. Um, and then we will take it from there.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, well, I'll, I'll propose a, a June, uh, date for a report back from, uh, from, uh, maybe the subcommittee because by then we should have a clearer picture on what the governor is going to be doing. Does that sound like a reasonable timeframe to explore some options for a medium-term approach?
Reasonable to me.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we, and I, I think that makes sense to me. Are, are you making that as a motion or just as a proposal?
It, it sounds like what Greg, I thought you heard, I thought I heard you say is it would just be a proposal. We don't need to incorporate that into the motion. Is that correct, Greg?
Yeah, we're, I, I think, um, what I was suggesting is that if, if the council wants to document that we're going to, that the subcommittee is going to report back on a date certain, you should make a motion to that effect. Um, and then, but there's no motion required to do anything about the program itself. It's.
I see. Okay, okay, so no questions needed. All right.
Um, if I could, uh, you know, I, uh, would certainly, uh, support this guidance to the subcommittee, but I think we also should be clear about our guidance to staff and the level of priority on this issue. As, uh, we know, September will come faster than we think. Uh, I would like to give staff the, uh, objective of, of having a real plan, uh, for our next steps as we get closer to September.
Yes, I think, uh, Councilmember Dugan, with all due respect, I think that's what the subcommittee would be working on with, um, uh, uh, as with staff. So Jeff, um, could you, uh, let me know what date in, uh, June might be reasonable?
Um, well, I, I think that's really what, whatever date works for the council and the subcommittee, I don't think we're going to have any issue reporting out from what we've discussed with the subcommittee. Um, so I would say, we're looking at budget adoption at the second meeting in June. So perhaps the first meeting in June would be a, um, without having the agenda right in front of me, um, a better target for reporting back from the subcommittee with the caveat of, if that works for Ron and Adam.
Madam Mayor, I was going to suggest that we target the first meeting in June.
All right, so that would be June 14th. So that would coincide nicely with, um, when the governor would be expected to make an announcement. Councilmember Rack?
I, I just wonder if I can just, I always want to clarify, so the public has this correctly too? And, and I'm wondering if we each can just make a motion, if I, if I made a motion that said, um, I, I move that we make no adjustments to the current date for the program and request that the subcommittee, uh, come back with a, uh, recommendations for a medium or long-term plan for downtown by June 15th. Or June 14th is fine. If that makes sense, so that we can be clear that we're not making any changes to the timing.
Yeah.
Right now.
Okay, Greg, is that?
That, that's satisfactory, that motion.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Uh, Crystal, can you please call the roll? Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalone? Yes. All right, so, uh, let me get my bearings. So now we're going to move to, um, new business agenda item 9B, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Eucalyptus Avenue Holiday Celebration Community Outreach Plan and appropriating funds in the amount of $7,500 for community engagement. And this item will be presented by Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Tara?
Good evening, Council. I'll make this very quick. We've moved from September all the way to the holidays. Um, this is the Eucalyptus Avenue Holiday Events Issue. Um, we're going to talk about the history and outreach as well. I'll try to move this forward, Crystal. Okay, thank you. Um, so based on continuing concerns about the holiday events that occur on Eucalyptus Avenue, staff is recommending that the council approve a plan to reach out to the community and to open a dialogue about these events and their impact on San Carlos. We plan to hold two virtual community meetings. They are tentatively scheduled for May 26th and June 8th at 7 o'clock. Each meeting is, uh, the same, so people can attend one or the other. It will be facilitated. We've arranged for Sean Spano to facilitate the meetings. They will be, um, consisting of staff presenting various, um, experience and history as well as breakout sessions where the community then can talk more about their concerns and what they see as happening for the future. At the conclusion of this outreach, staff will prepare a report for the council. Next slide. Did I move it myself before? Okay. So, uh, just a little history. Every year, the residents of Eucalyptus Avenue decorate their homes for two holidays. The first is on Halloween on October 31st. It's a one-day event. And the other is during the entire month of December, usually beginning right after Thanksgiving and lasting until, uh, Christmas Day. Nearly all the residents, uh, participate in the December celebration. So it's very widely, uh, participated in throughout the month. And visitors to the Eucalyptus Avenue, uh, celebrations have grown dramatically in the last few years. Next slide, please. Crystal? Are you with me? Maybe I'm doing it. So public and private events versus public permitting. So this has been an issue that has been ongoing for several years. The residents of Eucalyptus are not organized in any, any formal group or committee to plan their holiday celebrations. They're basically individual homeowners who decorate their houses and their yards to celebrate the holidays. Uh, no city permits are currently pulled for these celebrations. However, the city has had some limited involvement in these events. By pulling a permit, it allows the city to play a larger role in the assistance and management of these events and by officially extending resources to ensure community safety. It also enables our sheriff's office to better coordinate support. And finally, it provides liability coverage for the entire event to whoever pulls the permit. So in the past, we have conducted some outreach and neighborhood discussions. We had the first meeting back in 2018 when we reached out to the residents and opened up a dialogue. We met with just the residents of Eucalyptus Avenue and discussed how the city might help manage the growing amount of visitors to their neighborhood. At that time, the residents could not agree on what specific actions they felt that they could, they wanted and did not pull permits for that year's celebrations. The city took its, uh, limited actions such as one-way traffic control, which we've been doing since 2009, along with signage to indicate the one-way street. And we increased our sheriff's presence. Then we held a second community meeting shortly after the holidays in March of 2019. Unfortunately, only six members of the, uh, of the residents of Eucalyptus attended the meeting, which was just too few to reach any consensus or determine what desired action they might like. Uh, the residents, again, did not pull permits in 2019 and the city took its usual action of traffic control and increased sheriff's presence. Uh, we did plan a meeting, uh, for 2020, but it was not held because of, of COVID-19. So what are the issues? Uh, there are safety and community issues. And the first one and most important one is traffic. It seems to have the biggest impact. It has the most impact on public safety as well as being the number one complaint. Uh, the, the, uh, traffic causes inaccessibility to emergency vehicles. Residents and neighbors can't reach their homes. And as mentioned, we've taken some action, but it's been limited to be able to re- resolve this issue. Uh, for litter and noise is with the, with large crowds comes in tree, increased trash as well as noise. And we have done some increased trash pickup. Uh, there have been some additional crimes committed. Um, alcohol consumption is fairly widespread during these events. And there have been verbal and physical, uh, altercations, which the sheriff's office has responded to. There is a need for sanitation and restrooms. Um, as the numbers have increased, uh, each year, uh, they need facilities to support them. And they need to be rented and maintained. And this last year with the COVID-19, uh, pandemic, it really became quite a bit of a problem. The city reached out knowing that there was, uh, a potential that these events would occur. We wanted to encourage, um, the residents to think proactively and be cautious to, um, to think about social distancing and to do all the things that the health orders were guiding us to do. Um, we also put that information out, um, in our social media and tried to encourage people to stay in their cars and not walk the, walk the area. Um, probably because of COVID-19 and the lack of really any, anything really happening for families, this was really well, uh, attended this year. It, it's advertised on social media and it just became quite the event. And it caused just quite a lot of consternation amongst a whole variety of neighborhoods that normally aren't impacted. All of these efforts come at a cost and they require cooper- cooperation between the neighborhood and the city. So what we propose to do is to reopen the dialogue with Eucalyptus Avenue as well as the greater community. While we support these celebrations, they must be safe and enjoyable for all. So we plan to in- include, um, all Eucalyptus Avenue residents as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. We'll directly invite them with a postcard invitation, uh, to these two meetings. And then we'll also be inviting the entire community via social media as well as all our other outlets. The discussion goals are, are several. We hope to share our experiences, listen to the complaints from the neighbors and discuss the city's role. We want to encourage residents to talk to one another and resolve any conflicts and discuss their actions that they're willing to take and how the city can support their efforts. And we'd like to form a partnership with these residents on ongoing basis and that we all understand that cooperation and compromise is, is needed for, from all parties. And finally, we want to educate the residents about the benefits of permitting and how, uh, this allows the city to be more directly involved with more support and safety measures for these events. So with that, we have, uh, fire, police, public works, parks and rec, and the city attorney to answer any of your questions. But at the end, we'd like to counsel to consider a resolution approving this outreach plan and appropriating $7,500 for the, from the general fund for the two meetings. And with that, my presentation is done.
Thank you, Tara. Any questions for Tara from council? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, uh, thanks for the presentation, Tara. And I'm, I'm happy to, uh, support this, uh, resolution. I think it's a good way to get things moving on this. The only question I had is, I, I'm not sure. I read in the, uh, packet that I think the out, the direct outreach was about 1,700 or 1,800 feet from Eucalyptus. And I'm just concerned that that's not far enough for the direct outreach. I mean, I live, I just did a, a check on a map. I live just over half a mile from Eucalyptus. And I get impacted by the traffic because of Britton Avenue this past year on Arroyo. Um, so I think there, and, and I would still, I'm not saying that I should be included in that, but there are, I, I think we should look at a little bit broader range of, of direct outreach because so many neighborhoods are impacted by this. Uh, but I think it's a great approach and happy to support it overall.
Well, I could answer that. If you want to throw a few more thousand dollars, we could send the, uh, postcards to everybody in the community.
I, I'm not saying we need to do that, but I would say maybe 2,500 or 3,000 square feet, 3,000 feet would, um, would, would do it. Cause I, you know, I, I think that's, or if you could come back and tell me what that number might be, I'd be interested in maybe thinking about.
Well, I believe.
Supporting a broader range, anyway.
I, I understand. I believe the number of residences, uh, was. I understand. I believe the number of residences was close to 3,000. And so, and we're inviting both the residents, as well as the property owners. And so it's a large number of residents of the community, but we can certainly make it larger. The most of the cost involved here is with mailing.
I'd be happy, well, we can get to that point, I guess, and when we get to a resolution, I'd be happy to consider that.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm glad the city is leaning into this and has a posture of supporting this activity. I mean, this kind of grassroots, organic holiday celebration is just, you know, this is at the very heart of what good community is, in my view. And yes, I know there are impacts in the area, and, you know, things have to be balanced and managed, and I'm just glad we're working to try to embrace this as a city and try to balance that. And I would just say that I do hope, so I certainly support this outreach meeting, and I hope a high goal of that meeting is to aggregate some leadership from the Eucalyptus community. You know, I think they have to acknowledge the broader impacts, and they owe, you know, to be, they owe the city, you know, some form of organization that the city can reasonably deal with. And I don't think that's unreasonable from the city to expect that. So I do hope folks on Eucalyptus can also lean into this and provide some organizations so that this program, which is really pretty wonderful, I drive through it several times every holiday season. I think it's pretty magical, and I just know with the city leaning into it, and if Eucalyptus can provide a bit of organization and leadership on their side, there's no reason this can't continue for years and years, and that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember DeCollins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tara, great report. Thank you. I think everybody said pretty much what I would say. The only thing I was going to say about spending the money on mailing is, I'm not sure we need to do that. If we do enough outreach on social media, that should take care of many, many more people in town. I'm sure by word of mouth and by getting it out on social media, a lot of people will hear about the meeting.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we doing comments now, or just questions? I too have comments, but I wanted to just ask, clarify about our process here.
Thank you, yeah. A couple, I didn't monitor that closely, but it's, yeah, it's questioned.
I do, okay. I can wait. I do have comments, but I will wait until after public comment.
Okay, so, Crystal, are there anybody wishing to make public comment on this item?
Yes, we do have one hand raised. Sonia Elks, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Surprise, surprise. I have an opinion even at 10:43 at night. Thank you for taking my comment. I wanted to thank, thank you for that presentation, and also echo Ron Collins' comment that perhaps the wider community can be through social media and just the directly affected can be the mailing. And then, secondly, I just wanted to put out there, and I know I can bring this up in that meeting if I, if it's put out to wider community, I love to attend. I think that the streets of Burch and Eucalyptus would be fantastic, permanent, one-way streets. Or maybe not permanent, but as a pilot, just to try it. And my favorite configuration is where there's a one line of traffic down the middle of the street. On the left side is a nice ample bike lane where joggers and strollers and everybody can spread out pedestrian-wise. And on the right side is diagonal parking. So you move all the parking to one side, but you don't lose parking, because you make it diagonal, and then there's room for a lane of cars. You make the street 10 feet, whatever needs to be narrow enough so people don't race down the street. And that angled parking gives people the sense that they can't race through it, because they don't know who's going to back out, kind of like on Laurel Street. So that is my comment. Thank you for taking it, and I look forward to the meeting. And thank you to the city for being so proactive about reaching out to this community. Eucalyptus is a wonderful holiday tradition for a lot of people, and if we can prevent the traffic backup and make it a smoother process, it could be lovely to keep the charm and not have the harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Sonia. And then we do have one more speaker, Olin Palmer. She should be able to unmute.
So keep the charm and prevent the harm. That sounds like a great theme. I drive through that neighborhood regularly to visit family, and I love Eucalyptus and the tradition that it has for the holidays. But the fact that it completely backs up Britton and Howard and any of those other side streets is really problematic. And so coming up with a solution to that would be wonderful.
All right, thank you, Olin. Crystal, any additional public, community members wishing to speak?
No, no further hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we'll go into the comment and discussion. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to start by saying thank you to Mayor Palmer Lohan, because she and I spoke quite a bit over the holiday season and responded to many, many emails. And Laura, you've really tried to push this along and get this dialogue happening, so I want to thank you for your efforts on this. Regarding the postcarding, I agree with Adam that we should probably look at a wider square of residences. So my suggestion would be from Alameda to El Camino and from San Carlos Avenue to Eaton, because I do feel like there's a lot of streets in there that are impacted, where people are parking and walking in. And we did hear from quite a few residents that were pretty far away from Eucalyptus, but still felt very impacted. I want to note, this event is so well-loved in our community, but as the years go by, it has become more and more of a heavy lift for our impacted neighbors and our city resources. It affects the entire community, so I'm glad that we're going to invite everyone to participate in this dialogue. And I think that it's something that, as a community, we do need to find a path forward. So I'm glad we're kicking off this outreach plan. I'm hoping for a lot of input and creative ideas going forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you. I just want to also thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan, for your work on this and your leadership. I know that you are to a lot to kind of get this moving where it is, and appreciate that work and look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I'll just echo that, and thank you, Laura Palmer Lohan and Sarah McDowell for your work on this. It does impact folks. And I'll just say, having done a few mailings in San Carlos of late, I believe it's actually less expensive to postcard the entire town than to be so targeted. So I would actually support notice out to the entire town. I think this is a tradition everyone's aware of, and everyone may have input and opinion on. So I would, I actually, and I think it would be at reduced cost to just go ahead and notice the whole city. So I would support that, as well as, as Councilmember Collins suggested, good outreach through social media and our newsletter, et cetera. I think we should hear from everyone on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Yeah, so I just want to chime in here. So, you know, since I moved to San Carlos, I've definitely seen the popularity of this event grow over time, both the Halloween and the Christmas events. And as Vice Mayor McDowell shared, I received many complaints during the holiday season. I live at Howard and Cedar, so, you know, that has been a good bellwether to, you know, kind of measure the intensity, if you will, of the crowds growing over the years. And I actually did a walking tour with a neighbor the morning after one of the Friday evenings and observed a lot of the, what was described by Tara in the report with respect to trash and kind of what the experience was for those community members who live near Eucalyptus. The thing for me that's, I think, so important on this is really hoping to get the neighbors to talk to the neighbors. As was pointed out in the staff report, there's some complexity to this, and, you know, opening those channels, that line of communication is really important. So I'm definitely in support of providing some budget for this. I've heard some different proposals on the table tonight. I don't know what a citywide mailing costs off the top of my head, but I know that resources are a bit tight right now with, you know, the economy being a bit down. So if we can, I don't know, Tara, if you can, if you happen to have off the top of your head what a range is, or if this is maybe something that staff could take a look at. A simple thing maybe to do is just to take a look at the traffic pattern. So I think you can do a historical search on traffic. Every night I was checking my phone, and the red lines running through San Carlos were, you know, was pretty extensive. And those people on those routes were concerned about emergency access, if there was anything to occur. So I guess I'm struggling with our ability to kind of come up with an alignment on to what, you know, how far-reaching to do the postcard mailing tonight. I do think using other channels makes sense, but I'm wondering if Jeff or Tara, you could provide some suggestions based on council input about how to proceed?
Well, sure. We actually are planning to issue a community newsletter here beginning of May, so that will hit every address. If you care to have a postcard as well, which we plan to just target, but we could easily, as John mentioned, it is easier to give, everybody in the whole town gets one of these rather than selecting a certain area. I would say if we were to increase the budget to 10,000, that would cover whatever the mailing cost would be. We won't spend any more than we need, so the money will just go back into the, will stay in the budget, so.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you for providing that context. So I don't see any further hands up. So are we ready to move on to the next portion of the process here with a motion?
Sure. I'll move that the city council approved the Eucalyptus Avenue Holiday Celebration Community Outreach Plan and appropriating funds in the amount of up to $10,000 for community engagement.
All right, do we have a second?
Do you need the resolution number? I think that's how it's written.
I don't have that.
It would be Resolution Number 2021-26.
All right, so, Adam, do you want to read it, or?
Or John?
Do you have it? Does he have it?
Is it, is it actually important?
It's an action list item, so it has to be read word for word. Thank you, Councilmember Rack, for picking up on that.
I moved to adopt resolution, unless you have it in front of you, John, I'm happy to just do it.
Go ahead, Adam, sure.
Okay, sorry. I moved to adopt Resolution 2021-
26.
26, a resolution of the City of San, Council of the City of San Carlos approving the Eucalyptus Avenue Holiday Celebration Community Outreach Plan and appropriating funds in the amount of up to $10,000 for community engagement.
I'll second that.
All right, Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, so with that, we move to item, new business, item 9C. This is consideration of adopting a resolution increasing the community events program budget to include the creation of a new full-time recreation supervisor and other operational expenses. And providing the report this evening will be Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation and Culture Director. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan, and good evening, Vice Mayor McDowell, council members, any community that are out there listening. And tonight, I will be going over our community events program budget and some potential changes to consider to expand it in the upcoming year. Okay, I just, oh, sorry, there we go. Okay, here we go. So as you can recall, when the pandemic hit last spring, all of our normally scheduled community events were canceled, as the local health orders did not allow for any large gatherings to occur. This included our summer concerts, our movie nights, the Gobble Rock, Night of Holiday Lights, Family Campout, the Public Safety Fair, Pride Celebration, and Earth Day. Funding for these events was included in the budget reductions for fiscal year 2020, 2021, as the events were not allowed to take place. In addition, the former San Carlos Chamber, for years, hosted the weekly farmer's market, art and wine fair, as well as the San Carlos Block Party and Wine Strolls. When the San Carlos Chamber ceased operations in October 2020, the event programs and personnel moved to the Chamber, the Chamber San Mateo County to continue on. However, they notified the city that they would no longer manage the events effective July 1st, 2021. The two changes to the city's community events programs this summer would be first, following the announcement from the governor last week, he stated everyday activities will be allowed and businesses can open with common sense risk reduction measures as of June 15th. After this announcement, staff is preparing for events to resume as early as this summer, pending any additional guidance from the state. Second is for the city to take on the former Chamber events to continue to offer these popular events to the community. To reinstate the city's existing run, or sorry, to reinstate the existing city-run community events and expand the program to include events organized by the former San Carlos Chamber, it will require the addition of a new recreation supervisor position. This position will oversee the entire community events program, including event coordination, collaboration with other city departments, securing event sponsorships from local businesses, supervision of part-time staff, coordination of the weekly farmer's market, and managing event contracts. Given the complexity of the operations of the former Chamber events, it is recommended to hire Wendy Chitino for the continuity and the successful transition of events under the city. The proposal for a new position was reviewed and approved by the local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union, to which this position is a part. The expanded program will also require additional funding for increased public works overtime costs to support the events with street closures, setups, and other tasks, an increase in part-time salaries specifically for the weekly farmer's market and art and wine fair, and an increase in funding for field and program supplies, professional services, and marketing to support the events. Should the community events program budget be approved and guidance following the announcement from last week allow events to take place, staff is preparing to resume these events beginning June 15th, with the exception of the art and wine fair. This fair requires significant coordination to begin as early as January of the event year, and we would not have enough time to plan and coordinate this large-scale event. This slide shows the overall budget for the program. Programming, program expenses include what I previously discussed. Revenues from the events will include sponsorships and booth fees. Revenue projections are based off of post-pandemic assumptions, with the thought that some local businesses may still be recovering from pandemic losses, and sponsorships may not be at the same levels as they were before the pandemic. In addition, the farmer's market is currently operating at half the vendor participation as before, and is not bringing in as much revenue from weekly booth fees. Attendance at the market is not strong enough to add in more vendors, and a handful of vendors have left due to low attendance and not enough profit to support their participation. We will continue to promote the market in our greater community to gain attendance. And in addition, should the farmer's market return to Laurel Street and attendance grow, revenues could also increase to offset net costs. Before you tonight is for you to consider adopting a resolution increasing the community events program budget to include the creation of a new recreation supervisor and other operational expenses. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Amy? Going once. All right, Crystal, are there anyone wishing to make a public comment on this item? All right, Crystal, are there anyone wishing to make a public comment on this item?
Yes, we have two hands that just shot up. First speaker will be Olin Palmer. You should be able to unmute, followed by Sonia Elks.
Yeah, I'm curious how you qualify someone for this role and what sort of compensation is associated with it. Anyway, I totally support that San Carlos does these things. I just don't know how it fits within the budget. I'm not a regular to these meetings, and so I'm curious about that.
Thank you, Olin. Amy, is that a question that you can address in the context of the discussion?
Sure, um, let me just. We do have compensation posted on our website, so under our administrative services page, under human resources, you can find the compensation on our website. I believe the salaries and benefits was, I'd have to pull it up, roughly 175, 175,000 is roughly salary and benefits that's budgeted.
Thank you, Amy.
And our next speaker is Sonia Elks.
Thank you for taking my call. I just wanted to underscore how much I've appreciated the incredible efforts that Wendy Chitino, whom you're considering for this position, goes, the efforts that she goes to. She's an amazing contributor, and I'm so grateful for her work and the quality of work that she does. And I also, if I'm understanding correctly, this would bring the farmer's market under the purview of the city, correct? And that means that decisions about the farmer's market could be made to the city, which will make it easier to do things like put marketing in strategic places so that you get, if the market were to continue in the industrial district, arts district, then the marketing could be more strategically placed and could be more efficiently put up because it would be through the city. Is that correct, that it would be a more efficient process for these things if it was to go through this position? Did I understand that correctly?
Amy, can you, can you address Sonia's question?
Sure, you're correct in that it would be under the city and the city would be managing the weekly farmer's market. And I will say we've always had a great partnership with the San Carlos Chamber, and we continue to have a great partnership with the Chamber San Mateo County in promoting these. So we'll be working, you know, once we get staff on board, we'll be working to see what additional marketing efforts we can do.
Wonderful. Thank you for all of your efforts, Amy, and for putting this through. I think that's a, that's a great move forward and appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Sonia. All right, any, any additional callers?
No, that's it.
All right, council comments and discussion, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to quickly say that I think Wendy Chitino will be a tremendous asset to our staff. I will be very happily voting in favor of this and also want to thank Amy for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan, and then Councilmember Rec.
Great. Yeah, I just had a quick question actually first for Amy. Is this, you know, this was basically paid for by our business owners before through their dues to our chamber, which is now merged. You know, the San Mateo County Chamber is, you know, I guess is elected not to pick this up. And, you know, they're a broad chamber, so I guess that's standard for our neighbors. But is this, are these type of events, is this, is this like, kind of like us reverting back to how things are usually done in most places, and we just had a luxury for a period of time that we had a Chamber of Commerce that did these things for us? Or, you know, is this, is this kind of a city going above and beyond what's normal?
In the cities that I reached out to about both the art and wine fair and the farmer's market, for art and wine fair, there aren't too many cities that take on that coordination. The city of Santa Clara is one of them that I spoke with several times about just how they manage this large-scale event. But typically in other communities, it is a chamber organization that manages the art and wine fair. For the farmer's market, some of our neighboring communities that have a farmer's market have like an association come, there's several different market associations that will come in and run the market. If that's the case, then there is no revenue coming in from the market. The revenue is going to that association who's coordinating it. And Wendy and I have met many times in the last months to kind of grasp all this and to plan for these changes. And I do understand the former chamber's budget pretty well, but I would say that, you know, there was a large revenue coming in from the art and wine fair and from the farmer's market, and we're just seeing a dip right now in those two revenues, and we're projecting a bit of a dip in those two event revenues. Just coming out of the pandemic and not wanting to reach too far and then not hit our mark. Jeff and I have talked about, you know, looking at how this next year goes and coming back if we need to make any program adjustments or if we need to increase our revenue projections once we've kind of come out of this pandemic and participation is up at normal levels and revenues therefore also up.
Okay, so we think the, these programs will be largely self-funded then?
Not to start, but potentially in the next few years.
Okay, and the, are we aware, does the chamber, you know, the Chamber of San Mateo County, do they do events like this, but just not in San Carlos? Like, do they foster Redwood City events like this?
They definitely reach out, you know, I'm still talking with Amy Buckmaster, and she's there to support us in any way that they can. In terms of an event that they, I'm actually not sure. I can look into that for you. Yeah, I-
Okay, I mean, I just so, you know, these are wonderful, wonderful events for San Carlos. I wholeheartedly support whatever we need to do to keep them going. You know, I do just pause for a moment to ask, are we taking on a forever burden as a city that is typically done by a Chamber of Commerce? And should we think twice about it? If we have some degree of confidence that these things will self-fund over time because these are such successful events, you know, that's great, you know, and if you've got the ability to manage that along with everything else, Amy, I guess that works. But that's the only thing I would pause on. But in general, I support anything that's going to keep these programs going, even in the near term.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan, Councilmember Rec, and then Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say this, I think this is great. I'm happy to support this. And I've had a chance to work with Wendy when I was on the Chamber Board, and I think she's going to be a great asset to the city and look forward to working with her.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, just to give you some historical perspective, I joined the Chamber Board back in about 2005 or so and was on the board for about seven years. If I remember correctly, the art and wine fair, the farmer's market, the Goblin Walk, Festival of Lights, Wine Walk, all of those things were Chamber of San, San Carlos Chamber of Commerce creations. They've worked with the city on the Goblin Walk Festival of Lights and that sort of thing. But, but, but the Chamber largely came up with those things. And when I was on the Chamber, the, the city did provide funding as a basis of support for the Chamber, but as all the other events grew, I'm not sure if the city support declined. I think it did. But the Chamber bring, or the art and wine fair brought in a lot of money. Farmer's Market, I'm not sure if it was self-sustaining, but it was, it was a good, it was a good source of revenue for, for the Chamber as well. So, and, and I'm also entirely comfortable with Wendy Chitino being chosen. She, this is what she's been doing for at least 20 years. So she's, you know, she wakes up in the morning and she's, she's turned on. And, and, you know, you don't have to turn her off. She knows how to do all of this stuff. So I think it's going to be a wise expenditure of our, of our funds, and she will, I think she'll, she'll, obviously she'll do a great job. She's been doing a great job. And the city's going to have somebody who knows how all of these things operate.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. I am also going to be voting in favor of this tonight. Wendy Chitino knows these programs inside and out. She has the skills. She has the relationships and the network, and it will be wonderful to return to our regularly scheduled programming, and I cannot wait. So with that, Crystal, if you can call the roll.
I will move to adopt Resolution 2021-27. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos increasing the community events program budget to include the creation of a new full-time recreation supervisor and other operational expenses.
Thank you. See, I'm trying to get us to 10, to end at 11:30, but shortcuts don't work with Robert's rules. All right, thank you. Now, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rec?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes, thank you. All right, and I would like to entertain a motion to extend the meeting and also, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Gladly, except, I just, if I can ask Greg, are we still planning to do the closed session? Do we need to do that tonight? Or can that be pushed out? I just want to, before I make the motion?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's time sensitive or not. So perhaps that's a question for also they. Or Jeff.
Let me talk with Al real quick offline, and we'll get back to you after the next item.
Okay, so I'll move that we extend it till 12:30, just to give us some, some coverage.
All right, thank you. All right, and then I'd like to propose a five-minute break.
I second both of those motions.
All right, we'll be back at 11:17. Thank you, everybody.
We need to both.
Oh, God, see?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rec?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for keeping me honest.
Just to get back to you on the closed session item, it is time-sensitive, but we, we think it's probably no more than five or 10 minutes.
Okay. Well, I think he's, the motion provided us enough time that we could probably knock it out without having to extend the meeting further. All right, well, I'm, I don't see Councilmember Rec back just yet. Wondering if we can go ahead and get started.
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, all right, that's, okay, great. All right, so this is item, Public Hearing 8A, which is consideration of the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision denying the 977 Laurel Street condominium conversion project. And we've got, who's, trying to figure out who's making the presentation. We'll hear from Lisa Costa-Sanders.
Madam Mayor, I need to disclose something quickly before we start, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor McDowell.
I need to disclose that the presenter tonight on behalf of the applicant is Andy Klein. And in 2018, Andy volunteered to help manage my campaign for city council. I also met last week with the developer and his team to hear their take on the appeal tonight. I have spoken with the city attorney, and given that the presenter, Mr. Klein, was a volunteer a number of years ago, I was advised that I am not mandated to recuse myself from this hearing tonight. I do not believe that this will influence my decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So similar disclosure, and I am going to recuse myself from this item. Andy Klein actually was a volunteer in my campaign, but only four or five months ago, pretty fresh. And I understand Andy is, has no financial interest in this. I feel I could be objective, but I'm concerned about the appearance of the close proximity to my campaign. So I'm going to accuse myself from this item now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dugan. So, Crystal, if you could, after this item is completed, notify Councilmember Dugan when we're back into the next item?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Collins?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My disclosure is that, a couple of things, I did meet with Andy Klein and the developer last Thursday. Also, Mr. Klein has a business relationship with my daughter, manages a property that she owns. But she has no, he has no direct business relationship with me, so I, I don't feel I need to recuse myself. I did check with the city attorney on that. So I think that relationship with one of my family members will not affect my decision tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Rec?
Like I might have to go too. I just, I just want to mention that I did meet with the developer on this and that it will not sway my decision or impact my decision on this.
All right, thank you. And I also met with the developer and the property manager representatives at their request, and it will not influence my decision-making this evening. All right, so I think we went through everyone. Lisa Costa-Sanders, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. The item before you is consideration of the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision denying the 977 Laurel Street condominium conversion request. I guess, Crystal, can you help me with the slides? There we go. Great, thank you. The subject site is just over 6,000 square feet in area, and it's currently developed with a four-story mixed-use building located within the downtown mixed-use core. In a background, the Planning Commission approved design review, conditional use permit, below-market-rate housing plan for the eight-unit mixed-use development that is located within a four-story building, includes ground floor commercial space, seven market rate rental units, and one very low-income rental unit. The Planning Commission on its March 1st, 2001 meeting voted to deny the applicant's request on a 5-0 vote, and the request was to allow conversion of the existing eight-unit mixed-use development from rental housing to for-sale housing and denied the requested amendment to the below-market-rate housing agreement. The applicant filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision citing four reasons, which I will walk through this evening. The first, the applicant now agrees to maintain the below-market-rate unit as a rental unit for the duration of the BMR period. If the Planning Commission's decision is overturned tonight by the council, the applicant's modified proposal to maintain a BMR rental unit for the duration of the agreement is recommended. The second item relates to the vacancy rate. The Planning Commission resolution states that the vacancy rate is 3.1%, which the applicant believes is incorrect. The applicant's self-reported vacancy survey indicates a 11.47% vacancy rate. Planning commissioners noted that due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the rental market is more impacted than ownership housing market, and the required threshold to consider condominium conversion of greater than 5% vacancy in the city may be plausible. However, this is not the only basis for the Planning Commission's decision. The third reason for the appeal is based on the finding that rental units being naturally affordable does not take into account the specific units of 977 Laurel Street. The appellant states that the rent charged for the units of 977 Laurel are 50 to 400% higher than the median rental amount in San Carlos. And if they were for sale, all but one of them would be listed at a lower price than the median home price in the community. The applicant is, the appellant is correct that this information was provided for general information and not specific to the project. Planning commissioners noted that other rental properties have recently reduced rents due to the current market conditions. And as while there are not enforceable stipulations that the for-sale price to confirm the applicant's assertion that the for-sale product would indeed be affordable in the community. And finally, the city is working on its housing element update. The housing element does not expire until 2023, and the city council, excuse me, the city does not have a policy to deny projects based on updates that are occurring in the future. Planning commissioners did recognize that this is the first condominium request before the city, and as such, it is an important- an important policy decision. Commissioners also noted at the meeting that the housing element is being updated ahead of schedule at the request of the City Council due to concerns with housing supply and affordability and that the new housing element may include policies relevant to the preservation of rental housing stock. There are several findings contained within the municipal code that the city is required to make in order to approve the request. Next slide. A majority of the findings as listed here can be met or deferred pending this decision. Next. The City Municipal Code cites the State Department of Finance Statistics for the purpose of determining the city's vacancy rate or use of a vacancy survey. The State Department of Finance Statistics reports that the San Carlos rental vacancy rate at 3.1% as of 2018. The applicant submitted a vacancy survey that found 11.47% vacancy rate as of October 2020. The survey found that 79 vacant units out of 689 units reported in, within 38 apartment units, excuse me, apartment buildings. Staff has some concern with the applicant-provided survey. As the data did not report on any fully occupied buildings, it may skew towards unoccupied units. Reported vacancy rate may be due to the market conditions related to the impact of COVID-19, where we are seeing renters more impacted by homeowners. Regardless, if we were to assume the current vacancy rate in San Carlos exceeds the 5% requirement, we then need to consider additional factors that are specified in the code. And the next slide outlines that the San Carlos Municipal Code requires the city to consider the following factors in determining whether condominium conversion is in the best interest of the community. The impact of proposed conversion on the existing apartment supply, the ratio of the number of residential condominium units available compared to apartment units, and the affordability level of both rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community. And we'll briefly walk through each of those. At the meeting, in response to a question from Planning Commissioners, staff researched, next slide, researched the percentage of rental units in surrounding communities. And this data is from 2019. As you can see, San Carlos has a much lower percentage of rental units when compared to other jurisdictions. Factors one and two in the findings criteria requires the impact of proposed residential conversion on the existing housing supply and the ratio. As we just showed, 27% of the housing stock in San Carlos are rental units. That's one of the lowest rented percentages in the county. The project will reduce the apartment housing supply by seven units. We are also seeing a substantial market trend towards building ownership units. Projects that have recently been approved are under review of predominantly condominium developments. The city recently approved projects that have not yet been constructed include 173 new housing units, 33 of which are apartments. Of the apartment units, 24 are within a below-market-rate housing development at 817 Walnut Street that is co-sponsored by the city and not market-driven. Other projects currently under review are all proposed as ownership developments. As there are very few new rental developments in the pipeline, it is important to preserve the existing rental stock. And then factor three requires the city to consider the affordability level of both rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community. San Carlos' median home price in August 2020 is just over 1.9 million and the average monthly rate was $2,182. And that average rental rate would likely result in a home valued of around $500,000. Generally, apartment units provide a more affordable housing opportunity for the community. And a greater inventory of apartment units tend to result in lower rents overall compared to market with fewer apartments. I'll now hand it off to Adam Aronson, who will walk through the below-market-rate housing plan for you.
Thank you, Lisa. So the Planning Commission approved the BMR plan for this project in 2015. It requires one, one-bedroom rental unit as affordable to very low-income households, and that is for a term of 55 years. It also prohibits the owner from converting the BMR unit to a condominium unit. The project also qualified for a density bonus of one additional unit with the provision of a very low-income unit. Next slide, please. The rental rate for the unit in question is restricted to $1,193 a month, that is including utilities. And then the maximum qualifying household incomes for that unit are about $60,000 for a single person, $69,000 for two people, and $78,000 for three people. Next slide, please. So the applicant has requested to amend the BMR housing plan, has agreed to maintain the very low-income unit as a BMR rental unit for the term of the agreement, which would be 55 years. If the condominium conversion request is approved, the BMR plan can be approved on the condition that the BMR unit remain an affordable rental unit for the term of the agreement.
Thank you. The public notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the site on March 29th and published in the newspaper on March 31st. Staff has not received any comments on the project to date. That concludes the staff presentation. We are now available to answer your questions. And I know the applicant has a presentation they would also like to give for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So questions for staff from council? Councilmember Collins, followed by Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, I'm just curious. It seems to me that accurate vacancy studies seem to be elusive. Why is that?
Maybe Adam Aronson can help me with that. He did a bit more research on it.
Sure. Yeah. To be frank, the, the difficulty is finding vacancy studies specifically for San Carlos. It's easier to find cities or vacancy studies for more regional locations in the Bay Area or broader San Mateo County. But our ordinance specifically references the Department of Finance and their data. And we reached out to the Department of Finance. They recommended we use the 2018 rate from the American Community Survey. And that's the most recent survey we've been able to find that specifically centers on San Carlos.
Okay. And so, thinking about that for a minute, I think one of the criteria was if the vacancy rate was higher than, what, 5%, then it might have an impact on your recommendation. Did I, did I understand that correctly?
Yes. So what we're saying is the code provides that once you hit that 5% vacancy, that a condominium conversion could be considered by the city, but that then there's other important factors that the city needs to consider. And so is that vacancy rate due to a surplus in the rental market? Or is there some other factor that's causing that higher vacancy rate? And our concern is that there's just such a very limited rental housing market in San Carlos. The concern is with removing any rental units and turning those into long-term condominium units would reduce the rental inventory and thereby reducing the affordability and the ability to live in this community.
So even if there was general agreement that the vacancy rate was, I'm making up a number, 8%, that's not necessarily the item that pushes this over the threshold of being approved or not approved or recommended for approval. Is that right?
That's correct. That's just one factor. And the Planning Commission, in their deliberation, also spent quite a bit of time considering the other factors and the impact of the community.
Yeah. So the next question is, I mean, we've got, what, 27% of our housing in San Carlos is rental housing. Why is that? Why are we so much lower than the other cities in our peer cities group? I, maybe that's calling for an opinion, but I'm just curious. I am curious in your opinion.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. And maybe Elsavé maybe has, has a professional planning opinion on that. But, you know, there really isn't anything to distinguish this community from, say, Belmont, Menlo Park, as far as, you know, we don't distinguish zoning regulations between rental and ownership.
Yeah.
It's the same standards for either building type. But the rent, the ownership market is quite profitable in this community. Certainly, for, buy, home sale prices are quite high. So if Al has anything he'd like to add to that.
I don't have much to add to that. I mean, we've seen real growth in the housing market just in the last decade or so, or less, really. I mean, before the Transit Village project, there weren't any really significant apartment projects in the city for many, many years. People can think back, you know, the last 20, 25 years, you know, we really didn't see that many. So we'd have to kind of go back and, and it's probably due to market forces, maybe more than anything else. You know, whether it's our regulatory process, I, I don't think it is, quite frankly.
Okay. Well, along that, along those lines, when it comes to, you know, the market for condos, I think I heard that we haven't had a condo conversion request in 30 years. And it makes me wonder why haven't we?
One of the main reasons is that the vacancy rate, it hasn't been less than 5%, or it's been greater than 5% during that time period.
Okay. So that's been a big driver of it.
Correct.
So if we were to approve this, would we be violating our own housing element policy?
You need to consider that, that policy very, very closely because it does talk about, you know, that balance between rental and ownership in the community. So that is definitely an important factor to consider.
Yeah. Not that we'd be violating it outright, but maybe violating it spirit, at least partially.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm done with my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Sorry, my screen, my screen kept jumping between Ron and everybody else for a while. My eyes were going. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess, Lisa, I had one, I guess I would say, I'm going to try to keep this to questions, but I, I, I'm surprised that there's, while I, I get that there's no specific, maybe, survey data around San Carlos. I mean, you could, there's been tons of surveys and reporting about the rental rates and vacancy rates in the Bay Area. So I can't imagine we are so unique that we wouldn't meet that threshold of 5%, given I see things in the Chronicle about 11, 12% in San Francisco. Stanford did a study. There's all kinds of studies going on around this for this. So is there, is it just that we can't find a specific one around San Carlos?
That's correct. The most of the studies that you're referring to are more regionally based. And I think as Adam Aronson indicated, those are more readily available than city-specific.
Okay. And then, can, can you, you know, I know we talked a little bit about, Ron mentioned about the housing policy and different stuffs. I mean, to, I would, I'm going to opine for a second that I think that, frankly, I think our housing policy is flawed, is sort of the bigger issue here versus why we're not. Because if the, most of the generation of apartments are stuff that we're, work that we're doing, or public-private partnerships, or things like the Transit Village. So it seems like there's some, that seems to be the bigger issue that we need to address. But that's more of a comment. My question is around these three factors that you mentioned. Of those, is essentially only the vacancy rate sort of factual? And the other two are more, I don't want to say opinionated, but sort of, they're, they're not very, it's not saying like you have to have this number or this number. It's more of, do we feel like the housing stock is being impacted? Do we feel, so that thing, so we're really, when you say we may violate our own housing policy, it seems like there's only one that is actually sort of factually based, or sort of specific that we could, you can, you can base on facts?
Correct. Just the one has that numerical factor to consider and the others are based more on, you know, the impact on the community overall and the balance of the, the housing stock. So it doesn't have specific thresholds to meet.
Got it. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions now, and then I'll probably have more questions after the applicant's presentation. Lisa, this also has to do with the vacancy study. Do we have guidelines that an applicant would have to meet that state how many units need to be surveyed? Is there a minimum amount of time in our code the vacancy rate has to exist? Do we say the vacancy rate has to be more than 5% for six months? Could the vacancy rate be high for one month and a developer could request a condo conversion? I'm just, I'm kind of wondering what our standards are for an acceptable vacancy rate study.
The code does not get into that level of specificity. It just establishes greater than 5%. And, and that's the extent of the code. There's no further standards or details.
Okay. All right. And then my other question is regarding, kind of building on what Adam just said about the, the three findings about what is in the best interest of the community. The, the second one mentions a ratio of the number of residential condo units available to the number of apartment units available. What is that ratio? And what, what is the data that we're supposed to be looking at to making that finding?
Yeah. Again, it's not specified in the code and we don't have that very detailed information. So I think you need to consider more, you know, what's going on in the community, the community trends, the reason that the housing element is currently being studied and evaluated. A lot of that factors around the availability of housing and the affordability of housing. And so that was a lot of the deliberation that the Planning Commission had, is they were quite concerned that we're not seeing a trend toward new rental development. And so losing this would be kind of a permanent loss from that rental housing stock. And that was a lot of the Planning Commission's consideration.
So in the housing element, there is no policy set by the City Council about what kind of ratio we're looking for?
There is not currently.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll reserve my questions for after the applicant's presentation.
Okay. Thank you. So procedurally, is, are the applicants up next? Or is that part of public comment?
It should be the applicant next. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We're going to start with Ron. Ron, do you want to get going?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah.
It says I cannot start my video because the host has stopped him, stopped it.
Okay, I've got control of the PowerPoint, Ron. You can start.
Okay. I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and the City Council for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ron Grove, and I am the applicant, the owner of 977 Laurel Street. Besides being a local builder and developer, I'm also a resident of San Carlos. Recently, I have proposed and built developments at 545 Walnut and 977 Laurel. I've also proposed a development at 1257 Magnolia. All three originally started as apartment developments. My business model is straightforward. Since I'm a builder-owner, I can build these buildings at a cost, which is why they are more affordable to build than the owner who hires it to GC and must pay for the profits before the building is even on the market. San Carlos has always been a tough town to build in. The height limits, setbacks, parking requirements, neighborhood issues, and the incredible amount of time the process takes makes it all impossible to build in rental housing in our community. Since 2007, only 53 privately-developed apartment units have been proposed in San Carlos. Of those 53, I proposed 26, which is 49% of the total proposed private apartments in San Carlos. I purchased the plans for 977 Laurel Street with full intention of keeping the property as a rental property. The previous owner went through the entitlement process with the city. It got approved and then he was unable to build it because of the cost of construction was too great. When I bought it, we did the math, and at the time, the building penciled out. Unfortunately, a couple of issues caused us to reexamine its viability and apply for a condo conversion. Upon completion of the building, the county hit me with a tax valuation of about 2.5 million more than the expect, more than expected, as we believed the value of the building would be reflective of the cost of, of the bill and the rent roll. We also saw a weakening in the Class A rental market starting in February. In February, I met with staff to discuss the possible, possibility of a condo conversion. And the building was, the staff recommended a denial as the vacancy rate was not above the 5% threshold required for a condo conversion. The vacancy rate at the time was quoted at 3.1. The following month, the pandemic hit and the vacancy rate skyrocketed. We continued moving forward with the application with the city. This was a very difficult process and the staff was non-communicative a lot of the time, and, and it made the progress take a lot longer than it should have. Finally, everything was finalized and we were told two days before the release of the Planning Commission. Finally, everything was finalized, and we were told two days before the release of the planning commission that the staff was recommending denial due to the vacancy rate. The BMR conversion and because it's not supportive of changing, um, for rent units to for sale units. We were surprised with most of this, but pushed forward. We were once again denied at the planning commission for all the reasons staff recommended, but we feel that these reasons given are not correct. We believe that we do qualify for a condo conversion, and that the findings found in the city are not applicable. The condo conversion policy is meant for times exactly like this. When there are huge market swings, which make owning a new rental property unaffordable. We plan on selling two to three of the condos to pay down the loans on the property, and we leave the remainders as rentals. This flexibility would allow us to keep the building, therefore providing rentals at very low income BMR unit and some lower-priced condos that, that could be purchased by first-time buyers. All around, we feel that this is a win-win for everybody. During the time with the most, most things are a loss. We thank you for your flexibility and your time tonight. I'm gonna hand the rest of the presentation over to Andy. But before I do, um, I want to, uh, just talk about how, how these, these apartments are high-end apartments, and my cheapest apartment is thirty-five hundred dollars a month. The median price for a house or, or, or a similar unit in San Carlos is twenty-one hundred dollars. It was displayed earlier on the screen. Um, i- if you were to buy a new house in San Carlos, I believe the screen said it was, uh, one, one million, nine hundred and something thousand dollars. We'd be bringing to market three, three units that are less than the cheapest condo available today, which is nine hundred and eighty thousand. So our, our lowest price unit would be somewhere in the six hundreds, and that's based at a, uh, eleven hundred dollars a foot price, which is, which is higher than, than anything that's listed right now. Everything's based at like nine fifty to a thousand bucks a foot. So we, we even, we even went a little higher, so nobody could say that we're trying to put the books or whatever. But, but I think this is a good thing for the city. I think it's not a bad thing. Um, I think first-time buyers need a chance to get into this community, and there is no chance. And this would be the perfect time for, for somebody to get into the city at a, a, a reasonable rate. And with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Andy, and he can, uh, present the rest of our.
Thank you, Ron. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor and the city council. It's nice to be with you guys at eleven forty-five at night. I did not expect us to go this late. Uh, I'm gonna enjoy waking up with my kid in the morning, and thanks everyone for their disclosures. Um, uh, Councilmember Collins did also not disclose that he was my baseball coach when I was seven, so I wanna make sure that that gets out there. I batted last, so there's still some hard feelings there. Um, but basically, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Andy Klein, and the Director of Property Management at Sequoia Realty Services. I also was raised in San Carlos, served on the General Plan Committee, and was elected to the city council. So I know a bit about the housing policies here in San Carlos. Um, I have no financial interest in this condo conversion before you, and I'm working for Mr. Grove pro bono. Um, it's also technically against my best interest to convert rentals into condos, as I'm in the rental business, not the sale business. So the less rentals there are, the less we make. Um, but that's besides the point. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the staff findings regarding the condo conversion at nine seventy-seven Laurel Street. My role tonight is to go over these findings and to show you why we believe that this application should be approved by the city council. Okay. There we go. Um, staff has made three findings. Oh, I gotta go backwards, sorry. Uh, there we go. Staff has made three findings that have led to the recommended denial of this project. In their staff report, they pretty much stated that the first two could possibly not be correct. Uh, so we'll go over those quickly, and then we'll spend the rest of the time focusing on the third. The first finding is the staff, um, is not support, not supportive of changing the BMR unit from a for-rent to a for-sale unit. That is completely acceptable to the applicant. When we actually met with staff, we told them we were willing to do whatever they wanted, but they had us, uh, give our opinion, and we of course said for sale, it was cleaner. But we've said here and at the planning commission that we are happy to keep it as a, a BMR for rental units. This has actually been done before at, I believe it's five thirty or five twenty El Camino Real, the San Carlos condominiums. Their BMR unit is for rent in a completely for-sale condominium development. So we're happy to do that as well. The second finding is the vacancy rate of three point one percent does not support conversion, and that is, and that the current rental economy is temporary. In the staff reports, the city staff says that a vacancy rate of five percent is currently plausible. The city report states three point one percent, but that report's from two thousand and eighteen, and obviously a lot has happened since then. Um, we believe that the vacancy rate is above five percent, and anyone who reads any of the studies or the newspaper, or even drives around town and sees all the four-leaf signs, knows that that's probably correct. This is the worst multifamily market in the Bay Area since the nineteen seventies. So we truly believe that the vacancy rate is significantly higher than five percent, probably hovering somewhere around eight to ten percent. Staff also has stated that this, uh, economy is temporary. No one really knows that. No one knows what the future holds. We know this economy will take a while to pull out of. There could be more setbacks, and the bounce back could take years. Um, to say that this economy is temporary, I think is, is a little premature. Uh, but we are seeing that government agencies are reacting to this economy like it will last for a while. City councils on the peninsula are beginning to argue that their RIN numbers don't need to be as high because there's a lack of demand of housing. The county is looking at lowering property taxes, taxes on investment properties. So only San Carlos is really saying that this is over in June fifteenth. Um, the multifamily market's just not gonna bounce back until we get full office capacity again. The office market drives the multifamily market, and with many companies moving out of the area, or allowing all or some of their staff to work from home forever, we may not get back to where we were for a very long time. Uh, more importantly, the code does not say how long the vacancy rate needs to last, as Lisa Gossisanders said. It doesn't say if it's a day, a quarter, four quarters, or four years. It just says it has to be above five percent, which we believe it is. Finally, the last finding is whether this condo conversion is in the best interest of the community. The code says that the city council shall consider the following factors. One, the impact of proposed residential conversion on the existing apartment housing supply. We believe the impact would be negligible. The amount of units we are talking about amounts to two tenths of one percent of the rental supply in San Carlos. Also, none of them outside of the BMR unit are considered affordable. The medium cost of an apartment in San Carlos is twenty-one hundred per the city report. This means that the lowest-priced unit at nine seventy-seven Laurel is fifty percent more expensive than the median apartment cost. This is just the least expensive. They go up to double and quadruple that amount of the median apartment unit pricing. These are luxury apartments. These are not affordable. Uh, the city council, number two, the city council shall consider the ratio of the number of residential condominium units available to the number of apartment units available. There are currently twenty-five available residential sales in the city of San Carlos. None of them cheaper than nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, most falling in the range of two million or more. There are over a hundred and fifty apartment units available in the city currently. That is a minimum ratio of one for-sale unit for every five apartments. Three, the city council shall consider the affordability level of both rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community. These are seven luxury apartments and a BMR unit. All seven of the apartments, again, range from fifty percent more than the median price of an apartment up to four times as much. The housing element calls for more affordable housing, not more luxury apartments. However, if they are converted to for-sale condos, six of the seven would be below the median price of a home in San Carlos. If you look at the chart before you, the blue properties are what is currently for sale in San Carlos on Zillow today. The red ones are where the nine seventy-seven Laurel units will fall in pricing. This is based on eleven hundred per square foot, which is comparable to other downtown condos. Six of the seven units would fall beneath the median home price of one point nine five million. Three of the units would be under nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. These three units would be the most affordable units on the market today, and this is really the crux of the issue. Does the council think that seven luxury apartments are more important than six units for sale beneath the median income, with three being opportunities for first-time home buyers to buy into the community? I think the answer is no. When all four of you ran for council, all of you said how important it was for your children to be able to afford to live in the town. With prices continuing to skyrocket, it is important for the community to bring varying types of for-sale products to the market. The units under a million dollars will be the missing middle housing that San Carlos is just not providing. There's almost no opportunity to buy into this community for less than a million dollars. This gives some people that option. This next slide shows the apartments proposed since two thousand and seven by private developers. The reason I show this is the city staff has said approval of this condominium conversion may open the floodgates for other condo conversions. This is simply not correct. In order to do a condo conversion, you have to comply with current building code, fire code, and ADA requirements. With only fifty-three units being proposed, proposed by private developers and only forty or so being built, these are the units that could be condo converted. Most won't because they're one-offs or in very small buildings that, that have significant challenges. But the tidal wave of condo conversions that everyone is worried about won't happen. The rest of the rental housing stock is in town, it's too old to condo convert without spending millions on the conversion, if you could even do it at all. This slide also shows a lost generation of residential units. City staff has said that we need to build more units to make them more affordable. That's true, but not entirely correct. If you build hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of luxury units, you're just gonna end up with a lot of luxury units like Redwood City. The creation of all the gray star buildings, indigo, et cetera, has not brought in the prices down of those. What brings the prices down is building Class A apartments and letting them age fifteen or twenty years. If you see from this slide, we never did that. So we lost a whole generation there that we can't build now. I also put this stat to show how few private developers are actually building apartments in San Carlos. Mr. Grove is the largest developer of apartments in town. But this table shows that something is wrong. San Carlos zoning code and its housing policy does not allow for the creation of apartments. The restrictions on housing and massing make it only plausible to create luxury units, as that is all that will pencil out. San Carlos just had two hundred and two luxury apartments brought online not too long ago with the Trestle Apartments. Those range from the mid-three thousands to the mid-five thousands. San Carlos is also great at creating luxury condos. Between Wheeler Plaza and ViiV's development on Cherry, there are over a hundred and forty luxury condos that just came online or will soon be online. All these currently on the market for one point three million or more. So there are two products that San Carlos is not creating: affordable apartments and affordable condos/middle housing. While San Carlos officials say they want to create affordable rental housing, the housing policy of the community says it doesn't. This is a problem, and we hope that the San Carlos City Council will make some significant changes during its next housing update to address this. Developers are like everyone else. If there's money to be made, they will find a way. Fifty-three units proposed in fourteen years says there is no way in San Carlos. We want to build and provide rental housing in San Carlos. That's the building we are in. When the city comes up with policies that allow this, we will be the first in line. But for now, we can only offer another form of housing that is not being provided, and that is affordable condos. In conclusion, um, this project meets all the requirements for approval, and there should be, therefore should be approved by the San Carlos City Council. We have agreed to keep the BMR unit a rental. We have shown the vacancy rate is well over five percent. And we've also demonstrated how this conversion is in the best interest of the community. We are providing an opportunity for six units to come on the market at well below the median housing price of one point nine five million, and three of those units will be priced under one million dollars. This is important and much-needed housing to provide for a city that wants to be inclusive. And on a personal note, I grew up in town. I can't tell you how many friends I've watched move away because they can't afford to live in town anymore. There are more people I went to high school with who live in Sacramento area than live back here. We're losing everyone because no one can afford to, to buy here. So there needs to be some significant changes. This isn't a big change. This is, we're only talking about three to six units, but we have to start somewhere. The only way we build our way out of this problem is brick by brick, and this is one step. So we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions from council? Uh, Councilmember Collins, followed by Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Andy, when we talked last week, you said that, uh, the lowest units would sell for, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you said something around five or six hundred thousand. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, the lowest unit would be in the six hundred thousands, and then the next two would be high eights, low nines.
So we're talking about, I, I, my problem here is you've described these as luxury apartments.
Yeah.
How do luxury apartments suddenly become the lowest-priced condos in town? I mean, at five hundred thousand, I'll put a bid in.
Well, it's gonna be six hundred thousand, but, uh, that's easy. Um, that's easy, Ron, as a council member. Um. So these were built as apartments, so they weren't built with the finishes and the size that the condos at Wheeler Plaza, or ViiV, or everyone else are being built with. So they're naturally more affordable due to, um, quality and size. That's why. I mean, real estate always comes down to size until you get to single-family homes, when you can talk about yards and potential and stuff like that. But with condos, it comes down to size and quality. These were built as apartments. They weren't built as condos, so they're a little bit lower of a quality. They weren't built to the high level of Wheeler Plaza, and they're smaller.
But don't you think that if a, if a condo is priced at five fifty, six hundred thousand, that there's gonna be a high demand for it, and therefore it might push the price up?
Even if you pushed it to twelve hundred dollars a square feet, it still would be the cheapest one in the, in the market. At the end of the day, people are only gonna pay what a property is worth. Um, but you're not gonna pay that and like, you're never gonna hit a million dollars on a property that size, never. Um, one, if you took a loan, no bank would appraise it, but two, the appreciation you would have to get over decades to make that pencil out is, is just crazy. The market always finds the, the proper pricing, but eleven hundred dollars is comparable to everyone else, even if it goes another hundred dollars a square foot, which is a huge increase, it's still the cheapest one on the market. The condo that's priced at nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand currently is nine hundred dollars and change per square foot. It's not even a thousand dollars.
What's the mortgage payment on a nine hundred thousand dollar mortgage?
Well, I was, I would hope they would put something down. Um, but on like, uh, a seven hundred thousand dollars, say they put, you know, whatever, you're looking at in between four to uh, five thousand dollars.
Four to five thousand dollars a month?
Yeah, depending on their down payment.
For a seven hundred thousand dollar mortgage? Okay. Thanks.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess this is more of a question for staff. And the applicant on, uh, slide nine kind of discussed, uh, the rental housing units proposed since twenty-seven, actually since two thousand and seven. Um, there was some concern in the staff report about the floodgates opening to more condo conversions. Given this data, what, what, I'm not sure where, where that, those floodgates, you know, how that would, how, how might, that might come to be?
Sure, so I can answer that briefly, and then I think Al may wanna expand on it. Um, so the, this staff report had an attachment that showed, um, projects that have been built since two thousand, excuse me, approved since two thousand and fifteen, and it compared the, um, ownership to the apartments. If you just look at that list, we know that twelve five seven Magnolia, which is also, um, a development owned by this, um, applicant, they're interested in applying a condo map to those. It's not a conversion because it hasn't been, um, built yet. So that would be one. And then we've spoken with at least two other individuals that are tracking this process and interested in filing a condominium conversion request if this approval is made. Um, we also had a meeting with a code expert to talk about kind of what's that sweet spot, what year a project would have been built in to um, kind of feasibly be converted to condos without, you know, too much work on the, the structural and, you know, the other aspects of it. And it, it really definitely varies. Um, the newer the unit, the easier it's gonna be to convert. The, the older unit's a little more difficult, but he certainly said, you know, it's not impossible. Um, the building code talks about structurally bringing it up to existing standards to the maximum feasible, and you don't have to meet it all the way to current code requirements. Um, and then there's other license safety factors. So given, you know, how profitable the for-sale market is today, um, it, it could be that somebody may wanna throw a million dollars at it to get that return on that sale price. Um, so it's really kind of hard to tell you how many units could convert, but we know at least, um, two other developments were quite interested.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Lisa, can I just follow up on that? Cause I, I wanna look at the, so you, you mentioned some of the units. So the nine on Magnolia is not a conversion, right? It's just, it's not approved, so we're not, that's sort of not, that sort of should be looked at differently. But you mentioned, um, two other potential projects. Can you, and maybe you can't share the specifics around it, but can you tell me, um, you sort of where they might fall in the aging group? Are they in that, in what's in the staff report? Are they back to two thousand and seven? I mean, can you give me a, because if we're looking at, I'm just trying to understand the balance of, uh, you know, if stuff's built before two thousand and seven, how realistic is it that people are looking at this? Versus, are they some of the newer ones that we're, that you're mentioning that are maybe two thousand and fifteen or something, or, you know, could uh, just trying to understand where those might fall in the process?
Yeah, so the, the one on the Magnolia that we just mentioned, the one that could be, um, considered with a map because it has not yet been constructed, but the project was approved. So just to clarify that. Um, and then the other two were built, you know, sometime early two thousand. We don't have the exact construction. And then the other two were built, you know, sometime early two thousand. We don't have the exact construction date, and I don't have the addresses. Another staff member spoke to those interested developers. But as I indicated, we did talk to a code expert. And he could not pin a date of construction to have the likelihood of being easily converted. So it's really going to depend on each development and how it was constructed.
Okay, I understand. Got it. Thank you.
So I'll go next. So I'm not quite sure how to answer this question, but Andy, you'd mentioned a couple of times that you take exception with kind of the, you know, predictions of staff and the future economy, yet I heard you very clearly say that you believe that the lowest price units would never go above a certain amount, which is also a prediction of what might happen in the future. And I guess my question for you, are you, the developer willing, are you, you know, when it comes to BMR units, right? There's covenants that are placed on them to make sure that they're actually BMR units, and I'm hearing a presentation about these lower and smaller units as quasi-BMR units, and that they, and they fit into that category. But there's no covenants that come with them. So can you explain to me how, you know, are you making an assurance or that these units will be only be paid for a certain amount of money, that you'll put a price cap on them? And is that, is that what I'm understanding, or is it going to be sold on the open market with highest bidder offer taken?
Well, I mean, we would definitely sell it on the open market, but our assumption on pricing is based on comparable and historical sales. It's not like saying the economy is going to get better when we don't know when this disease is going away. We don't know if there's a variant coming out. But it's based on comparable sales, and you can see that on any MLS report or Zillow, what units are priced at. Condos tend not to go for the mass amounts over asking that single family homes do, because again, it's a box. There's no intangibles, like a large yard or street appearance, you know, things like that. But the ability to build an ADU, you get what you get with a condo. And if you look at the historical data, they're not really going much above asking rate. There isn't, there isn't that kind of, there's a large demand, of course, for affordable units, but it's not the way it is with single family homes. So we based it off of basic math, but also what the historical data up until yesterday of what's going on in San Carlos real estate.
Okay. And then you've spent a lot of time talking about the rental, the vacancy rate. And when I, so I, my background, I, you know, work in the scientific community that's data driven, and I saw a report that showed a listing of apartment buildings, and they all had a vacancy rate, but I didn't see any methodology that accompanied that report. Can you talk to us about the process that was taken to try to get at a number that was specific to San Carlos?
Yeah, basically, and like Adam said, Adam, the housing director, vacancy rates are very tough, especially for small communities. So, and especially because a lot of this information is not publicly available. So you have to cast as wide a net as possible, and we did that by calling major property management companies who service the town. We did that by going on Craigslist and Zillow and other places and really putting as wide of a net out there. We asked if a, if a methodology needed to be followed, we asked city staff that. We never unfortunately received a report because we would have just matched whatever they required of us. We also asked, hey, do we need, you know, what number of apartments do you need us to survey? We didn't get a response to that. So we just kind of cast a net to capture as much as we could, and we got to the point where like, this is just obvious that the vacancy rate is above five percent.
Okay, so no consideration was given to trying to set up a study in such a way as to ensure that it was kind of, I don't know what the word would be, but like, you know, the word is escaping me. I apologize. It's late. So I'll yield to yes, thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, and to answer that question, well, the one thing we made sure to do is we caught, we grabbed a cross section of the community. We, if you go down that list, those properties are sixty years to brand new. We caught a cross section of the, of the multifamily market in San Carlos. We wanted to make sure that that really reflected the housing stock in the community. And I know Mr. Collins said maybe it's not reliable. It's definitely more reliable than a study done in two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, I don't think I heard, I don't know if you know the number, but any idea of how many condos are for sale today in San Carlos? How many are on the market? Do we keep track of that?
The city does not.
We don't. You have an idea, Andy?
You have twenty-five residential units available on Zillow, and about half of those are condos. You're also, you're also pre-selling condos in the Vii building, but that's a little different.
Say that, pre what?
Pre-selling condos in
Pre-selling?
Yeah, so it's a little, it's more than that, but it's of units you could move into. It's about twelve or thirteen.
Okay, so twelve to thirteen right now condos for sale in San Carlos.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how that compares to last year or the year before?
It's less. The, the demand for housing has grown because there's just less and less on the market. The, the market keeps getting smaller and smaller. I mean, we should have significantly more units on the market, all types than we do. We have nine units in town that are, I think, three million and up. That's never happened before, where that end is the one carrying the load. So it's significantly less than it should be or has been historically.
Right. I'm actually just talking about condos. So there aren't any three million dollar condos, are there?
No, no.
Okay.
Love to see, but I've never seen one before. I imagine that would be pretty amazing.
Yeah, all right. Mel, you had mentioned something before, I think, when I asked you. The, we, about the demand for affordable housing, it's, what do we have, two thousand people or something on our, on our waiting list?
I believe it's now up to three thousand.
So three thousand people on our waiting list. And do we measure, I don't even know if we can measure what the demand is for market rate rentals? Do we even keep track of that?
Adam Aronson? Maybe Adam can answer that question.
For, are you asking for market rate rentals? Or are you asking for demand?
Yeah, I mean, for any, all kinds of rental housing. Include, I mean, we know, we know how many people are on our waiting list for affordable housing in San Carlos. But if we expanded that to all, you know, what the demand was for all rental housing, does anybody keep statistics on that?
I mean, there's general market survey reports that would keep track of that, but I don't have an exact number of how many people are searching for market rate housing in San Carlos.
Yeah. Andy, I mean, that's your business.
Yeah, it's the vacancy rate. If the vacancy rate goes up, it means there's less people looking for housing. So right now, there's a ton of market raised housing on the market sitting and not getting rented, which implies that there's, there's less people looking for market rate housing than there are available units. It's just the vacancy rate. That's why the vacancy rate is so important. A three percent vacancy rate indicates full housing. That, you know, you, you're always going to have turnover. That's just the name of the game. People are going to move for reasons that are non-economic or for reasons that aren't controllable, you know, get married, need a bigger place, et cetera. But when the vacancy rate goes above five percent, it indicates that the market is soft, and there are more units than people looking for units.
Okay, thank you.
And that's actually from your housing, your draft housing update.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any additional questions from council. So Crystal, are there people in the members of the public who want to comment on this?
Yes, we do have two with their hands raised. The first one's going to be Frank. You should be able to unmute. Oh, now we have three. Frank?
Yeah, let me see if I'm on yet.
Yes.
I was really surprised. I watch all of the planning meetings and all the city council meetings, and I was surprised at the presentation and the responses of the people who called in on the conversion of the nine seven seven unit. And they were all, there were like fifteen or twenty comments. Nineteen were positive. One was negative. And among the positive were the people who were living in nine seventeen, nine seventy-seven. And, you know, I, the thing that gets me is rentals, if you're in a rental now and you've got a good rate, guess what's going to happen when the economy gets good? It's going to get jacked up. But if you have a, and the, the economy gets better, your value of your house gets better. Your mortgage doesn't get better. You know, it's a lot of false thinking about this. I, you know, I only owned, I only rented a house at the very beginning of, of my single getting married kind of time. Within a year, I was buying a house. And I bought houses all over the country since then. And I bought this house, this condo, I'm in one thousand and one Laurel, right, like right across the street from nine seven seven. And I bought this in oh eight for six, six hundred and sixty-six. Today, it sells for one point three million. So that, you know, it's all this stuff about, you know, it's, you know, it's going to cost too much for these people to buy a condo. It's going to cost them a lot more when, when their rent goes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. We have three more speakers. Next one is Olin Palmer, followed by Greg Garcia.
Hey, Frank, congratulations on buying in oh eight when the market was at its lowest. You are very lucky. I had a question for Lisa about slide fourteen and her presentation on rents. And it seemed that the values presented were way below market. And so I'm curious where those came from, and I can take my answer off the air.
Thank you, Olin.
Thank you, Olin. Next is Greg Garcia, followed by J D Anagsto.
Yes, this is Greg Garcia, and I've been helping Ron grow, lease these properties since they were put, since they were completed a couple of years ago. Ever since then, I've had people come in that really want to see about buying them. Unfortunately, you know, we can't as condos. And again, this is going to give people an opportunity to kind of get in a lower level price-wise. The reason why the, the cost will be less, it's based on square footage. I mean, they're smaller units. Currently in San Carlos, there's eleven active properties that are on the market right now. Square footage wise, ranging from about a thousand forty up to fifteen hundred square feet, starting at nine seventy-five and going up to a million six seventy-eight. So again, the units we have over there, one's, you know, over six hundred square feet, the others are about eight oh two on the one bedrooms. So that's where your square foot cost is going to come into play, and these properties are going to be a bit cheaper when they go to market. You know, I just don't see, you know, the rationale of taking luxury apartments off the rental pool and bringing the for sale units when there's such a high demand for those right now. It just makes sense to me to go that route. I really think council needs to look at, you know, making it feasible for builders to even build apartments in San Carlos, because right now, you know, the way, the way you guys are running it there, it just, it just doesn't make sense. So with that being said, I'd like to see this condo conversion go through.
Thank you, Greg. Crystal, is there anybody else?
Yes, we do have one more speaker, J D Anagsto. You should be able to unmute.
Anagostu, close. That's good. My college professors even butchered it quite, it really truly was unpronounceable, but it's Anagostu is my name. My name's J D Anagostu, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in this late, late hour. My family owned two Class C mom and pop apartment buildings. We've been landlords since nineteen seventy-one. We've had bad tenants and good tenants, tenants for a year to having tenants for over twenty-five years. My point is that the conversations with our tenants over the years, most, if they had the option, would love to buy the unit they rent. I believe most tenants want to become owners of real estate. It provides, like many, the American dream in all of its forms. It provides equity and growth economically. It provides tax deductions. Ownership is more stable, long-term. Affordable ownership is just that much better. It provides hope that owning in San Carlos in a city of good living is possible. Yes, certainly expensive in comparison to Sacramento, but this is San Carlos. It is not Sacramento. The average sales price for the average home in San Carlos is two million dollars. Certainly much less affordable compared to these units. And just so you know, the cost of land to build these small scale apartments is approaching five hundred dollars per front door. That's one of the issues is the land cost of, of purchasing, let alone the cost of building. Four, another point. You, the leaders of the city of good living, should provide relatively affordable housing. There are many that need it. Think of the property taxes that this would generate, that helps schools, the fire department, et cetera. The city has plenty of high-end rental stock within their boundaries. Let's be honest, these seven, yes, seven market rate units do not impact high-end rental housing in this city whatsoever.
J D, I'm going to need to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up real quick. As you can tell with your downtown conversation earlier this evening, you could tell that COVID is still impacting the way people think and the way people
I need you to wrap this up, please.
I think the owner should have the option to convert.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, J D. Madam Mayor, I do see, I do see that Olin Palmer has raised his hand again.
Yeah, we need, we need to extend the meeting, Crystal, so
I'd move to extend the meeting till one AM.
Second.
Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
I'm here.
Oh, sorry, recused, yes. Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
Thank you. So it looks like Olin Palmer is raising his hand again for a second go-round to speak. Sorry, I defer to you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think we've, I believe he'd had his, his option for two minutes, so he did ask a question. I don't know, Lisa, if you recall the question, if maybe you could just answer that briefly.
The information is from the MIG report, and that's the consultant that's assisting us with the housing element update. We also have it posted on our website if you would like to take a look at that from August twenty twenty as the median home price in the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any additional community members wanting to make comment, Crystal?
No, that is it.
Okay, all right. So I think we now need to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes. All right. So now we'll move to council comment and discussion. Who'd like to start? Well, I can start. Oh, Adam, if you'd like to start.
I will defer to you, Mayor.
All right. So I, I think, you know, I want to acknowledge, you know, the situation that the developer is in and their contributions to the community in developing housing. I also appreciate their, their interest and willingness to preserve a BMR rental unit and honor the, the, you know, the agreement. From my perspective, you know, when I look at this, you know, the property initially was purchased. Well, let me back up a little bit and just say, I think there was many good arguments and assertions made about our housing policy today. I think there were some good concepts and thought provoking Um, I think there were some good concepts and thought-provoking ideas. Uh, what I believe I'm looking at today is the housing policy as it currently stands. Um, and making an evaluation, um, uh, against that current criteria. Um, I, I reject the notion that, uh, the city is responsible for telling an applicant how to put together, um, a, 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 you know, a, a study with respect, respect to vacancy. Um, I think there's lots of examples of how to put together a quantitative data set out in the world, and I don't know necessarily that that's the responsibility of a city council to be that prescriptive. Um, and I look at these policies as, um, kind of, uh, more values-based than, uh, clearly and purely metric-driven. And I think the context of the current, you know, situation, um, you know, clearly needs to be taken into account. Um, I watched, um, very carefully the planning commission meeting. Uh, I studied the packet. Um, I've given a lot of thought to this. And, um, I look at the facts as, uh, the following, you know, the property was purchased with full knowledge that it was an apartment building. Um, it's now a Class A luxury apartment building. Um, uh, the, the request was made for condo conversion because it sounds like there's, you know, obviously a downturn in the market and a wish to re- regain the cost, and I certainly absolutely appreciate that. Um, when I look at, um, you know, the, the other criteria besides the vacancy rates, um, uh, what I see is that our, you know, our inventory for rental apartments will be further reduced. And I, I think staff gave a good, um, articulation of the future pipeline of potential projects that could be converted, uh, from apartments to condos, uh, should we move forward with this request and overturn the, uh, denial from planning commission. Uh, so clearly there's a, a pipe, but pipeline and a, and a demand for that. Um, when I look at, um, you know, new construction, many new condos have entered the market, and as I understand it, it took a while for many of those to sell. Uh, with respect to affordability, um, twenty-eight percent of households in San Carlos are overpaying, and I would gather to, uh, venture to guess that that, that's probably a lot higher. Uh, when we look at lower income housing, uh, lower income households, uh, fully two-thirds of them are overpaying for housing in our community. There's three thousand people on the waitlist now, and that has gone up, uh, exponentially since when I was first, um, elected to, to the seat. Um, the promise that the units, um, will fall at below-market rates, I, I, I appreciate, uh, Andy's, uh, perspective on that. But again, without any assurances or covenants, there's no way to guarantee that those, uh, units will actually, um, go at that level. Um, I absolutely understand and appreciate the challenges the pandemic has, has had on, uh, the business and the long road it was to get to this particular hearing this evening. Um, I, you know, invite the challenge to make improvements to our housing policy, but that's not what's in question tonight. And, uh, you know, I look forward to future conversations on that because we do have a separate program. Uh, but I am, um, uh, you know, my, my interest tonight is to, uh, uphold, uh, the decision rendered by the planning commission. I thought they did a thorough and thoughtful job. And I thought that the data presented by staff, uh, was clear and presented a compelling argument to, uh, stay with, uh, these as apartments for, for the time being. Councilmember Collins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I struggled with this more than I thought I would. Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, both Ron and Andy for the time they took to explain everything to me on Thursday. Um, this is, you know, uh, let's face it, our, our housing situation around here is just so less than ideal. I don't want to say it's a mess, but it's, it's not good. Um, and we don't have enough housing for people who are at the lower income end. Um, we've got a pandemic going on. There's so many negative, uh, impacts or influences that are affecting jobs and housing right now, more so than there were a year ago, or five years ago, or even ten years ago when I started on the council. Um, and as I explained to them on Friday, I said that, or on Thursday, I said, my feeling that was that the primary problem here was that of optics, in that we have so few rental units on the market, and here we are reducing them. Um, I'm, I've moved off that a little bit, but then we get to the question of timing. Um, there was a discussion, um, at the planning commission about, uh, the fact that this might be, uh, uh, more acceptable a year from now, or two years from now, when under a normal, under a normal economy, when there are more opportunities. So, uh, that's another issue that I, that I struggle with. Um, but the reason I asked the question about the condos is that, you know, not only do we have several condos for sale, but we just approved, uh, a project of what, twenty-seven, twenty-eight condos on Walnut? Um, we've got thirty condos, I think, at the corner of Cherry and Chestnut, so that's what, fifty condos. We're, we're about to have, you know, a, a fair amount more of condos coming on the market. Um, Mr. Grove has said he's going to build twelve more. Uh, so, I don't want to say we're going to have a glut of condos, but we're just going to have a ton of condos coming on the market. And I'm not sure that we're, that we're, we're, we're looking at this, uh, too myopically. Um, I, I think maybe we need to take a little bit of a longer view. This pandemic is, um, I think it's changed everybody's thinking, and it's, and we have to, and we have to keep in mind that it's not going to last forever. Um, the, the job market will return, the, the demand for rental and condos and houses will come back. But I also worry that, um, we're, we're, we're kind of making, we're making it easier for the state to say to us, you see, you're not creating more rental housing. You know, the state has said, you need to, you need to create more housing. We have these reindeer numbers. Now, I will admit that they're talking about, mostly about affordable, uh, housing and affordable rentals. And I also agree that building small rental units doesn't really pencil out. So that comes back to housing policy, and it's not Ron's fault that, um, you know, that we're dealing with this reality, and it's not his fault that our housing policy is the way it is. But it is what it is, and we have to, we have to look at it, uh, as it exists, and we also have to start planning on how to change it and provide for larger projects to be built that will be of, uh, affordable at moderate levels or even at, at market rate levels. So, to me, there's just too many unknowns right now. Um, I was really close, really close to being on the fence with this, but, um, uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm just troubled by all the uncertainties. And, and I think if, if this were coming to us in a different environment, I might be, I might be more sympathetic, but right now, I just, I just can't, um, I can't bring myself to, you know, as Ellen Garvey said, she said, I don't know how she can justify reducing rentals when we have so few now. And it's, you know, again, that's not Ron's fault, it's not Andy's fault. It just is the reality. Um, but that's the perception of the public and the public system. You know, you're, we can't find a place to, to rent and you're taking more out. They're not seeing the affordability level. They're just seeing the level of, 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 uh, rentable properties, and that's what's, and that's what's really troubling. And it's, and quite frankly, it's embarrassing that we haven't done more. Uh, we should have done more, been trying to do more, and it's been very frustrating for me all the time I've been on the council. But this should be instructive to all of us that we really need to change how we do things. Um, now that we're looking at that housing policy, we're looking at the housing element, we really need to create an environment where it is attractive for builders to come in and build more rental units. So, sorry to be so long-winded, um, but like I said, it's just, given all the uncertainties and everything that I've seen, it's really difficult to, uh, support the appeal.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Uh, Councilmember Rack?
Thank you. I, I think Councilmember Collins wants me to have to extend the meeting again. That's why he was talking for so long. But, um, I appreciate the, uh, all the comments and the thoughts around this, and, you know, I, I think for me, one of the most frustrating things about this is, I, I feel we have talked about changing the housing policy for two years now, and it just doesn't seem to happen. And I, I just continue to get frustrated and frustrated that we're not making those changes. Changes to density, changes to BMR rules, other things that we've talked about and try to prioritize, and so, um, yeah, I, I'm just disappointed that we haven't gotten there at this point yet, that we're, we're talking about having to live with certain, the same policy that we've had, because I feel like we have talked about prioritizing, making this a priority to, to encourage more, uh, development, more housing, more density, and, and other things. And I feel like we have fallen down on the job in terms of doing that. So, um, I will start with that. And sort of added to that, I, I, I would, um, I, I think the vacancy rate is met because I know if we deal with other old studies, I don't feel like it's, uh, it doesn't deal with today's reality, and we don't know how long it's going to be till we get out of this market and how that changes. And that, to me, is the trigger that allows this process to move forward, at least to have this process to want a condo convert. And I don't think that, you know, given that, I, I, I'm not worried about a glut of condo conversions at this point, uh, coming through, because I, I do, you know, we, we don't have that many units that, you know, from my sense and my understanding from hearing both from Lisa and from Andy about the, they're, they're potentially challenging to, to get done, uh, if they're not newer units. Um, and, and I think that we're, we sort of get into very arbitrary discussion about what, whether on optics or whether what's the, you know, whether the impact on the, on the market. And, and we don't have any thresholds, don't have any percentages in places, as Vice Mayor McDowell mentioned. So, I think it's, it's, we really need to look at this policy and try to fix this sooner than later. Um, but from my viewpoint, and because I, I feel like it is covering what we have, uh, based on the policy, I, I, I think we should support this appeal. I think that the, um, the thresholds can be met and are met, and, um, yeah, I think it's just disappointing that we're in this situation, given sort of, we, we haven't done our job, uh, and getting the policy fixed. I think that, given today's criteria, it's, um, since there are no hard, specific numbers, um, I, I think that we're not impacting the market to any substantial amount. Uh, I think these are luxury co- luxury apartments, and potentially there's more affordability coming in there. And I would say I, I would caveat that I'm only supportive of the appeal if we keep the BMR unit as a rental.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for your comments, and I appreciated all of the presentations. I think this is a very complicated issue. Um, like Laura, I watched the planning commission meeting as well. You guys know I watch all of them. I'm kind of a planning commission junkie. I like those. Um, but I know that the commissioners did a great job wrestling with some really difficult, um, questions. And I think that the finding on the BMR unit remaining a rental and the vacancy rate being higher than five percent are plausible and are met, as Adam said. Um, I guess what I'm struggling with is the finding about what is in the best interest of the community, because that's such a subjective. I think that's just tripping us up because it's so subjective, and as Adam said, um, there's not a lot of data to back it up. Um, under that, that finding, um, there are a few factors to consider. One is the ratio of the number of residential condo units available to the number of apartment units available. And as staff said, there's no data to that, and we have given no direction on what kind of ratio we're looking for, and that is not in our current policy. Another factor is the affordability level of rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community. And in this specific case that is before us tonight, we are asked to weigh luxury apartment units renting at amounts fifty to four hundred percent higher than the median rental amount in San Carlos versus homeownership that's on the lower end of the market that could meet a need for the missing middle, which are people who make too much to qualify for affordable housing programs, but don't make enough to buy a two million dollar single-family home. If we are being asked to look at affordability levels and the needs of the community, it is hard for me to say that luxury apartment rentals are more important than affordable homeownership opportunities. Taking the BMR unit out of the equation, this is not an affordable housing project by any stretch of the imagination. It is also noted in the staff report that the housing element update may result in new policies relating to the preservation of rental housing, which is great. We should create those policies, but I find it hard to base a decision tonight on a housing policy update that has not yet been written. We do need to examine our policies and dig deeper into the existing housing supply to differentiate between older, naturally affordable units and newer luxury apartments. And then as a council, I really think we need to talk about options to preserve some of these older, naturally affordable units. So given the ambiguity in our current code and the policies that still need to be written, I find it hard to uphold the planning commission's ruling. I think after tonight, I would suggest that we put any future condo conversions on hold until we can make our quote, our code more straightforward with standards for vacancy rate studies so that we, so applicants know what we're looking for, and with ratios that reflect data on residential condos versus apartment units. Transparency, process, standards, guidelines, these are all topics that we have discussed as a council. With the lack of clear standards in our code on this specific topic, it's hard to see that this process has been especially smooth or standardized to follow. So I think our code on condo conversions needs some updating before we consider more. But I will agree with Adam, and, um, I, I would find in favor of the appeal.
Okay, um, all right, well, that, I guess, concludes our council of comments and discussions. It's, uh, all entertaining motion.
Sorry, I can't find it.
I got it. Uh, I move to uphold the, uh, planning commission's decision to deny the appeal, uh, Ronald Grove, and uphold planning commission denial, the condominium conversion and below-market rate housing plan amendment at nine seventy-seven Laurel.
Is there a second? All right, is there an alternative motion?
Trying to figure out how to word it. Hold on. Uh, I don't know how to, how do I opposite word it? I don't know. I move to, uh,
Deny?
Did not, uh, overturn the planning commission's decision?
Yeah, there you go. That's it.
You would, you would, you would actually be, um, upholding the, the appeal, but, um, you may want to put conditions on that upholding of the appeal, if, if that's the motion you want to make.
I move to uphold the appeal of Ronald Grove. Um, let's see. And then the below-market rate housing plan amendment at nine seven seven Laurel includes the BMR unit remaining a rental? I assume, Greg, that that covers that part?
Yes, I would just ask that you, um, include that, um, it's subject to the approval by the city attorney's office, that's the form of the, of the restriction.
Okay, subject to the approval of the city attorney's office.
Second.
All right, Crystal, can you call the roll? Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
No.
Councilmember Dugan is recused, and Mayor Parmalohan? No.
So the case law, um, on when the council, um, effectively deadlocks or a two-two vote is that no action's been taken. Um, I believe that means, um, that, um, you have the council as, um, two, two potential, um, outcomes come from a tie vote. One is that by operation of law, the planning commission's decision stands because the council was not able to make a decision on the appeal. The council also has the option, if, if it needs more information, The council also has the option, if, if it needs more information, it can continue this item. To ask and ask the staff to provide it with more information to, in order to. See if, if the council can make the required findings. To either uphold the appeal or to deny the appeal.
Do you need that in the form of an, of a motion, Greg?
If, if the idea, if the council, if the council takes no further action, I think that, although this is. I'll have to tell you that this is, I think, the first time I've ever had a tie-tie vote on an appeal at the council level. So, but I, I think what, I'm looking at a case right now that indicates that the, that the council, by not taking an action. The, the lower body's decision may stand, although I would like to look into that a little bit more to make sure that I have that right. And, but if the council wants to gather some more information, then you'd want to make a motion to continue. And then the, the action, just to make sure that I can give you the proper advice is that. Since it's a tie-tie vote, I can come back with findings and an opinion for you at the next meeting with either government.
Okay, Vice Mayor McDowell has her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, in the spirit of finding more information. Would it be possible for us to ask staff to try and meet with the appellate one more time to see if there's a way forward?
Are you asking if that would qualify as asking for more information?
Yes. I don't even know if that would be of interest to the appellate or to staff, but.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I guess we'd look for some information from Greg here because I'm, I'm not sure that the staff really has much of a role to play since this is a. Appeal of a planning commission decision. You know, we wouldn't be able to work out a compromise to what's already been voted on by the planning commission.
No, that, yeah, that's, you're, you're right, Jeff. What, what the issue is, is there some other information? That would inform the council on an ability to make the required findings, which would. In either direction, negative findings or positive findings for, to uphold or deny the appeal. Is there something that you would? That is making it so you can't make your decision tonight, the two that, of all four of you I'm speaking to because. That assumed in that is that one of you might change your vote if you had more information. And if that's not the case, then I, then I'm going to just ask you. To continue it just so I can make sure I can inform you of what the effect of a deadlock vote is. And I, I think it means the planning commission decisions upheld, but I can, I just want to make sure I've got that right for you.
Yeah, well, let me, let me take a swipe at this because I, I think that there's two different schools of thought right now. One is, you know, I think there's, there's broad, you know, at least I heard three council members, myself included, talk about the fact that our housing policies. Require better definition. And I, I don't disagree with that. My interpretation of the policies as they stand today and the spirit with which I believe they were written. Is how I evaluated the appeal. So for me personally, I don't, I, I can't, I can't think of any additional information that I would need. At this point, I feel that my questions have been answered. So I would just ask my fellow council members if they feel like they're missing additional information that could. Perhaps change their perspective on the matter.
Not, not from my standpoint, I just. Too, as I think I said before, too many unpredictable outcomes that. We'd have, that we just don't know about.
Okay, so I would ask Vice Mayor McDowell or Councilmember Rack if there's any additional information specifically that you need from staff?
No, I, I, I mean, I would, I, I agree with you, Mayor, that we need a lot more clarity in our code. It's just too subjective right now. But I don't foresee additional information changing my mind.
I, I would agree with that. I don't see any more information changing my mind.
Yeah, okay, that's it. Definitely.
I'm just going to request that I can provide, have a meeting and maybe it can even. Just be a report by me what the effect of a tie vote on an appeal like this is. And I, I really, I apologize for having to do this because I. Yeah, I, I just want to make sure I'm, you understand the effect of that. I think that's probably important at this stage. And so since no action's been taken and we can just continue it. And then at the next meeting, I can give you a report on, on the effect of no action. Because I think that's important for the applicant and the council.
Do I need to make a motion to continue this to the next city council meeting?
That's all that's required so that this, this, this matter is continued. And, and I think just what I like to do when it's a public hearing like this is that you reopen the public hearing. In case there's, just so the public has an opportunity, but that's not required.
Greg, do we reopen that now or later?
You would, you would, you would do it now if you think you want to hear more from the public. If you don't want to hear from the public and you just want to get, hear what I have to say, then that's all you need to do is just continue it.
I personally am not willing to reopen the public comment.
Then the motion would be just to continue.
I'll move to continue this to the next city council meeting.
Second.
Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
I'll get the answer for you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure there's a case on it.
All right, um, so in the interest of time and the fact that we do have to do closed session, can we continue item eight B to next, the next council meeting? Or is that time sensitive as well? And do we need to ask for an extended meeting length?
We can continue it. However, we have had. Carrie, our finance manager, standing by all night to do it. I believe it's a very short item. I wouldn't expect there to be normally, I mean, it's, it's consent calendar level. It's just required to be a public hearing under the law.
Understood. All right. So then if I could invite a motion to extend the meeting?
I'm now wishing I took up John's offer for 2:00 AM.
Okay.
But I'll move for one, how about 1:15, hoping we can get done, 1:30?
All right, well, let's say 1:30 and Crystal.
1:30 to be said.
All right, and Crystal, can you have John come back in, please?
Yeah, yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a second to the first motion.
Second.
All right, Crystal, can you call the roll?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan? Not yet.
He's probably asleep.
He's not here. Oh.
Oh, he's gone to sleep.
Tempting, very tempting.
Councilmember Dugan, we are on you to see if you approve moving the, extending the meeting to 1:30.
Uh, yes.
And you won the bet.
I should have gone with you and went two at the beginning.
Is there any downside to throwing a long, long time out there? I don't know, you know, I don't know.
Incentive to get done.
No.
Yeah. Some prefer a marathon, some prefer sprints. If we keep it to the sprint.
Let's just, let's just get the vote so we can hear the item.
Thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
I thought we did.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes. Getting punchy, sorry. All right, so this item is a, a public hearing, item eight B. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees. Park facility development, sewer capacity charge and traffic impact fees for fiscal 2021 to 2022. Adding the construction time limit extension fees and construction time limit completion penalties to the master fee schedule. And placing actual pass-through credit card and e-check charges on a master fee schedule. And Carrie Tam will be making the presentation as I understand it. And thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you, no problem. Good evening, everyone. I'm Carrie Tam, Financial Services Manager. I'll try to talk as fast as I can. Every spring, in conjunction with the budget. Staff reviews the cost of providing fee-related services. Crystal, can you go to the next slide, please? The proposed fee schedule was derived from a comprehensive fee study performed by MBS in June 2017. A comprehensive study is typically performed every three to five years, as it can take up to six to nine months to complete. Next slide, please. Can you go back one slide, sorry? Or two? Thank you. The 2017 comprehensive study and subsequent council resolution recommended that future increases. Be adjusted by CPI on an annual basis. As such, the recommendation is to increase the fees by the 1.8% CPI for almost all of our fees with the exception of two fees. Where we are recommending to keep the fees the same as last year. The two fees are class registration fees and refund fees, which are currently higher than neighboring cities. And the light field use where we are recommending, we are not recommending a change until a thorough analysis can be completed on the impacts. Of the installation from the new field lighting. As per the study, we base these two fees on the market or in line with other agencies. The park facility development fee, sewer capacity fee and traffic impact fee are increased in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The increase for park facility fees and traffic impact fees are based on percentage increase of park construction costs cited in the engineering. Use record for the Bay Area, which resulted in 2.55%. The traffic impact annual adjustment was approved under ordinance number 1562. The sewer capacity fee increase will be adjusted annually based on the change in the construction cost index. Twenty-city averages from March 2016 index, which result in an increase of 1.1%. Next slide, please. Ordinance number 1560 was approved by city council on April 27, 2020, which added chapter. 15.60 to title 15 of the municipal code, creating a timeline for construction projects and penalties. When activities exceeded the time allocated in the timeline. The new chapter addressed extension fees and construction completion penalties, which were not previously included in the master fee schedule. They are now found on page 17 of the master fee schedule. Next slide, please. We are also proposing to pass through credit card and e-check charges to applicants and customers. For all departments except for parks and recreation, as those fees are part of our agreement with Active Network. Historically, the city has absorbed those fees for processing credit card and e-check transactions. As the city increases its acceptance of electronic payments, more transactions are conducted online and electronically. The city currently accepts credit cards and e-checks for transactions such as business registration permits, deposits and parking registrations. And is paying the merchant service providers' transactions and interchange fees for these services, averaging around 0.1 to 5%. Staff anticipates that some customers may opt to pay cash check or automatic clearinghouse or ACH. As a result of processing fees passed through. Customers who pay those tenders will not be charged a processing fee. Staff informally polled neighboring cities and agencies. Of the nine agencies that responded. Six agencies were either fully or partially passing through fees or charging a convenience fee. And two were absorbing the fees. On March 23, 2021, the City of Millbrae City Council approved a resolution to include a processing fee of 2.1%. For credit debit and charge card transactions, which became effective on April 1, 2021. If approved tonight, the pass-through of credit card and e-check charges will become effective for San Carlos after the implementation of the new cashier system. Which was approved as part of the consent calendar tonight, earlier tonight. Next slide, please. If council approves the recommendations, the fees on the master fee schedule and the changes on the impact fees would become effective on July 1, 2021. And would provide an estimated increase of revenue in the amount of 119,000, of which only 79,000 is general fund revenue. And the majority of that comes from development fees. However, these increases are based on the activity levels that were used during the 2017 study. And do not factor in any of the impact from the COVID-19 emergency. The impact to the development fees in the next fiscal year are still unknown. City staff plan on doing a full comprehensive study next year. Passing through the processing fees for payments received by the city via credit card or e-check. For all departments except for parks and rent will offset existing costs of approximately 110,000. Next slide, please. Um, so this concludes my presentations and I'm happy. To take any questions.
All right, any council member Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you for the rundown, Carrie. I think I got it. My one que, you know, so when I see things like the impact fee increases. Now, like an increase of 2.55% for the park facility development fee. Now, can I think of that as like a cost of, you know, like, you know, just a cost of living adjustment? Or is that a 2.55% increase on what's already a percentage-based fee? You know what I mean? Like, is that development fee already X percent of something? And now we're adding to that percentage?
So we would be increasing it based off of last year's fee. So we would be adding 2.55% compared to.
Okay, so whatever you paid last year, you'd only pay 2.55% more. That's not like adding to the amount of the fee. Does that make sense? Did I freeze?
I, I think, I think Carrie's not coming through. I think her zoom is freezing up.
Oh, I thought it was me.
I, I can respond to that. It's, it's a 2.55% increase over the last year, so it is an increase over the fee that was charged last year.
Okay, so it's not changing the percentage basis of the fee?
No, it's, it's set based on the municipal code.
Okay, but what, what is the park facility development fee? Is that like a fat, a flat dollar amount? Or is that a percentage of something?
It's, it's based on the construction. Carrie, do you have the details on that? Oh, she's frozen. I can get you the details on that after this meeting.
Okay, I just, you know, I mean, if, if like the fee's $2,000 and we're adding 2.55%, that's great. If the fee is 5% and we're now calling it 7.55%, that is just dramatically different. So I just want to understand that. That's, you know, that, that's a very different thing we're talking about.
I don't believe it's that big of an impact.
Okay.
It looks like Carrie's back.
So it's based on the, it's a percent, it's a fee per bedroom. And so it's an increase on that. So it's no different than any of our permit fees. It's, you can think of it as kind of a CPI. It's just based on a different metric.
Okay, but the actual fee that's being charged, I mean, it's not a percentage. It's like, number of bedrooms is X thousand dollars or something.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then why do we want to charge processing fees and not just, you know, add a little bit to our fee and absorb that? I mean, I, you know, I understand pass-through, but, I mean, governments are the only things in our entire economy that, you know, has some separate calculation. that, you know, has some separate calculation for processing fees. You know, I know when I'm confronted with that, I always find it unfriendly and it just makes governments look stodgy and stupid, you know, unlike every other thing in our economy. I just don't like it, you know? I mean, like, why don't we just bake that into our underlying fee and not have to stick it in people's face? That'd be my only question about that.
And as Carrie mentioned earlier, you know, we're following some of what the other agencies are doing. And it's also a practice that we're trying to implement with our new cashiering system is that we would pass through the credit card fees. It's allowable under the, um, the user fee schedule and we're bringing it to council for you to decide if that's something that you want to consider.
Okay, so this, it's basically like a fee increase, right? Because up till now, we've absorbed that, you know, we probably weren't losing money or anything. So, you know, we've just decided to add somewhere between 2 and 3% to everything. It's basically a fee increase, right? That's the way to think of it?
Well, the user fee schedule is a way that the city can recoup its costs. So we aren't making money. We're just recouping the costs that, that we're being charged. So it's, if you consider it that way, it's a pass-through of the credit card charges. The city's been absorbing that on behalf of the applicants. This would be just passing through those charges.
Yeah, which is a fee increase, but, uh, okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any additional questions. Um, Chris, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No.
Move to close the public hearing.
My second.
Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalohian?
Yes. All right, uh, council, uh, comment and discussion? Anybody care to? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, you know, I, just for what it's worth, I just find it very un-user-friendly to pass through credit card charges. It would, it what may, it's what makes doing business with a government seem strange and backwards as opposed to everything else in our economy. It is just a fee increase. If we feel like the fee needs to be higher, let's just charge a higher fee and not pass it through and make our transactions look, you know, like every, unlike everything else in our economy. I know other government agencies do that. I just don't like it. That's where I would come out on that, but, you know, if no one else agrees, um, not, you know. Anyway, I just think I'd rather not pass through fee increases. I'd rather increase the actual fee.
Well, John, you're kind of asking the taxpayer to pick up the fee increase then.
The, uh, what do you mean by the tax? I mean, we're basically saying...
If we don't pass the fee along, then it's coming out of city, uh, city general funds, which is taxpayer funds.
Well, but we've been doing that all along, so we're just now adding a 3% fee on everything. I guess unless you want to go down and pay cash or write a check, um, you know. So, yeah, in that sense, it's cash to, anyone who wants to pay cash isn't going to pay that fee. So maybe that's more equitable. I just, you know, that always, but I just don't like it when governments do that. It just makes them look backwards from my perspective.
Yeah, John, John, I think, um, having been the administrative services director in the past, cities are very restricted in terms of what we charge for fees and has to be study-based. And the problem that we've got is if we were to, um, put the credit card charges in, we'd be charging everybody regardless if it was baked in, even if they didn't. And so you're put in a position where potentially if you paid cash, you could then turn around and argue that we didn't charge you a correct fee because, um, there were elements of the fee that, you know, didn't apply to you.
Okay, so it all says you can still walk in and pay cash for these fees?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021 dash...
Twenty-eight.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Carlos authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule user fees, park facility development sewer capacity charge and traffic impact fees for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, adding construction time limit extension fees and construction time limit completion penalties to the master fee schedule and placing actual pass-through credit card and e-check charges on the master fee schedule.
Second.
All right, Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmalohian?
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you, Carrie and Rebecca. So our next item, agenda setting, item 10, items listed in this agenda setting. Well, we don't have any items listed in the agenda setting section, but are there any items that people wish to bring forward for future agendas?
Madam Mayor, can I say something? Um, I found the answer to the question already. And I, I wish I had looked for it earlier, but our, our code actually says that when there's a tie vote, the appeal is denied. So, um, what, what I'm going to, I, since you've already continued it, I'll make that announcement again. But, I mean, it's on a future agenda, but I just wanted to state that tonight so that the council knows I've already found the answer to the question that was posed earlier. And I can do a report or I can talk with the applicant and let them know that that's what the rule is. And, uh, and it may not have to appear on your future agenda if, unless they absolutely say they want to have it on there so you can, so I can report out to you.
Thank you, Greg. If you could follow up with the appellant, that would be preferable.
I'll see what I can do.
All right, thank you. Okay, so with that, it's time to move to closed session.
All right, okay, see you then.